Thank you all for your patience and understanding. And I'll say something later, but we'll get started now. Good to see you, sir. Mr. Christensen, thank you for being—do I say it right? Christian or Cristen? Sorry. Thank you for being here.
Senator Ramos is coming in.
Okay. We're gonna start. Whenever you're ready, sir. Thank you.
Oh, great. Good morning, Chair Conway. Appreciate you inviting me here today. My name is Rory Christian, and I serve as the Chief Executive Officer of the Department of Public Service and the Chair of the Public Service Commission. The welfare of all New Yorkers and the strength of our state's economy depends on safe, reliable, and affordable energy. And it is with this understanding that over 120 years ago, the commission was established. The commission oversees the utilities that own and operate the infrastructure behind the delivery of these essential services. Our mission is simple: to ensure that regulated utilities provide safe, reliable service at just and reasonable rates in alignment with state law, including public service law and the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act, known as the Climate Act. With over 560 department staff, seven commissioners, and an operating budget of over $140 million, we deliver benefits that far exceed our operating costs. The work of the commission and the policies and procedures for which we are responsible are not developed in isolation. They reflect decades of planning and decades of experience. The commission's responsibility is to anticipate challenges before they arise and prepare utilities to respond to the unexpected. In doing so, we guide our energy system forward in the best interest of ratepayers. One of the most, if not the greatest, challenge before the commission is the modernization of the electric grid. This is not a one-time project with a fixed endpoint. It is, and will be, a continual process to assess existing infrastructure and identify opportunities for optimization and improvement. A key consideration in any process, particularly one as significant in scope and duration as modernizing the grid, is the need to prepare for uncertainty. Recent months have reminded us that unexpected shocks are inevitable, and our task is to plan for a wide array of possible outcomes. For decades, the commission has maintained strong oversight of the state's utilities and other regulated entities, an oversight role that continues to evolve through transparent and public processes. Controlling costs remains a central function, and its importance has only grown due to macroeconomic, technical, and practical challenges affecting utilities worldwide. Central to the challenges we face is the reality that much of our infrastructure is nearing or has already reached the end of its useful life, requiring significant investments to maintain operation. Replacing our aging assets with modern infrastructure is more expensive than ever before, due to cost pressures beyond the commission's control. And this includes inflation, higher interest rates, the continuity of the supply chain disruptions from the COVID-19 pandemic. And all these are further amplified by the fact that New York is not alone in the need to modernize systems. We are competing with every other state and every other country for a limited pool of resources. These cost pressures are further compounded by additional drivers that are driving up rates. The utilities face steadily increasing expenses related to labor, health care, and IT systems, and especially property taxes, which is particularly acute in New York City and Niisau County. As you all well know, one of the commission's key responsibilities is to review rate cases. It is not unusual for a department staff team of more than 40 individuals to work on a major electric or gas case during the typical 11-month review period, although in recent years, some cases have extended as long as 15 months or more due to increased complexity. In 2025, the commission decided four major electric, gas, and water utility rate cases, adopting rates significantly lower than the utility's initial requests, and avoiding roughly a half a billion dollars of costs being incurred by ratepayers. Staff employs a variety of mechanisms to limit excessive capital expenditures, incentivize efficient spending, and impose financial consequences on utilities for poor performance. Various cost recovery methods are also used to spread impacts of rates over the life of each investment. This entire rate case process depends on robust and transparent public engagement. Stakeholders may participate formally by presenting testimony, defending it under oath through cross-examination, and engaging in the process from start to finish to help shape the outcome, while others may participate indirectly by filing comments or engaging in public statement hearings. Local governments, special interest groups, large customers, and other individuals can choose either path of engagement. But these contributions all help build a detailed evidentiary record. And of course, our own subject matter experts also file testimony in response to every aspect of utility rate filing. With this record, the commission evaluates the evidence and takes action consistent with its statutory mandate to ensure safe and adequate service. This process is essential and by law requires the commission to act to set rates that are sufficient to cover a utility's necessary expenses. If the commission does not act, then New York state law requires that the utility be granted their original proposal. The commission continuously identifies opportunities to strengthen utility oversight. Management and operations audits evaluate current practices and identify improvements to maximize ratepayer value. Audits are performed across multiple utilities, within specific utilities, and on targeted issue areas. This comprehensive approach allows staff to both identify industry-wide best practices and scrutinize individual utility operations. In 2025, the commission initiated the Comprehensive Incentive Management Compensation Audit to concurrently and holistically evaluate practices across the state's utilities with the goal of ensuring executive compensation is tied to improved service, better reliability, and affordability, rather than other outcomes that solely benefit shareholders. In addition to conducting audits, we routinely investigate utilities where there is evidence of wrongdoing. And when violations are identified, the commission imposes penalties. Since the beginning of 2020, staff and the commission have secured roughly $220 million from utility shareholders for the express benefit of ratepayers. The commission is also advancing nation-leading policies to provide financial assistance to vulnerable households. Almost a decade ago, the commission established a target energy burden, or a percentage of a customer's income that is spent on energy. And we set that target at or below 6% for low-income households. Since we've refined—sorry. Since then, we've refined the Energy Affordability Program and brought relief to over 1 million low-income households with billions of dollars in utility bill relief. And in July of this year, the commission adopted an enhanced energy affordability policy to support moderate-income utility customers who do not qualify for the existing low-income energy programs. This significantly broadens affordability protections beyond what's currently in place. Now, I want to focus on the Climate Leadership and the Climate Act through the commission. We approached the Climate Act through generic proceedings, which are mechanisms that enhance synergies and reduce costs, everything from customer-sided solutions to mitigate bill impacts to transmission and distribution planning across the local and bulk systems. And two weeks ago, the commission released a report updating its progress on compliance with the CLCPA and documenting the costs incurred to date. The report highlights the commission's actions related to implementing Section 7.2 and 7.3 of the CLCPA, which requires state agencies ensure their decisions do not impede the attainment of statewide greenhouse gas reductions. Building on that mandate, in May of this year, we authorized $1 billion in annual energy efficiency and building electrification investments supporting low- and moderate-income households across the state. To mitigate the impact of this decision, we reallocated funds from other successful programs. $360 million in surplus funds from the New York Sun program will support roughly 24% of the budget for NYSERTA's energy efficiency and building electrification programs, with another $300 million providing near-term relief to ratepayers. These programs build on what we know works, prioritizing weatherization and energy efficiency. We're also engaged in a variety of proceedings, looked at the future of the grid, aptly known as Grid of the Future. We're also engaged in programs that look at transmission planning, the coordinated grid planning process, and the proactive planning proceeding, to name a few. Now, these are just a handful of examples, but they are indicative of the commission's commitment to advance Climate Act goals in line with the public interest. And as you know well, demonstrating leadership means making hard decisions, being transparent in those decisions, and being consistent in approaches while staying true to legal mandates. It is my hope that the outcome of today's discussion is a recognition that the only way forward is together, and that we, at the department and the commission, are earnest in our desire to do so. This concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna do my opening remarks now. We've been joined by Assemblymember—Senator Matarra and Senator Ramos are with us, and other folks will be coming in and out. Good morning, everyone. This is a joint committee hearing dealing with the concerns within our system as it relates to the ratemaking process under the Public Service Commission, PSC or Commission, and ensuring that the climate goals are being complied with these joint proposals funneling through the system. I want to thank our leaders, Senator Stewart Cousins and my co-chair Kevin Parker, for support in creating this proceeding and making this happen, as well as the members of our committee for their advocacy and hard work. Beginning earlier this session with the roundtable that we had in Albany, and honestly, the issues prior, I want to also thank everyone here who are active participants in concerns in this area. Various stakeholders in the energy, climate, and utility spaces have raised concerns about the conduct and proceedings and the impact of the commission's decisions on the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act. Today, hopefully, we will garner perspectives from all interested parties to drill down on how we can best serve the public and keep ourselves on track as we move closer to the deadline for clean energy mandates. Today, we will hear from experts about their various experiences in the ratemaking process to inspire new ideas that confirm some of these processes. Although the materials reviewed may be dense and difficult, they are not abstract issues: rate cases affecting seniors trying to heat their homes, parents choosing between groceries and electric bills, and small businesses trying to stay afloat. This is an opportunity to emphasize that all avenues of policymaking to produce the best outcome for our constituents while keeping climate goals in mind. There appears—there needs to be more clarity on how these laws are being interpreted since it appears to affect how the rate process ensues. To address affordability concerns, the legislature has passed several pieces of legislation like Chapter 129 of 2025 or Senate Bill 7230 that requires energy service companies or ESCOs to be subject to the same consumer protection regulations for unclaimed deposits and refunds as utility companies. We've also had the Utility Affordability Package that features bills such as S2460, a companion bill, A4712, which would restore the consumer protection advocate on the state's energy planning board, which we hope to govern assignments shortly. In addition, a Rate Hike Notice Act alongside Assemblymember Mondani that passed in the Senate despite dying in the assembly this year is a straightforward bill. If utilities are gonna raise your rates, they should tell you clearly, directly, and in multiple formats before it happens. Ratepayers should not find out about a rate hike after they've already been hit with a higher bill. This bill increases accessibility by requiring utilities to notify customers via text, email, and on their monthly bill. I, alongside my colleagues, will continue to advance legislation that seeks not to also—not only to also—not only to also boost our affordability, to create solutions and grow our state's commitment to the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act. Every New Yorker deserves advanced notice, reliable service, and a utility system that prioritizes the pocketbook of New Yorkers and puts people over processes. The further we dive into the rate case process, we find that there are barriers within the procedure that limit accessibility for all parties and potentially challenges how the law may restrict the abilities of the commission. Thank you for—everyone for being here today. Thank you, Chair Christian. My first question, can you drill down on your statement that you said—dealing with the $360 million—in $360 million in surplus fund for the New York Sun program? How is that actually going to happen to provide relief to taxpayers? Can you explain that?
Happy to, sir. So first, I'll start with the New York Sun program itself. It's one of the most successful that I've had the pleasure of overseeing while chair of the commission. Starting with a 3-gigawatt goal, the CLCPA increased that solar goal to 6 gigawatts. And then through commission action, we increased that goal to a further 10 gigawatts and provided ratepayer funding in support of achieving that goal. We achieved that goal ahead of schedule. We achieved that goal under budget. And so we—yes, sir. And so in achieving that goal, in achieving the goals we established for the industry, we had to figure out what to do next. We decided to further expand the goal to 10.5 gigawatts, adding an extra 500 megawatts on top of the existing 10. And we still had money left over. And recognizing the affordability issues that were and are continuing to be omnipresent, we elected to take the surplus funding from that program, having already achieved its goals, and utilize that to lower ratepayer costs for other programs that we wish to advance as well.
Can you detail what those programs are?
Yes, sir. So, energy efficiency and building electrification programs. We issued an order allocating roughly $1 billion a year over the next five years towards those programs. And these $360 million from New York Sun will offset some of those costs throughout the duration of the program life. So instead of it being a full billion-dollar impact to customers on a year-on-year basis, it's reduced by $360 million through this action.
And can you detail what you're calling an energy efficiency program for the audience, please?
Sure, absolutely. So, New York State has been a leader in energy efficiency for quite some time. That work is largely spearheaded through our utilities throughout the state and in partnership with the New York State Research and—New York State Energy Research and Development Authority, NYSERTA. The billion dollars in funding is allocated between utilities and NYSERTA, with each entity operating in an area and with a focus best suited for the outcomes we seek. And those programs include weatherization, sealing homes, air sealing, windows, new roofs, things like that. They also include appliance exchanges, new light bulbs, moving from 100-watt incandescent bulbs to now 10-watt or lower LED bulbs. Also converting to heat pumps, so taking existing natural gas or oil-fired boilers, or in some cases propane, kerosene, and whatnot, and putting them—electrifying them and having them run on electricity rather than combusting a fuel. So this investment is—been a core part of what New York State has been doing long before I joined the commission, and this is a continuation and an expansion of that long-running practice.
So you're saying you're at 10.5 gigawatts now. What is your expected goal? Do you expect to hit 10.5 gigawatts by the CLCPA deadline, or are you gonna—
Well, before, sir. We're gonna hit that goal based on projections within the year.
Within the year?
Yeah.
And so then, are you gonna increase that goal every year, or are you looking to do—what's your average increase per year until you meet the expected need?
So, the way—the way we look at structuring these programs, as an economic regulator, we want to ensure that markets develop and are robust enough to operate on their own. We provide incentives to encourage their growth, to help businesses get established, to help the industry get a footing. And once they are in a firm footing, we decide what to do next. At this point in time, given we've achieved our goal ahead of schedule and under budget, the opinion was that we've done our job. We've accomplished the mission we had set out for. The other thing to keep in mind, this is one of many incentives available for solar installers, the New York Sun program. We also have additional incentives through VETER, the Value of Distributed Energy Resources, which is designed to incentivize installations based on where they are in the state and how they operate in the state. So the more efficient a resource, the closer it is to an urban center, the greater its value. The less efficient a resource—if the resource emits, and if it's further away from an urban center—the less value it provides to the grid. And so we compensate them accordingly. And so we haven't completely eliminated incentives for the solar industry, but we've recognized that one of those incentives that has accomplished the goal we have set at this point in time is no longer needed, and we're reassessing continuously how we provide incentives in different programs as a standard part of our operation.
Okay. Thank you for that answer. Have you made an overall assessment on what the energy needs will be for the electric grid in the next 10 years? And how do we—and how often are you upgrading it?
So that is a process that is taking place in many areas right now. The New York ISO, I believe, is gonna be releasing a report in the next few weeks highlighting—and this is an annual report that they release—highlighting what they perceive to be the condition of the grid. That's, again, a regularly scheduled event. We also work with individual utilities as part of their standard planning process, both through the rate case and separate and a part of the rate case, through the Grid of the Future proceeding, the Proactive Planning proceeding, the coordinated grid planning process. We have a lot of different proceedings and processes for which we plan and identify future needs. And many of these are the result of legislative mandate. There's the—and forgive me, I always get the one—this one wrong—the Accelerated Renewable—Accelerated Renewable Growth and Community Benefit Act. Thank God. So that has spurred us to establish a number of processes. That's something the legislature passed, of which we are doing a very significant transmission build-out as we speak. And we have also devised processes through which to proactively identify those needs well in advance of them becoming emergent or critical. So we already have good processes in New York with our partners at the New York ISO and the utilities, and these are enhancing our ability to identify problems before they become urgent and critical and more expensive.
Great. Second question topic—I'm gonna come back to that topic later, but the—you talked about on page four, your audits and investigating for utilities, but there's evidence of wrongdoing. And you've secured roughly $220—$24.9 million from utility shareholders for the express benefit of taxpayers. What happens with that money?
That money goes against rates. So when we set rates, it's based on the revenue a utility needs to make the investments needed. So if we authorize—I'm gonna make these numbers up. If we authorize $100 million of rates and we penalize a utility $20 million, there's a net $20 million penalty on what they can recover in the future. So that effectively lowers the rates that the customers will experience on an ongoing basis.
That's only if the utility—can't you just return that money directly to the ratepayers? As opposed to giving a credit to the utility company that's going to turn around and ask for a rate hike anyway? I mean, how—you know, it doesn't—it doesn't—I have a concern about that because it doesn't seem like the tax ratepayers would ever actually know that that happened. And how would John Q. Public know that you were able to even save money if they don't see it back in their bill in any way, shape, or form?
That is an excellent observation and a challenge that we have looked into trying to overcome for quite some time. However, the processes as we see them today are fairly rigid. I'm uncertain how and what steps would be needed to change them in order to achieve the outcome you seek. I just know, based on how public service law is established and the processes through which we set rates, there's one particular way to deal with the credit, and that's the process through which we follow. Direct credit back to consumers in this manner—we need to talk through changes and yeah.
I appreciate that. I hope that we can figure that out together over the next few months before we start the legislative year and can make that happen. So my first 10 minutes are up. I'm gonna pass it over to Senator Ramos, if he came first. I'll do another round. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Working?
You just called.
I think it's—yeah, it is—it does work. Sorry, the light bulb doesn't.
Yeah, it's been going all the time.
Well, good morning, everyone. Thank you so much for your testimony, Mr. Christian. I really believe that DPS is one of the agencies that really bears a responsibility in helping New York State chart our roadmap towards meeting our climate goals. I think often, it seems like everybody, both in the private and public sector, are working in silos, and there doesn't really seem to be a direct, clear path towards those goals, at least not in the public's eye. And so I'm wondering, in your work regulating our utilities, because I often hear them claim that clean energy investments drive rate hikes, how does DPS distinguish between legitimate climate costs and excessive utility spending padded into the rate base?
So that—that is a meaty question, and I'm gonna try to answer in the time allotted, and I'll try not to use too much jargon, and hopefully Tom will stop me when I do.
Or a prelude, yes.
Right. So the rate case process itself, as it is, is an 11-month process. It's quasi-judicial, a legal process, and there are protocols behind it. In going through this process, again, it's a public engagement. You can engage in multiple ways, but you set the record as to what is needed based on what the utility proposes. And to be clear, when a utility makes a proposition, this is their view of what they need to make investments to maintain the grid as it is. So we will review that. Both DPS staff, the various stakeholders have access to all that information. These are parties to the rate case, and they review the information, they make determinations. And if we see an investment that is requiring golden screws, 24-karat gold, we identify that, and we say, "No, you should probably use galvanized steel," or whatever.
What's a real example of that? I mean, it's nice to talk about gold screws, but in what moment have you been able to say, "Hey, actually, guys, this is really unnecessary?"
Oh, I could—I could give you two very big examples. So two—outside of the rate case process, two items that came before the commission this year, you may be familiar with the Clean Path New York Project or the New York City Public Policy Transmission Need. The former, Clean Path New York, was originally a project that included generation that was attached to a 170-mile transmission line connecting into New York City. This is the project in its original form. It transposed itself into a transmission-only project, and that was not aligned with our needs. That was not going to benefit ratepayers in accordance with the rules that we had set based on the laws that were passed through the legislature. So we denied the petition for that project to move forward, and that project saved ratepayers quite a bit of money. I don't remember exactly how much.
How do you make sure that the cost of the climate transition is equitably distributed among ratepayers?
So we have performed two reports on CLCPA. The first was a high-level overview documenting the various proceedings and programs available. The second was an in-depth analysis looking at the actual costs of the CLCPA-related investments and what ratepayers are paying. That's something we're happy to share with you and speak with you about after the meeting. It can be a bit of an handful.
I appreciate that. I'd also like to know if you're able to provide the committee with a clear timeline year by year of when DPS expects utilities to meet their share of the 70% renewable electricity by 2030 mandate.
So we can—we can get back to you on that. Again, I think that's something you're gonna find in subsequent editions of the CLCPA report. I think it's safe to say you're aware of the various challenges and headwinds that we're facing due to the macro changes at the federal government in terms of their policy direction. But we can definitely report out on pace towards different outcomes and objectives as part of the CLCPA. That's absolutely something we can do.
How did I get five more minutes? Oh, you're in trouble now. I'm kidding.
Wait, who's in trouble? I'm in trouble?
He just told me I got five more minutes. He just told me I got five more minutes. I don't even know what I did to get five more minutes. I'm wondering then about, well, I do a lot of work with the Climate Jobs Institute at Cornell University as I chair the Labor Committee, so my focus or my angle of this work is largely on building what I like to call a union climate economy and making sure that people in environmental justice communities like the one I represent actually are able to benefit from the transition that we, that we need to make. From what I gather, based on reports from Cornell, New York seems to be doing really well with solar projects, not so great with wind or battery storage. Can you talk a little bit about your role in helping, helping us achieve our goals in those two categories?
Absolutely. This is something that I feel I can say safely has been a part of my career since my first job with Keyspend Energy. I've worked closely with a number of organizations separate and a part of this role, and that continues to this day. Ensuring workforce development is a key part of what we do. We work with the utilities to ensure that they have various programs to support that. We had a diversity, equity, and inclusion order through which all the utilities in New York State engaged, worked together, looked at their various best practices, and shared resources, and identified opportunities for growth and improvement. And the workforce development area was one key opportunity identified by pretty much every utility, and actions were taken to improve their efforts throughout. I'm happy to share that with you as well, to kind of, when we had a third-party consultant work with the utilities and document the before and after, and I'm positive you'll find that report fascinating and interesting in seeing the growth we've been able to achieve in New York.
I'm sure I will. You know, I just got back from Vancouver where I got to see district energy networks and amazing technology that's being used to extract heat from sewage water. And it's really incredible work that would give us more plumbers and fitters like Senator Matarra and produce a ton of other jobs. I also saw a lot of steam technology that right now actually would not qualify or would not be covered by local law 97 here in New York City, which has actually put a few housing developments in New York in dire straits, many of whom prefer to pay the fine at the city level because it's actually cheaper than transitioning, especially having just spent so much money into producing steam. This is the case in Moorebos, I believe in Co-op City as well, and a couple of other housing developments like Rochdale Village. Has the state thought about how we can help these housing developments meet those goals if not within the city's allotted time as soon as possible?
So, absolutely. And just so you're aware, I was formerly the Energy Director for the New York City Housing Authority and have spent a great deal of my career working with housing authorities throughout the state in helping them improve their energy efficiency through partnerships with the private sector. So, this is very near and dear to me.
That's nice to hear, because I got to tell you, I don't represent Woodside Houses anymore, although I grew up right outside of Woodside Houses. It got redistributed out. I lost it to Senator Gennaris. But those boilers are always breaking. I mean, it is a big problem in NYCHA developments, and actually getting NYCHA developments to transition, even if it was to steam momentarily, would, I think, help us inch closer to where we need to be.
So, I completely agree. And, you know, working with affordable housing, both the public housing variety and the privately-owned, is a key fact that we have to do. We can't leave any group behind in our pathway towards electrification and decarbonization. And I mentioned earlier, the $1 billion in energy efficiency and building electrification funds that we put annually into having these measures brought forth. A significant portion of that is directly allocated towards low and moderate income communities, specifically with the intent of providing additional focus and attention supporting these harder-to-electrify properties for one reason or another in their transition. So, this is one area in which we're engaged. Where I'm personally engaged, I work with NYCHA as part of their sustainability working group. We meet regularly, and we talk through various issues from their perspective. And I routinely meet with developers to understand their issues and perspectives so that can better help us see what we can do better, both as an agency but in partnership with our sister agencies throughout the state.
I think we, at this point, know a lot of what we can do better. What we need are shovels in the ground and a commitment to really hold communities' hands even in moments that they don't understand how important it is to do this. I mean, I was very heartbroken to see that a, some of the wind projects that could have been, have fallen through because, you know, MAGA people don't believe in climate change because other people think it's going to obstruct their beach view, even though it's proven that it's not. These are things that, I believe, obstruct our ability to reach our climate goals, and I think it's the responsibility of our state agencies to usher that path forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Senator Matarra, 10 minutes.
Great. Can you hear me? Am I on?
Yes.
All right, great. Chair Comrie, thank you so much for being here today, and it's great to see Senator Ramos. Good to see you, and thank you so much for mentioning about the hard-working men and women of labor, which you are definitely a very good, do a great job as the Labor Chair. And to our Commissioner, it's always a pleasure, it's always great to have conversation with you, especially up in Albany. We all know that rates have been going up around the state, and we have, all around the state, very concerned about what's going to be happening, you know, Lightbare, I actually have the new CEO, Carrie Gallagher, had a nice meeting with Carrie, and very concerned what's going to be happening on Long Island. But what about all the rates that are going around the state that are over 100% the rates that have been going up? Can you please give us a heads up, like, why this is happening?
So, I, 100% is a number I've not yet heard before.
Nice egg up in, up in the upstate region, yes.
Right. So, there are two portions of the bill. There's the supply charge, and then there's the delivery charge. The supply charge is largely market-driven. As natural gas prices and energy prices change, that supply charge changes as well. The delivery charge is when, what's influenced by rate cases and actions taken by the commission through the actions initiated by the utilities requesting more rates, greater rates for certain investments. What we have seen is something that is not isolated to New York. I speak with chairs and other commissions throughout the country, and this is a problem that's affecting all of us. And it's a confluence of a lot of different events that are hitting at a very strange time.
And, but Commissioner, just to give you a heads up, people can't afford to live here. There's a reason why we have over 2 million people since 2020, residents of New York State, have left this state because they can't afford their bills, especially the utility bills that are going up 100%. I'm going to tell you, wind, solar, and battery storage, this is costing us, and I'm going to tell you something, I got it, when all our energy meetings, that it's costing our rate payers to pay for, especially battery storage, wind and solar, we could say, okay, is doing somewhat, but battery storage is costing us a lot of money, and it's getting put on the backs of the hard-working people of New York State. And it's an experiment, and it's not going to work. Are we looking to move forward with other renewable energies that's a better investment, like the NSEI and the Constitution pipelines, that, in other words, that need to be coming into the state? Are you looking to help bring these pipelines in? Because you and I discussed this, we have hundreds of trucks, LNG trucks, that are on our roadways every day because we have a capacity shortage. This year, this past summer, over 30% increase that we needed because of the hot weather that we had, right? We had a very, very big increase with natural gas. Hundreds of trucks are on our roadways, care about the environment, seven pounds of CO2 a mile each truck, more and more trucks, beautiful, brand-new trucks, running up and down the roadway when I'm up in Albany. Amazing. I sit there, and the energy that's needed, not that it's wearing out our roadways, seven pounds of CO2 up in the atmosphere, but what about the energy needed that it needs to liquefy that didn't get pumped into the system because we have a capacity shortage? Are you in favor of the Constitution and the NSEI pipeline to come in so we could eliminate all these trucks that are polluting our atmosphere?
So, there's a lot there, Senator.
I know, there was a lot of.
No, I get it, and I appreciate you asking the questions one after the other. I'm going to try to address them from the first one to the last.
Yes, please.
So, affordability, so built into the commission's mandate is to try to make the system, is to create a system that is safe, reliable, and just and reasonable rates. That's our goal. We try to do that. We also recognize that just and reasonable rates may not necessarily align with what is affordable to all. Earlier, and I'm not sure if you were here at the time, I mentioned some programs that we at the commission had put in specifically to address affordability issues for low-income and low to moderate-income New Yorkers. Our energy affordability program.
Again, middle-class New Yorkers also on Long Island, we pay the highest taxes. Our tax bill, just so you know, on Long Island, are more than our mortgage bills. People are struggling, middle-class people like myself, we're struggling here to pay our bills.
Right. So, the two programs we put in, the first was for low income, the second is for median income, so it does affect a much broader population. We went from providing benefits to 1 million to adding another 1.6 million people to the role in total. So, we've definitely taken steps to try to ensure that the pocketbooks are protected during this critical time. And I want to say that we're doing everything we can to ensure that we are meeting the challenge before us, and these are the two key programs in doing so.
And I got to ask you a question again. Wind, solar, battery storage, good investment?
So, the investments that we have been making in various renewable energy resources, we've documented them in the CLCPA report, which I'll share with everybody here and other members of the committee later today. That report highlights the impact of the dollar, the rate impact of CLCPA investments on rates. And what we see through that report is the biggest driver, it's not batteries, it's not wind, it's not solar, it's the aging infrastructure in our system. We have parts of our system that are 100 years old that we need to replace. I mean, do any of us have anything that's 100 years old? And so, we need to put in place new infrastructure to ensure that it can continue to work. There's going to be a cost.
But Commissioner, just a quick question again. Wind, solar, and battery storage, we could talk about this again. Is it a good investment? Don't we need to look into other renewable energies? Because I'm going to tell you something, and this is on the backs of all the rate payers. Everybody in this room here is paying for this experiment, especially the battery storage. You know, we talked about thermal energy, which is great, Jamestown, upstate Jamestown, very important project that's going to be going on using wastewater. Guess what? Yeah, for other tradespeople, it's great. But, but to move forward with, Northport, with using green hydrogen, that's another project that's coming out, which, which is something that I'm very excited about, that we're looking, looking forward into renewal, other renewable energies. But again, can you answer me the question about the NSEI and the Constitution pipeline? Will that be something important for us to move forward in the state of New York?
All right. So, if you'll let me finish, I will, you promise?
Yes, I'm going to.
Okay, great. Thank you. So, wind, batteries, solar, those are all important. All our energy resources are important, the nuclear, the existing gas-fired generation. We need an approach of abundance where we have as many resources as we can to meet what is a growing energy demand in the state. And this is a good thing. We have manufacturing returning to New York after many years, and we're seeing load growth associated with that. We must rise to meet that challenge. No one resource is going to do that alone. So, we'll need a lot of different types of resources to meet that challenge, and the commission is working with our state partners to ensure that we can, specifically to NSEI now. So, you asked about that. So, you're probably aware that the commission took an action earlier last week in which NSEI was a part. National Grid presented their gas long-term plan.
Can you explain what NSEI is?
Oh, I'm so sorry, sir. So, NSEI is the Northeast Supply Extension.
Yes, it is.
Enhancement.
Enhancement.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I messed that up.
Too many acronyms in my life, sorry about that. So, the Northeast Supply Enhancement. This is a project that we became first aware of, the commission became aware of, I would say, 2015, 2016. It was proposed again. It was part of a long-term planning process that, I would say, developed as a result of its original proposal in front of the DPS staff, and it was designed at the time in 2015 to meet what was seen at the time as load growth that would require a pipeline. We didn't go forward with the pipeline. It ultimately did not get DEC approval. The alternatives we put in place include the trucks you mentioned that are driving up and down the roads, the CNG vehicles, and a variety of other financial contracts with other users of natural gas. These, to put it simply, that's a Rube Goldberg approach to reliability that we put together as a best, what's the best we could do at the time? And it worked well enough. However, during tropical, during Winter Storm Elliott, we saw a situation that put the downstate gas system at severe risk. We were at risk of, I'd say, within 30 minutes disconnecting about 30,000 buildings from the gas system, which would have been the beginning of a cascade effect that could have affected all of Brooklyn, all of Queens, all of Long Island. That's something I don't want to imagine because it's not something we can allow to happen. And when National Grid proposed the revision to their long-term plan that included NSEI, we recognized that it meets a reliability need that we've already identified.
So, just quick, because I have 13 seconds, are you for the NSEI and Constitution pipeline to come in right now so we can get all these trucks off the roadways? And guess what? So, we can handle the capacity shortage that we have with our natural gas?
So, sir, I'm for any reliability solution that makes sure we have our energy needs.
No, I'm saying, is this important for all New Yorkers? Make sure that we're going to be saving on natural gas?
I can't speak to Constitution. That's not before the commission.
All right, NSEI.
But, well, the commission identified that there was a reliability benefit from NSEI. We did that last week.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much.
No problem.
Chair, Chris, you didn't identify your bodyguards, so if you don't mind if you do.
Forgive me, sir. So, why don't I let them identify themselves?
Okay, great.
And I'm the executive deputy at the department.
Morning.
And I'm Jessica Waldorf. I'm the chief of staff and director of policy implementation.
Thank you. Question, is there somewhere publicly available where, is there a publicly available location where individuals can learn the rules of rate cases, how to become party to a rate case, and how to deliver testimony to the commission?
Yes, there is. In fact, one of the modifications we've made to our website in recent years is in recognition that we need to make it easier for everybody to be able to understand the work that we're doing. So, if you were to go to our website, www.dps.ny.gov, what you would find is a, our state website with a button that says, "First time here." So, first-time users unfamiliar with DPS can click that button, and they'll be brought to a page specifically designed to highlight the various hot issues that are pertinent at the time. We update it regularly. But rate cases are an omnipresent part of that page, and anyone interested in learning more can go to our website, click that button, and there'll be abundant information for them to learn about the process.
And can they make comments or specific complaints in that same space?
There is a pathway for them to do so, yes. We identify active rate cases as well in that area. So, if an individual is a National Grid customer, and National Grid happens to have a rate case, there's an easy way for them to click, follow a few steps, and provide comments that way.
When did that get established?
I want to say that was probably two or three years ago at this point.
Okay. Thank you. Who physically writes the orders when a rate case produces a joint proposal or a recommended decision? You know, yes, I'll leave it at that.
So, at any, for any rate case, we can have up to 40 staff. This could be a mix, this is usually a mix of accountants, engineers, lawyers, and other professions, and they collectively work together to write these rate case decisions. And to be clear, these are voluminous. There are several thousand pages that go into any particular order, and much of these are filings from other parties. The orders themselves could be 100 to 200 pages of writing done by department staff.
Great.
Can I add just?
Sure.
For a litigated rate case, those decisions are written by an administrative law judge.
And that administrative law judge has expertise in this area? How do they develop the expertise in this area?
So, our administrative law judges have worked for the department for many, many years. That expertise is hard-earned through experience in engaging in a variety of different rate cases. We have a depth of experience that we can call upon, and they are all very well-versed in the various practices of the commission.
And do they get retrained, or do they get to do classwork so that they can be updated on the nuances and the new factors that are happening in this area?
Absolutely. Like every lawyer, there's continuing education requirements that they must meet, and I think they're called continuing law credits or CLEs, or I forget the exact terminology, but they must do these at a particular rate on a periodic basis to maintain their credentials.
And do you provide that same? And do you provide that same opportunity for rate payers that want to learn how to effectively protest or even understand the procedures of the PSC?
So we, we do have a rate case 101 that we do provide, and I, I believe one organization, Pulp, also provides similar support and services, and we've worked with them in the past on-
Do you provide funding to Pulp?
We do not provide funding, but I believe the legislature does provide some state funding to Pulp, but I'm not familiar with the details.
I think Pulp should be provided funding by the utility companies and the PSC. That's another matter we have to work on together, hopefully. I heard the clapping back there. That was- I didn't know. Okay, don't start. No, no clapping. Can you describe the pro, Senator, let me know when you're ready to start. Can you describe the process of the confidential settlement negotiations and track and rate case proceedings?
Yes, I can. So the confidential settlement is one of the pathways that we can achieve an outcome for a rate case. Tom mentioned the litigated approach, and the settlement approach occurs when multiple parties work together to negotiate a very specific outcome. We view settlement approaches as superior to litigated, in part because we can achieve outcomes beyond what we would normally achieve in a litigated approach because it's an agreement. So we can have the utility decide or agree to do specific things that they would not necessarily be compelled to under public service law. Hopefully, I will be able to think of a good example of that. I'm thinking of the, oh, yeah, that's a good one. Right. So low-income outreach is one area where we've worked with the utilities to enhance that work above and beyond what they would normally do. And there are a variety of other areas where we, again, through the settlement process, we've created opportunities for superior outcomes than what we would otherwise have. But, but the process itself is a negotiation. All parties are involved. Once we achieve some level of agreement between a group of parties, we move forward. Some may sign on to the agreement, some may oppose the agreement, some may remain neutral, and some don't say anything. But ultimately, we try to get as many people to sign on to the settlement agreement as possible. And I, I know in recent memory, we've had a few rate cases where we had a large number of individuals sign on in agreement, and that's usually a very good sign that the settlement is something that everyone can agree on.
So when, when those confidential negotiations begin, who has the ability to trigger? And, and who decides what goes on the agenda? And those meetings are all private?
Yeah, they, again, they are confidential discussions between the parties and the rate case. So I mentioned earlier, multiple ways to participate. An individual can become a party in a rate case, or they can provide comments. By becoming a party, you can engage in the rate case process from the very beginning right up to the end when a settlement is happening. And typically, you're privy to all the discussions, you're privy to confidential information, which must remain confidential because there's some public safety, business, sensitive information that is often revealed in these processes that must remain, for a variety of reasons, confidential.
So that's sent to all of the folks in real time that have been inquiring? Because you just mentioned rate payers would be, if you filed a complaint, you would be privy to knowing what the confidential negotiations were?
No, sir. Unfortunately, the, the settlement discussions are confidential and restricted to the parties in the case.
Okay.
So the-
So that wouldn't be known to the public until everything was resolved?
Correct. But what is known to the public is whatever the utility files in its initial filing, which again is usually the starting point of every rate case, any subsequent comments submitted throughout the process. And this would mean, you know, responses from some of the parties we have here who are going to be speaking later, the utilities themselves, and you can view that feedback in real time. That is publicly available. But the settlement negotiations, once you get to that point, it's strictly confidential and limited to the parties.
Thank you. In 2023, you authored an article titled "Harmonizing Utility Regulation Stakeholders," stakeholders, where you stated, "Public service commissions and boards of public utilities vested with the power to drive change can align actions and policies to expedite desired outcomes. We must explore innovative avenues that facilitate engagement, embracing equity and inclusivity as we educate, inform, and empower public engagement in our vital work." Have you been able to achieve that in your role as commissioner, public service commissioner, and where would you want to improve there?
So I would definitely say it has improved significantly since the time I've started engaging with the commission. One statistic I can cite to highlight that, a rate case would typically have 1,000 comments. Now we're seeing 9, 10,000 comments from a variety of different stakeholders, all of whom wish to engage. And one could argue, this is, you know, people are paying more attention, they're, they're more interested, but I think it's part and parcel with our willingness to work and help and partner with others and support that engagement and create an environment where they can engage. Is it perfect? I don't think so. And we're always going to be doing continuous improvement to make it better. But this is going to be a process, and we're going to learn from that process over time and make improvements as we go. And I can say it is definitely better today than when we started. And I'm hopeful others will say the same thing.
We'll find out. But I know it's definitely a point of contention, the ability for rate payers to actually impact and understand the process. So I'm glad that there's been an increase in comments, but we still have a lot of rate payers that are in the dark about this, that we need to bring to the light. So my second round is up. We've been joined by co-chairs Senator Parker and also almost done Senator Brad Hoileman to be the next Manhattan Borough President. I'm going to miss him terribly, but he wanted to stay in the city, but that's an argument for, that's, that already lost. So we'll, we'll turn it over to Senator Parker for a few questions.
Good morning. I'm not sure if, it's working? Okay, perfect.
The mics are always on, gentlemen.
Oh, okay. That's good to know. Should have told me that 10 minutes ago. Mr. Chairman and team, how's everybody doing?
Doing well, Senator.
Good. Thanks for taking time this morning to be with us and share some things. I'm going to try not to be redundant, even though it's a little tardy this morning, and miss some of your comments. Wanted to hear your thoughts, aside from, obviously, everyone's concerned about rate cases. But what is the PSC doing above and beyond rate cases and trying to keep them within due bounds to create affordability for rate payers in the state of New York?
All right. I will try to hit this as best as I can without repeating some of the things I stated earlier, and I'll repeat those at the end. So part of it is making sure the process identifies needs well in advance of the need arising. If you have a longer runway to make an investment, you can, you have a lot more flexibility in how you make that investment and getting the materials, staffing, all the various tools, union labor, et cetera, and organizing and doing that work. So we've established a number of planning processes, some of which in response to legislative action, put forward and approved recently. This includes the coordinated grid planning process, which, at a high level, through that process, we're investing billions in transmission development throughout the state right now. That's happening in real time at this moment. I would say this is a generational level of investment that we are making that we, and we haven't made this kind of investment as a state in a very long time. We're also engaged in processes at the distribution level, at the each individual utility. So we're established a proactive planning process. And part of this is recognizing, though each utility is unique in its service territory and has unique challenges, we want to ensure their processes are consistent as possible and that they share best practices on what solutions work. And so through this process, we're identifying better ways to do the work that we know is going to be needed, and we're identifying that work well in advance of what we would normally have dealt with through other processes. So these are just two examples of process-driven pathways towards reducing costs. When we talk about affordability, I mentioned earlier the energy affordability program. This is something the commission established prior to my joining, where we, looking at an individual's energy burden, the amount of money they pay for their energy, we set that at 6% of their income. So if you make $10,000 a year, no more than 6% of that should go towards your energy cost. So we've worked with other state agencies to identify the low-income population of the state in partnership with the utilities, and that program is ongoing. We're providing support to roughly a million New Yorkers through the EAP program. We've gone a step further with the Enhanced EAP Program, which, to the point earlier I made to Senator Maitreya, expands that program to include median-income New Yorkers, not just low, median income. That expands out to 1.6 million New Yorkers, the same benefits. So as we are increasing in our pathway towards achieving our energy efficiency and building electrification goals, we see this as a key tool in maintaining affordability for everyone as we move along. And these are just some of the ways that we're engaging in that and trying to maintain it. And, you know, it goes without saying, the rate case process is an integral part of that. And, and I want to reiterate a point made earlier to make sure everyone's on the same page. We engage in the rate cases in response to the utility's proposal. And our ability to achieve a settlement means that we arrive at an outcome that is different from what the utility proposed. Should we fail to achieve that settlement, what the utility has proposed would become the default rates. So this is a, from the day we get the rate case to the conclusion of the rate case, the commission is fighting to ensure affordability for all rate payers. And that's literally the entire point of the process.
So in the context of us trying to reach our CLCPA goals, we're running into some, some, we'll call them speed bumps as it relates to the federal government and having a president who's a climate denier and who has, you know, put the kibosh on a lot of the things, including offshore wind. What are we doing to work around that? And, you know, kind of what is somewhat the plan in terms of creating particularly generation, additional generation? Because you can't start eliminating fossil fuels until you have enough generation because we have simultaneously increased load, correct?
Correct.
Right? So what are we doing to increase generation and, you know, creating more electrons despite the interference from the federal government?
So this is the question I've been waiting for. So what I can say is this, we were on a path that I would say could be successful until the interference from the federal government. And the actions taken have created obstacles, particularly for offshore wind, that will be extremely challenging to overcome. That does not mean we have stopped looking into renewables. That does not mean we will abandon renewables, but that does mean we need to rethink how we approach renewable energy and battery storage, Senator Maitreya, throughout the state of New York. And so in doing that, again, we have the various planning processes, some of which established through direction from the legislature, and some of which through commission traditional action, all of which are being brought to bear to identify a new pathway towards achieving the generation mix needed for our future goals. Where we're focusing our attention now is flexibility. And what I mean by flexibility, it's recognition that much of the energy need is driven by all of us in this room. And if we can manage a system where we can autonomously control how much electricity is used in a given home, business, or industry without interfering with your day-to-day ongoings, we can make some significant savings.
Are you talking about demand response?
Correct. Yeah. So that, that's one of the terms used to describe it, demand response. We worked with the Brattle Group. They recently released a report assessing the potential for that in New York State, and they pegged it at roughly eight gigawatts of potential flexibility could be achieved in New York State through a concerted effort. And, and to be clear, we currently peak at about 32 gigawatts. So this is a little over 10, close to 10% of what we, 20% of what we need. So the, the point of this is it's a huge resource. It's something that we can use and leverage, and we're working with our utilities now through a number of different programs, one of which is referred to as Bring Your Own Thermostat, where if you have central air conditioning and a smart thermometer, the utility will control the temperature in your home. That program, in its infancy, is currently yielding 100 megawatts of flexibility. And we're looking to expand that to include batteries and a variety of other resources over the next few years to further grow that potential. So this is not just build more renewables, we're also going to build infrastructure in homes to make them smarter and more flexible, to better integrate with the renewables when they come.
And I heard you talk about increasing and improving our transmission lines, which is critical. But in addition to that, I know we have significant issues around interconnections. Can you talk about what the PSC is doing both around interconnections and improving our grid, which we talk about as transmission?
Right. So when we talk about interconnection, we talk about it in two ways. One, connecting more renewable energy resources to the grid, that's the way most people think about it, but also connecting new load to the grid. So on the former side, when it comes to new generation assets, particularly renewable energy, the Office of Renewable Energy Siting, they are looking into new permitting, new protocols for accelerating the existing process. We're currently reviewing a variety of pathways, and that is something we hope to release in the not-too-near future. And that would be part of a public review process where other people can chime in and opine and provide feedback. So we're working full steam ahead and making it easier to connect renewable energy. On adding new load, I mentioned earlier, we're seeing manufacturing come back to the state. So one way we're trying to manage that is, instead of manufacturing being dispersed throughout the state in a random manner, we're creating clean energy zones. These clean energy zones ideally will be concentrated areas where we can focus investments of rate payer funds in a very specific and targeted way to maximize the benefits from those investments. So instead of building multiple transmission lines throughout the state, connecting one load here, one load there, we build a major transmission line to a particular area and connect multiple loads within close proximity. And we're working with a number of towns and communities throughout the state to identify those zones as we speak. And that's another way we're looking to, again, manage the process of this transition as we go forward.
And my last question, as we run out of time, is, you know, do we still have an opportunity to meet our goals in the timeframe in which the legislation lays out in the CLCPA?
So one goal we have already met, the 10 gig, the CLCPA calls for a six-gigawatt solar goal. We've already hit that, 10. We've hit six. The commission expanded it to 10, and we're on our way to hitting that. We've since further expanded that to 10 and 1/2, and we will hit that, too. Other goals, particularly the offshore wind, I, I think there are some major challenges there. And absent federal action, I'm not in cer, I'm not certain how we would overcome those. But we're looking at all our goals, and we're taking every effort we can to ensure that we make forward progress on achieving as many we can.
Yeah. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, sir.
Senator Ho, Ms. Segal?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for convening this important hearing to all my colleagues here, including Senator Parker, for his good questions. I'm State Senator Brad Hoyle, Ms. Segal, I represent the West Side of Manhattan. In June, I recall that the governor directed the New York Power Authority to develop a zero-mission advanced nuclear energy technology power plant. Have you spoken about this this morning yet?
I have not, no.
Could you give us an update on that? And where does nuclear fit in your plan to meet our climate goals, or does it at this point? As a follow-up, I'm interested to know what the governor has discussed in terms of modular nuclear reactors and how those costs might be controlled. And at the end of the day, I guess the question is, can we leverage nuclear reactors, or is that something you support to meet the energy demands, particularly around data centers, which is obviously a burgeoning use of power upstate and in Western New York?
Okay. So thank you, Senator. So the plans for nuclear are in development. In fact, today is the beginning of a nuclear summit in Syracuse. I would be there if it not for this session, but I'm happy to be here. I'll be going later today. The summit is part of an ongoing process through which New York agencies meet with stakeholders to better understand the challenges of nuclear deployment. We've had the opportunity to meet with representatives from Georgia, from Ontario, and international developers as well, to learn from their lived experience and understand how we can develop our own plans with that experience in mind. And that is an ongoing effort. In terms of the type of energy that we need, I, I'd said earlier, we are going to need all types of energy, and we want to make sure every energy source that we bring into the grid is clean. And in doing so, we need to not just focus on any one particular type of energy resource, we need to have a mix.
Have we, have we, have we turned the page 20 years ago, or fewer? You know, there were plans, of course, to, to decommission Indian Point. Does this administration have a different viewpoint on nuclear than the previous administration did?
So I, I can say that this administration supports a policy of abundance where the more energy we have, the better off we are, and we are taking a careful look at how- And we are taking a careful look at how nuclear can fit into that approach.
Are you comfortable with safety and community concerns at this point? Or is that something you're still examining? And will you be having public hearings on that very important question about whether nuclear is safe?
So, sir, I cannot imagine taking any action without public participation in public hearings, so just directly, that's going to happen. In terms of assessing the pros and cons at any particular location, that's going to be a discussion. There's a running rumor that we can cite things wherever we want in this state. My experience is that's not the case. There are processes put in place. We work with the communities. The developers work with the communities. It's, again, an open and transparent process designed to ensure people know what's happening and not create surprises.
Do you have any timeframe as to when you might pursue this additional mix of renewables, which is obviously going to be, again, it's a huge difference from the previous administration, which I think many people might welcome. But at the same time, I'm interested to know how far you and your team are into researching the potential for nuclear in New York.
Well, again, I'm going to reiterate what I said earlier. The process is ongoing, and the event that we're having today is part of that process. From a timeline perspective, I think the goal will be to identify a pathway sooner rather than later, given the low growth we're experiencing, and make a determination as soon as possible. But nuclear, again, is a topic that is controversial to some, not so to others. And given the divergent viewpoints of everyone involved, it's, you know, conversation upfront is going to be essential. And what we're doing now is literally that, making sure we can have the conversations, understand the pros, the cons, the risks, the steps involved, and make sure we make the right choice.
And just as a layperson, I'm curious to know, like, how, how long does this take from project development to actual implementation? Are we talking decades?
So...
In your estimation?
So it's challenging to say, sir, and part of that is, I know how long it took for us to get to the point where we were developing the renewable energy we had. And this was not a bright idea somebody had on a Saturday afternoon, and then the next day we started building wind turbines. It took decades of planning and process to get to where we were immediately before the Trump administration. So I imagine we will go through a similar process with nuclear in terms of taking a very measured approach and understanding what the risks are and what the pros and cons are. And we are already in the midst of that.
And final question. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, back to the modular nuclear model. Could you describe what that is for us? And is that the model you're looking at, basically smaller reactors, correct?
So it's, again, we're looking at all options. I would, I would say it's safe to say we're trying to make sure we cast a wide net and we don't exclude anything prematurely. What I can say of my understanding of small modular reactors, and this is an understanding built up over, I would say, a decade of hearing about small, decade-plus at this point, of hearing about small modular reactors, is they have different capabilities than the nuclear that we know and experience today in New York. Nuclear assets we have in the state are effectively baseload assets. You want to turn them on, leave them on, and have them run for very long periods of times. The SMRs offer different capabilities, some of which I've heard mimic the capabilities of gas-fired generation, in that they can ramp up very quickly and ramp down. And again, there is a reason we have a different, we have different types of generation. The grid requires different generators to do different things at different times. And so a single type of generator, a single type of renewable, a single type of battery is not going to do it. You need a variety. And so looking at nuclear, it's understanding what's out there. How do we make it work? What is the full scope of the potential? And how to integrate that in. And in addition to what we're doing with the summit today and the previous one held earlier this year, we have the state energy plan ongoing as well. And again, so the state has many processes in place where we have the opportunity to look at and examine the findings of each and integrate them into next steps.
Okay, final question.
It's going to take time.
When might the public learn as to which direction the governor wants to take? Is there going to be a report after this conference? Are you preparing a study for her review? Will it be shared with members of the legislature?
So I think that the specifics of that would likely be best answered. It's an answer I can't give you specifics of right now. I know we are developing a master plan. The timing of that is not something I can speak to at the moment, as the plan is still in development. And again, it's going to be the result of all the outreach and discussions that were happening.
So that's what we should be looking for, is the master plan?
Yes.
As the next decision point for us to consider?
I would say so, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
We'll have another set of questions from the ranking member on the Energy Committee, Senator Matarra.
Good to see you again. And thank you, Senator Parker. You know, question about the, obviously, the CLCPA, the all, well, the governor with the 2026 all-electric buildings, six stories and under, all-new homes coming up in 2026. Do you feel that this should be a pause? Or me, I feel it should be a repeal right now till, because the governor even came out, obviously, Controller DeNapoli came out with his audit, right? Everything saying that, in other words, that we're not there yet. This is a mandate. This isn't a goal. My question to you is, do you think we should pause right now, all-electric buildings for 2026, especially on Long Island and in New York State? You know, with our grid being antiquated the way it is? Because we really didn't put any, any funds for, to, for our infrastructure. My question is, the 2026 all-electric, you know, mandate?
Yes, I don't, opining on legislation is not my favorite thing to do.
Oh, okay.
But what I can say is, regarding your statement on adoption, it's, where I've seen, according to the data, some of the greatest adoption has actually been on Long Island and Nassau County. We've seen a significant uptick in solar. We've seen a significant uptick in battery adoption in households. And this is a direct result of what I would describe a very proactive and engaged policy process, where we are providing a variety of solutions in a, in a way that allows that integration to happen. Time variant pricing is something that's happening throughout Long Island right now. And I believe by the end of the year, that'll be, by the end of the year? Or, no? We're rolling out time variant pricing in Long Island. I forget exactly when the timeline is. But the main idea there is by engaging customers with the assets that they are buying. People are buying EVs. People are putting solar on their roof. We want to make sure that those actions can actually benefit the grid and actually be a financial benefit directly to the customers, to the households, to the consumers that adopt them. And so these things are happening. And the accelerated renewable bill is designed to help that along. And so I, one of the key things of the commission is to create an environment where we don't serve as a hindrance to the activities, the economic activities, that the average citizen wants to engage in. And so our policies are designed with that in mind.
Thank you for that. But again, do you feel that Long Island, obviously, our grid could handle this, what's happening right now with, again, all-electric? You think that we are in good shape to move forward? We have developers that are coming forward. We had a big rally yesterday. Developers are coming forward. They're trying to get all the applications in before the year is up because, yeah, no, that's true. They're trying to get the applications in for projects, so did not go all-electric because of all the rates that are going up. Right now, we, so far, the cost is over $2.9 billion so far, the cost of the rates that have gone up in New York State that are costing all the residents. It's $2.9 billion. That is a real number, just to go and to put on the backs of, again, we talked about people, in other words, are struggling right now, right now with their bills, and the utility bills are climbing. And we're all very, very concerned since this, you know, since the CLCPA has been moving forward. It's, and again, it's just something that's costing the ratepayer for any, everything moving forward with this technology. So Mike, I know that wasn't a question, but talking about other resources, Senator Parker and I, we would talk about, you know, retooling possibly our existing power plants with carbon capture, moving forward. Now that we said that we're having a federal government, you're saying, is stopping wind, even though we did, projects did move forward. But now, moving forward, is there a possibility that you would look into, anybody would look into retooling our existing power plants for carbon capture? That would probably be the most efficient and economical way to move forward. Is there anything that we're looking forward to, you know, forward to help? Obviously, we talked about the NSE and the Constitution pipelines. Do you look into doing something like that?
So we're, again, we're looking into all options. And at the moment, we have a zero-by-40 proceeding through which we're examining what resources would apply to that zero, that zero emissions-free grid reality we're trying to achieve by 2040. So that's something that's ongoing. That's the review process we have in place.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Chair, thank you for being here. I appreciate your time. I just have a couple of more questions. And I have about 50, but I don't have that much time to ask all 50. Is there a possibility to work to ensure that the ideas that you're sharing on affordability are put up on your public comment page on a regular basis? And how do you, do you have a, a public comment webpage on your site?
We do. And the comments we receive are typically, there are a couple of ways for us to receive comments, so if there's not...
Let me ask it in a different, Senator Matarra and Senator Ramos alluded to new technologies that they've seen in other places, and the need to try to incorporate those new technologies into expanding our dependability, so we're not over-dependent on any one technology. How do you, how do you propose to talk about those things in a public manner?
So I, the zero-by-40 proceeding is one place where that kind of feedback would be open and welcome. Again, that's the area where we're looking at what type of future electric generation resources are going to be integrating into the grid that's aligned with that zero emissions, emissions-free by 2040 vision.
Okay.
So that's, that's one place. There are other areas where that could be placed in. I mean, at the end of the day, you could always email at me, and I'm happy to look into it and work with the appropriate staff on anything coming from the Senate and any senator.
So the Senate can email you, but can, where would GP Public send the inquiry to?
So again, generally through the proceedings is the one way for the public to engage. Another would be to reach out to our customer service group, which we have an 800 number, we have an email address. So the public, if they have a question, they can inquire, and our team can direct them to the best place.
I just want to note for the record that you have been responsive and getting back to us in a timely manner, so I want to just put that on the record. Now I want to go into my main beef, vest facilities, the battery energy storage facility. Unfortunately, I have two in my southeast Queens area that Connet is proposing that's literally less, the distance between the facility and a private home is the distance between you and I. Would you want that next to your house?
I mean, go ahead.
Hi, Senator. Hopefully you can hear me. Okay. So for battery storage projects, we have a very limited role on siting. Most of that siting is done by the local authority having jurisdiction.
I keep getting everybody pointing fingers at everybody.
Sure.
And nobody wants to take responsibility. But my primary goal is to stop these two facilities from being located in less than 10 feet away from a private residence. It's ridiculous, and it shouldn't happen. So I would hope that the Public Service Commission finds a way to make it clear to Con Edison in this case, and to anyone in any case, that they should not put this technology next to a private residence. Even in the best-case scenario, I'm told that if something goes wrong, the facility has to be able to burn out before they can contain it. And for that to happen next to a private residence is ridiculous. So I would hope that the Service Commission will work with a billion-dollar company, Con Edison, to move these two locations, to use the existing property for community facilities, which they desperately need, and I just want to put that on the record here. So I appreciate that no one wants to take responsibility, but everyone is responsible for safety of residents. And I have to be, along with my colleagues, and we've been quite aligned on this, to try to protect the safety of those residents that wound up getting facilities placed on them by a company that's trying to meet a standard that has been imposed on them. I'm not going to mention their name only because I hope they do the right thing, but if they don't soon, we're going to make sure that they are, everyone in the country understands what's going on. Because a battery energy facility should not be placed less than 10 foot from, and then the company has the nerve to sue one homeowner for access to their driveway and to their property. That shouldn't happen at all. So I just want to put that on the record, too. I won't stay, I could, Nine Dot is the company, and the property is on Linden Boulevard, right next to a historic part, portion of my district, right across from, literally, the driveway between the homeowner and the facility is the distance between you and I. That shouldn't happen.
Sure, Senator. What I, what I was going to say after, we have a very limited role under statute for siting, but it doesn't mean that we don't...
I get that, but we need to change that role. You should not have to be limited into where these companies install and put up issues. I get that.
Yes.
You know, there's a need to improve our energy capacity. We've given them alternative locations that make sense. They should quickly make those adjustments. What else did I have a beef on? I had a beef on something. But I'm gonna, I'm gonna just ask one last question. A lot of advocates are going to testify later today. We expect to hear from them, how issues, concerns, and proposals they raise in rate cases are often punted to generic proceedings, where then they are referred back to items that were never raised in confidential negotiations. What are you doing to help track and direct issues to ensure that they're being proper attention, given proper attention and consideration to improve this process for intervenors?
So this is, this is an interesting point that different people have varying perspectives on. The way I'd like to describe it is this, a party presents an idea. The commission thinks it's a really good idea, and we want to use that idea everywhere. And so instead of focusing that idea on one specific venue in one specific utility, we take that and apply it in a generic proceeding, so it can apply to all. And so this is our way of taking something that we think is important and applying it as quickly as possible in a generic way across the utilities under our service there. So that's the why. I can imagine the how can be challenging, because, again, much of what we do is labor-intensive, it's laborious, it's timely, and I can imagine many organizations, bless you. Many organizations may not have the resources to engage in multiple venues at a specific time. But in looking at what is going to create the best outcome for New Yorkers, if we get a good idea, we want to make sure we can utilize it and implement it as quickly as possible. And doing the generic proceedings is that pathway available to us.
I appreciate that answer. I would want to work on some tweaking on that as well. Just final question and opportunity for thought. The MTA has now put out a scorecard based on how they're doing with their construction and how they're doing with spending, which is something that I'm proud of, I've been pushed them to do, and now they have a scorecard and online that people can look at. When will the PSC publish an affordability, annual affordability scorecard showing average household energy burden, enrollment and discount programs, the numbers of arrears and shut-offs, so that customers can track whether affordability is improving or worsening?
So some of that information is already published. One specific thing that we've recently begun doing, again, at the direction of the legislature, whenever a utility submits a rate case, we prepare a document highlighting what the impact of their submission is going to be on rates, showing what the customers can expect. So that's something we've recently started doing within the last year or so. The items you suggest are things we can look into in figuring out how to best expand in that direction. That's something we can absolutely explore.
Great. Well, we'll follow up with you on that, kind of try to work with you to make that happen. You have been, again, to sum up, and Senator Parker, did you want to do a summary? To sum up, I want to thank you for your... To sum up, I want to thank you for your time. There's a lot of other questions that I have that will put you in writing to follow up on these issues, but you have been, you have shown yourself to be willing to take on the questions and to try to figure out solutions. I appreciate that. It takes, takes some time to move a mountain, but if we can all push a little bit, we can get some things done. I hope you leave somebody here to listen to the advocate questions, so that we can quickly get a response to them as quickly as possible. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Senators. Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Next, we'll hear from, next, I'm sorry. Next, we'll hear from Pulp, Lori Wheelock, and, yes, we hear from Fossil Free Tompkins, Irene Weisner, American Association of Retired Persons, then Earth, and Earth Justice, and the Energy Law, Energy Justice Law and Policy Center. If you can all come up to the table and start in that order.
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you all. Pulp first.
Thank you so much, Senator. Good morning. My name is Lori Wheelock. I'm the executive director and counsel of the Public Utility Law Project. We go by Pulp for short. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here to discuss these issues, which can be very complex at times. The advocates here have many stories to share, and we appreciate the opportunity to elevate, discuss, and as you said, move this mountain. Pulp has submitted substantive written comments addressing barriers, concerns, and making recommendations, some of which are new, and some of which are existing laws or bills to be considered. The first area I want to talk about today is the need for New York State to reimagine public participation at the Department of Public Service and at the Commission. We see barriers every single day, be it an individual who wants to know more about why NiSEG is raising their rates, to parties, new and old, who don't know where to find discovery answers on a portal, or how to file comment, or how to get an item on an agenda. We believe that there needs to be more done, and we thank the Commission. They have started to, you know, put administrative law judges in some of the rate cases with us, but there needs to be more. And so one of Pulp's recommendations is an Office of Public Participation, either housed at the Department of Public Service, or as being considered right now, an independent office of the utility consumer advocate. And we believe that work could be done there. Our second point is the need to review and revise the rate case processes themselves. You heard a bit this morning that there are two tracks to the rate cases. The first track is litigation. Under the public service law, you could go to litigation, you could actually cross-examine the utilities for multiple days. We saw this in Central Hudson last year. We were in Albany for ten days, cross-examining. We felt we came out with a good outcome, but what happened is the public service law limits those rate plans to one year. And so in the settlement track, which is the second track, you can actually negotiate in confidentiality all the aspects of the rate case, but you can also set rates for multiple years. And so that is a very important distinction. So our second recommendation is to consider amending the public service law, along with guidelines and restrictions on the costs, but to allow the utilities to file rate cases for up to three years, but then also allow us to litigate for three years, giving us that option to go with litigation. You will hear many stories, not breaching confidentiality today, about some of the power struggles we see in confidential settlement. When there is not an administrative law judge in the space with us, there is a power struggle. Trying to get items on the agenda, the utility often controls the agenda, the schedule, the meeting, the order, the documents, which entities are at the table. And so that power struggle can be very difficult even for Pulp to deal with, let alone a new organization or a small community-based organization that's trying to do it in the first instance. Moving on, the third bucket, which I'll be honest, is probably one of the most difficult, but we're seeing it all across the country, is the need to review and revise the rates themselves. It's a lot of work, but what we believe is that under even the Supreme Court precedent and the Hope decision, what is just and reasonable for safe and reliable service has to be reviewed, and we can do that work here in New York. We feel that the balance is tipping more towards the shareholders and the utilities than the public. And so there's a number of existing pieces of legislation that are included in our testimony we support. But the last item I want to address quickly, and I think the clock may have, okay, good, still have two minutes, is actually a victory story that I wanted to elevate, and I believe could be a good litmus test for the legislature while having these discussions with the department, the commission, and the advocates. And that was a New York State appellate court decision. The appellate court is our highest in New York State. And over the summer, they issued a decision in Central Hudson versus the Department of Public Service. It's CV twenty-three dash twenty-four six seven. What was involved was a bill that became law. It was a Senator Comrie bill and Assemblymember Paulin bill after Superstorm Isaiah. Worried about prolonged outages, spoiled food and medicine, a law was created that would allow customers to apply for credits to get reimbursed for spoiled food and medicine. The utilities during the regulatory review process of the, you know, rate-making to implement the law at the department challenged the language of the law, indicating that they felt they should be able to recover any of those credits from all ratepayers. They took it to court, and in the end, the court found in favor of the department and upheld the legislative intent. Some of the important principles here was that the law was very clear, that rate recovery was not allowed. And so that black letter law, that held, and that's important to remember, that when the legislature is clear with the black letter law, the court gives that deference. They also gave great deference to the department, recognizing their rate-making, their expertise, and their work to get the regulations to match the legal intent. And that last part is the legislative intent. They looked at the bill jacket, they looked at the governor's support memo, they looked at sponsors' memos, and the public's, you know, letters of support, and they realized that that law was important. And ultimately, ratepayers should not be subsidizing those costs. That is a perfect example of where it is on the company to do that work. So we feel that is a perfect example of how we can proceed as a state to do a review to see, again, what is just and reasonable. And this could happen with court claims against utilities, superfund cost, ROE, fixed charges. We can go down the line, which we do in our testimony. And so we appreciate the ability to be here today with our fellow advocates.
Fossil Free Tompkins?
Thank you. Hi, I'm Irene Weiser. I'm the coordinator of Fossil Free Tompkins. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak with you today. I've been active in PSC proceedings since 2012, including three NiSEG rate cases. And like my colleagues here, I've experienced deep frustrations with the rate-making process. The purpose of my testimony is to raise concerns about the way confidential settlement negotiations have come to dominate our rate cases. Settlements are supposed to be efficient, but in practice, they undermine transparency, accountability, and fairness, and can result in higher costs to ratepayers. Further, confidentiality makes the process vulnerable to procedural unfairness, bias, and coercion. And because of confidentiality, I can't disclose if, hypothetically speaking, if meetings were scheduled last minute, or if utilities controlled the agenda, or if lesser resource stakeholders were not allowed time to discuss their concerns or face disparaging remarks. Nor can I say if utilities inflated their initial revenue requests to create the illusion of compromise, or if they didn't provide cost justifications for infrastructure projects costing hundreds of millions of dollars that were subsequently approved. I also can't mention if return on equity, the source of utility profits, was decided like you might see in bargaining for the price of a used car. And I can't say if department staff made concessions despite unanimous objections from stakeholders, or if policy matters, like protecting vulnerable customers or upholding the state's climate law, were inexplicably subject to negotiation. I also can't say if parties signed the settlement agreement out of exhaustion or coercion, or if some signed without ever having attended a single settlement meeting. So while I can't say if any of these scenarios took place, I can say that the confidential settlement process makes such abuses possible and invisible. The problem is compounded, since once settlement agreement is published, the DPS staff and the administrative law judges regard the existence of an agreement as by definition being in the public interest. So during evidentiary hearings, stakeholders are admonished, and this is actually part of the, the settlement guidelines, that we cannot question individual elements of the JP, because it's considered a delicately balanced, interdependent whole. The message is clear. The hearing is performative, and the agreement stands. This lack of transparency means that neither the public nor even the commissioners can know the cost estimates were justified, if the concessions were fair, or if lower-cost alternatives were left on the table. The outcome is predictable, higher rates and less accountability. And in my longer remarks, I actually bring some citations to that. Obviously, things must change. First, I recommend some basic changes that can be done and should be done to help make any rate-making process more fair. And then after that, I'll identify some longer-term approaches that I think should be considered thoughtfully and approached with caution. So the quick necessary changes, as my colleague has already talked about, is to restore and fully staff an office for utility public advocacy, provide intervening, intervener funding to level the player field, playing field, require DEC participation in rate cases, require that the return on equity be addressed either formulaically or in an evidentiary hearing and never negotiated, appoint independent mediators to run settlement talks, review and update the PSC settlement guidelines, hire more DPS staff and increase their training opportunities, and require attendance of at least three commissioners at evidentiary hearings. These other changes to the rate-making process that I'm going to recommend, I certainly don't have the expertise to, to pinpoint which, which way I think we should go, and I think it's a very complex thing. But, so I urge caution, whether we should keep settlement negotiations but end confidentiality, eliminate settlement negotiations and instead rely only on evidentiary hearings, whether they're single-year or multi-year, return to using prudence reviews, which were used in, before we got to settlements, where utilities invest their own capital and only get rate increases after proving that the expenditures were, were cost-effective. This model puts the utility and not ratepayer capital at risk upfront. Develop a hybrid model of these, where some things could be handled in an evidentiary hearing, and others might be subject to the prudence reviews. And to evaluate other rate-making models, such as performance-based rate-making. So my final recommendation, as much as I hate to say it, is to proceed slowly. Rate-making is extraordinarily complex, involving many billions of dollars, and it's deeply intertwined with our state's economic, social, and climate future. I recommend convening a blue ribbon panel, as was done after Superstorm Sandy, to evaluate not only the best rate-making practices, but also how to change from, or change our regulatory culture from settlement to more fully protecting the public interest in a rapidly changing energy ecosystem. Thank you.
Thank you. Who was it on this panel?
That's a very interesting question. I, I certainly could make some recommendations, as might some of my colleagues. I, I think, you know, we'd have to figure out what the remit is. In, again, in my longer remarks.
Who said on the panel after Superstorm Sandy? I forgot about it.
I can't answer that for you offhand.
Some procedural discussion.
It's okay. No, it's fine.
I'm breaking procedure.
I appreciate the questions, even if I don't have answers for you right away. I'd be happy to look into these things, though.
Thank you. All right. American Association of Retired Persons.
Hi, thank you, Senators. This is an incredibly important issue to AARP, because this is an incredibly important issue to our members. When I hear from my membership, the top three issues that we hear about are Social Security, Medicare, and the absolutely unaffordable high utility rates that they're facing. We at AARP feel that the process is really just not set up to encourage robust participation from consumers, representatives of residential utility ratepayers, and I think that's due to two things, a lack of transparency and a really uneven playing field when it comes to intervening in these cases. We've heard a lot so far about the lack of transparency, so I'm not going to harp on that for the interest of time. But I do think this reliance on the joint proposals and the settlements makes it difficult even for the people who are involved in the rate case to have clarity as to why certain provisions were included in the settlement, which then how can the regular residential consumer understand what's making up their utility bill if the people at the table don't even have full clarity as to what's included? I think advocates also face a really impossible choice. If they come to these rate cases with a list of issues that they want included, and some of those issues are included, are they now required to sign on to the full proposal, even if it includes a double-digit rate increase, which is certainly something that they would normally oppose? And we think that the consumers don't have really any clarity as to what they're paying for when they pay for their utility bill, that it's so much more than just turning on the lights or heating their homes, that there's all these other projects that are funded through residential ratepayers. And I think we're really at a crisis point when it comes to energy affordability. ConEd currently has a rate case before the PSC. Over about the past ten years, ConEd's annual average terminations was around sixty thousand. We're on track to double that this year. We're at a hundred and eleven thousand terminations in ConEd service territory so far. Statewide, there are 1.2 million households that are sixty days or more behind their utility bills, and almost thirteen thousand termination notices sent a day in August. So we think there's also an unlevel playing field when people try to intervene in these rate cases, because there's really no shortage of resources and participation from the utility companies, from the large industrial consumers, but just so much less on the behalf of the actual residential ratepayers. And more, we are paying for the utility companies' representation at the table through our rates, but we are not paying for somebody to represent us as strongly and as ferociously. So we think that there's a number of recommendations that the state can implement. First, the governor needs to sign the bill to allow for an independent utility consumer advocate, to give consumers a very strong voice at the table. We think we need more transparency, and I recognize that the legislature has done some really great work over the past several years to pass bills that will allow for more transparency in the rate cases and the comparison of what their monthly utility bills will be, but we think that there's more that can be done there. We also think that we need a full review of the guidelines of the Public Service Commission to find ways where we can maximize consumer input and increase transparency. We also think it's time for the state to provide some investment in the EAP. The way that it's set up, where we know that not every low-income or moderate-income ratepayer who's eligible is in the program, means that these people are paying for other people in that income eligibility for lower rates. We think if you do it through the state, that may spread out the costs a little bit and help ease the burden. We also are in full support of a proposal for intervener funding. Thank you, Senator Parker. And echo comments that were made earlier today. AARP is in full support of the legislature providing funding to Pulp for the important work that they do. Thank you.
Earth Justice?
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Andrew Sivadra. I'm an attorney with the nonprofit environmental law organization, Earth Justice. My testimony today is informed by the thoughts and experiences of several Earth Justice attorneys who have practiced before at the New York State Public Service Commission. And it is my hope that this testimony will assist the legislature in identifying practical reforms that will allow our state to fully meet the challenges of equity, energy affordability, and climate change. As you all know, the CLCPA mandates that our state's electric system must be powered by seventy percent renewable energy by 2030, must be one hundred percent zero emission by 2040, and must reduce greenhouse gas emissions at least eighty-five percent below 1990 levels by 2050. In our written testimony, Earth Justice has highlighted four proposals that will allow the PSC to better guide the transformation of our state's energy system that is required by the CLCPA while tackling energy affordability.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Andrew Sivadra. I'm an attorney with the nonprofit environmental law organization, Earth Justice. My testimony today is informed by the thoughts and experiences of several Earth Justice attorneys who have practiced before at the New York State Public Service Commission, and it is my hope that this testimony will assist the legislature in identifying practical reforms that will allow our state to fully meet the challenges of equity, energy affordability, and climate change. As you all know, the CLCPA mandates that our state's electric system must be powered by 70% renewable energy by 2030, must be 100% zero emission by 2040, and must reduce greenhouse gas emissions at least 85% below 1990 levels by 2050. In our written testimony, Earth Justice has highlighted four proposals that will allow the PSC to better guide the transformation of our state's energy system that is required by the CLCPA while tackling energy affordability. First, pass the full New York Heat Act and remove the costly obligation to serve gas. Second, create an Office of Climate Compliance within DPS. Third, the legislature should direct the commission to set sector-wide emission reduction benchmarks for the gas distribution system. And finally, the commission should begin an integrated gas and electric planning proceeding, like the one envisioned by Senate Bill S. 5995. In the interest of time today, I will talk about the last two. Earth Justice has not observed the urgency necessary from the Department of Public Service nor from the commission to meet the requirements of the CLCPA. Section 7.3 of the climate law prohibits the PSC from taking actions, like, for example, adopting joint proposals, that would disproportionately burden disadvantaged communities, or DAX. Since the CLCPA's passage, the PSC has adopted every joint proposal brought before it and has found each of its approvals to be compliant with Section 7.3, despite strong evidence to the contrary. For example, in the 2021 Orange and Rockland rate case, the commission found its approval of a joint proposal to be compliant with Section 7.3 because, quote, "No party alleged a disproportionate burden on DAX." That is to say, no one gave us evidence that DAX would be harmed by this. But this gets the analysis backwards. It's the government's job to do the analysis under Section 7.3. It's not a private party's job. Now, this lack of urgency also extends to the commission's long-term gas planning proceeding. The stated purpose of this proceeding is to ensure that the state's gas utilities reduce gas infrastructure and greenhouse gas emissions in a manner consistent with the CLCPA. And yet, despite this clear goal, the commission has adopted multiple long-term plans from utilities that are plainly inconsistent with the CLCPA, and the commission will not set specific emission reduction benchmarks for utilities to meet. So what do we have to show for it? Emissions have not decreased, gas infrastructure costs that we pay for have not decreased, and the commission continues to approve double-digit rate increases. The PSC must be directed to set sector-wide emission reduction benchmarks for the gas distribution system, as these benchmarks would provide guidance to the PSC and utilities for long-term planning. Now, I fear that anyone inspired today by the testimony of my fellow panelists will decide to get involved at the PSC, only to encounter the same Kafkaesque labyrinthine hall of mirrors that we have all experienced. Imagine someone who wants to get involved in grid planning because they know that the state is moving towards an all-electric future, and the integrity of our electric grid is going to be very important. Perhaps they join the aptly-named Grid of the Future proceeding, but then they see another called the Coordinated Grid Planning proceeding. Is that the one they should join? Or should it be the Proactive Planning proceeding? Or the DER Interconnection proceeding, because that sounds important? But so does the Large-Scale Renewable Program proceeding. The offshore wind proceeding will have a big impact on the grid, and the New Efficiency New York proceeding is considering proposals on building electrification, and that will also have a major impact on the grid. Come to think of it, so will each utility's long-term gas planning proceeding, as all those gas customers continue to electrify. That's more than 10 ongoing proceedings before the PSC that will have an impact on the state's electric grid. It is practically impossible for an outside interested party, let alone the Public Service Commission itself, to keep track of each one of these proceedings. The legislature could begin to pull at this knot by requiring the commission to begin an integrated gas planning, sorry, gas and electric planning proceeding that could consolidate many of the existing proceedings into one. Doing so would allow the PSC to oversee our state's shift to an electrified economy while carefully managing and regulating the process to avoid unnecessary costs to ratepayers. Thanks for the opportunity to testify today. We look forward to working with the legislature to ensure that New York meets the challenges posed by energy affordability and the climate crisis.
Thank you. Now, we hear from Energy, Justice, Law, and Policy Center.
Good afternoon. My name is Raya Salter. I'm the founder and executive director of the Energy, Justice, Law, and Policy Center. I'm an energy attorney. I serve on the New York State Climate Action Council and the PSC's Energy Policy Planning Advisory Council for Transmission, and I've testified before the U.S. Congress on the implementation of the CLCPA or Climate Act. And really, I want to say that the PSC requires reform in order to execute the energy and justice mandates of the CLCPA and stop the freight train of utility rate increases. The challenges are not incidental; they are structural and relate to process, coordination, and affordability. Many of the PSC's directives and processes are of a bygone era. Rate cases have long operated as utility-led proceedings with limited outside participation with the anticipation of a rubber stamp of 3% to 6% increases. This was a world that did not face the climate and affordability crises that we confront today, and as you've heard, the rate case process has broken down. When I was a junior associate in private practice, you know, we had experience with litigating rate cases. There was a mix of litigation and settlement, and that is completely broken down in this inside process, as you've heard. And the stakes have really changed. The PSC now holds more responsibility than any agency in stewarding New York's clean energy transition, and that includes the important mandates to disadvantaged communities. Yet, the PSC lacks clear guidance needed for staff and stakeholders to consistently apply these mandates over its myriad dockets. Likewise, with fossil energy costs skyrocketing, the PSC does not evaluate how proposed rate increases affect, impact affordability with enough rigor. We need to use that energy burden standard if we're going to know what just and reasonable means. In addition, these process and guidance gaps are compounded by a lack of overarching policy coordination, as you've heard here among the many dockets. Billions of dollars of proposals, National Grid's 16 billion in transmission alone, are being made over, you know, docket by docket, and these proposals are effectively renegotiating New York's energy policy without enough coordination or assessment overarching for policymakers or stakeholders to follow. And further, DPS is relying more and more on utility analyses, which grow harder and harder to independently evaluate. And this lack of transparency leaves even major market participants and certainly communities without access to the modeling that drives these decisions. The imbalance means that the PSC is weakened in its ability to fulfill its main role: ensure the primacy of the public and not the private interest. You'll hear that the clean energy transition is unaffordable, but that is backwards. New Yorkers already pay among the highest rates in the nation. Volatility and high costs are the features of the fossil fuel status quo, not the clean transition. So there are a lot of recommendations. I'll highlight three pillars that I'd like, you know, to address. One, let's update the public service law to recognize that energy and water are basic necessities and rights and include an affordability standard. Let's require affordability impact statements and stress tests in every rate case. Let's use the energy burden standards and other indicators to rigorously determine how rates are actually impacting customers' affordability. This is a common-sense step that's in use in California. Another, discipline capital and align incentives. Adopt affordability-first, performance-based regulation. Shift from spend more, earn more, to perform better, earn more, a policy that has become mainstream in utility regulation. New York used to lead this conversation in the Reforming the Energy Vision era and should follow a multitude of other states in requiring the implementation of these techniques. We should fix the process, as you've heard from my colleagues, disrupt this year-by-year closed-door settlement dynamic that really is only something that's been happening in the last 10 years. We used to litigate these cases. Modernize rate case motion practice and procedures to meet today's needs for robust, multi-stakeholder processes. And finally, put the public and their experts at the table. I agree, we need to create this Office of Public Participation, an independent Office of the Ratepayer Advocate, and expand intervenor funding in both energy and water dockets. And we do need to build capacity inside DPS. Resource DPS to conduct independent modeling and require clear guidance on applying CLCPA, environmental, and justice mandates in every docket. So these are just a few of the reforms that are needed. We need to take practical steps and move with all haste so that we can have affordability and clean energy that we deserve in New York State.
Thank you. Any questions for the panel?
Sure.
Okay.
I didn't know if you were going to go first.
Yes, ladies first.
You guys are such shuttles. Just me and the boys today. Well, Lori, it's good to see you again. I guess I'm wondering, well, what role should consumer advocates play when it comes to helping shape how DPS evaluates utilities?
So, thank you, Senator, and good to see you as well. I think consumer advocates have that first-line, like, frontline defense experience. You know, I'm sure your district offices are hearing it. I know our hotline is hearing it. It is the struggle, and those voices and those stories are so important. It could be, I've fallen behind, I'm at risk of shut-off, what do I do, to, you know what? Everyone on my street got smart meters installed last week, and all of a sudden, our bills are skyrocketing with the next. And so it's those real-life stories that help shape the process. Again, not breaching confidentiality, but sometimes you get in these meetings, and where the consumer voice is, is, you know, lost between methodologies and numbers and cost of service. And so a lot of the recommendations you heard today is about shifting that lens. I'm not here saying the utility shouldn't profit. I'm not saying that. But what I'm saying is that there has to be that balance, and we've seen a snowball, and it's growing, and the costs are becoming so expensive that if we take a minute and we start to drill down and do the hard work and lead with the voices of what people are going through, we're going to be able to cut those costs and have better results.
Do you think DPS has been effective in protecting ratepayers in rate cases?
I think DPS can do more. I think they definitely, they have a consumer protection panel, you know, they do have a team, but there can always be more. And I think we're also seeing a lot of the struggles, the understaffed, maybe needing more experts. Look at everything with AI. Look at cybersecurity. Like, there's real things out there that we need to do more of, and we need them to be able to staff up as well.
How transparent are utilities when it comes to providing the data needed to evaluate their climate and affordability claims?
So I looked at my fellow panelists with this one. I'll start quickly and flag that this is something, again, we need to see reform on. There is a Hinchey-Jacobson bill, for example, with capital costs that requires at the time of filing, far more detail, far more numbers. I think that is, again, a really important lens here. We're not saying you can't apply for capital projects, but you need to be more specific at the time of filing versus through the process itself. And I think, again, it'll result in better outcomes. But I want to turn to my fellow panelists, if that's okay, Senator.
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, I can speak to experience with the last nice and great case, and I was a participant at that, along with Pulp and several other folks here. And the staff reviews the filing when it comes in and then are offered their opportunity to provide written testimony. The written testimony of the staff was eye-popping in terms of how little of the costs were justified, duplications of things, you know, they had proposed to put in fancy reclosers on the wires instead of just trimming the lines that are causing the outages, just all kinds of things that staff did identify as, but largely, missing justifications, missing sets of priorities. And there is, right now, in law already, a requirement that these things be provided in the filing, and they were not. And not only that, and this is in testimony that I filed, so I'm not going to be disclosing anything here, but after the joint proposal was issued, we, along with AARP, filed questions saying, did these problems that you found before, were they fixed? What new information did you get? And the answer from staff is, no, we don't have new information. And we tried to cross-examine on that during the evidentiary hearing. We weren't allowed because these were decisions that were made during the secret process. And so in the end, it couldn't be put on the record. We did, early on, file a motion to dismiss, along with, I think it came in under Pulp's name, but many of the stakeholders involved joined in on that document, and it went into a black hole. We didn't hear back on the motion to dismiss until several months later, when the, I think it was, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it was after it was confirmed by the commission. So that was probably seven or eight months later that we finally got a ruling on the motion to dismiss. So it's really been a challenge to get the information that we need from the utility and to hold them accountable. And, you know, I'm somewhat sympathetic to staff that they struggle, look, they really do try hard to get the information, but when they don't, we shouldn't be moving forward.
I'll add that transparency and data sharing are an incredibly important issue. We need more data upfront. We need standards to how to understand it because it's more and more complex. And we also need tools that can be used for, common tools to be used for stakeholders to understand it. For instance, you know, other states use rate calculators, you know, that have been agreed upon so that folks can actually, during a rate case, you know, look at what the impacts are using the data that's been provided.
Okay, did more time get added?
No. Senator Mataro?
Yes.
You're done?
Yeah, that was just very confusing with the clock.
I'm sorry.
Senator Mataro.
Hi, everybody. Maybe anybody on the panel, thank you so much for your testimonies and everything. Do you feel, since the CLCPA's been passed, the CLCPA's been passed, do you feel that our utility bills have gone up since this CLCPA's been put forward? Does anybody feel that, in other words, our rates have gone up? Does anybody feel that, you know, we have, obviously, you know, looking for renewable energy, you know, our wind, solar, and battery storage, but do you feel that, does anybody feel about the rates have gone up because of this?
Well, rates have certainly been skyrocketing.
And where do you think that's from?
And...
And where do you feel that's from, your personal opinion?
The rates are skyrocketing, and that is because of the doubling down on the fossil fuel infrastructure. And you heard the commissioner say earlier today that that is the, you know, it is doubling down on fixing the fossil infrastructure instead of dismantling and transitioning is the reason for those costs.
The levelized cost of service for renewable energy is shown in New York State and across the country to be far less than the cost of energy from maintaining a fossil fuel system. Further, we're investing enormous amounts of money right now into putting new pipelines in the ground that, as we follow our state climate law, we need to be pulling back on using gas. So both the existing system and anything new that we're spending money on are going to become stranded assets that are going to cost billions. We shouldn't be moving in that direction. We need to instead look at the economy of, longer-term economy of transitioning now to renewables.
And what kind of renewables do you feel that, in other words, could help move forward instead of wind, solar, and battery storage? Do you have any?
Instead of wind, solar, and battery?
Yes, because wind, solar, and battery storage is not going to be able to handle what we're looking to do moving forward. So what other sources of renewable energy do you feel that we could look into?
I disagree, Senator. I fundamentally disagree, and there's plenty of research to back up.
That's not true.
That, yeah, it is true.
All right. No, it's not.
It actually is true.
Thank you. Thank you.
Question to Pulp. We're aware that at one point you had to spend $5,000 on exhibits for a rate case proceeding. Can you elaborate on why you had to spend such a large amount and talk about the barriers that this creates for other folks?
Absolutely, Senator. So it may seem like one of those simple things, but when you participate in a rate case and you go to a hearing, or again, you're going to do litigation, you often will have exhibits, and those exhibits are often interrogatory answers, which are evidence of processes and data and the like. And so to get those into the record, you have to bring them with you, and you often have to have copies for everyone in the room. So 20 copies of hundreds of pages of documents, it starts to add up really quick. So something the utilities probably don't have to think about is probably something DPS doesn't have to think about. But in Central Hudson, the last two years, we've seen both us and Communities for Local Power, which is an amazing small nonprofit up in the... which is an amazing small nonprofit up in the Hudson Valley. They had incredible expenses having to participate in 10 days of evidentiary hearings. And we would see them come and they'd have to run and get copies and, you know, pay thousands of dollars in hotel expenses. And so just that alone can really start to add up. And so something that just doesn't often, I think, get elevated is the cost that some of us small nonprofits have to pay to actually participate. So our hope is maybe we can move to a technology future. Use iPads or laptops, email around exhibits for, you know, consideration. The other sad fact is after you spend that money, sometimes you're not successful and you may have all these copies of exhibits. So thanks to the Pine Hills Elementary School in Albany, we were able to donate some of the public copies that weren't used so they could use it for arts and crafts. And just looking to my panel, if any other costs anyone wants to share?
How is it that you were never funded by the utilities?
So intervener funding is, you know, a concept that many states have, including California. And I know when we come to the budget table every year, we talk about our dreams that one day Pulp will be as big as Tern, which is the nonprofit version of us. And we're getting closer. We're at 13. I think they're at 200. But it is a concept where, you know, you can create a fund. I believe our version with Senator Parker would have a fund created in New York that the utilities could put, you know, dollars in. This last one house budget, there was 1 million from the Senate in there as well. So I'd like to flag it could be additional pools of resources. But it would allow organizations like Pulp and others to apply for reasonable recovery of expenses. In my dream, I'd love to have more experts to help us with all that methodology. Bill Yates, our expert is here and he does a pretty good job, but it'd be nice to get him some help because ultimately that's where we gotta do. We gotta dig down and really think creatively.
Thank you. The New Yorkers for Clean Power, the independent power producers, the agree signatories to the National Grid JP. And I want to know about the proposal that made you become signatories and which aspects should be sustained for future rate cases for you to be, for you to allow, for you to be most effective?
So for Pulp, and I believe Senator, we were talking about the National Grid upstate rate case. You know, Pulp did not go on in support. We know 15 organizations did. I can't talk about what happened in that room. Again, it went through confidential settlement. But each of us do have the ability to do support or opposition briefs. And so we spent time in our brief explaining, you know, if you look at what we filed versus the outcome, Pulp couldn't get there. I do have hope though. I think we go in every rate case and we try. We are the little engine that could. We actually got to neutral in the last Central Hudson rate case, which five years ago, you know, I probably wouldn't have think was possible. And so every rate case is different. It presents a whole, you know, field of experiences. But also there that is that inside, you know, process that I can't talk about the specifics or the negotiations themselves.
Anybody else want to come in? Have you, any of you had experience dealing with intimidation or retaliation of any kind while dealing with these rate case proceedings? And can you talk about that?
You want to do it or me, or both?
Why, why don't you go first?
Okay, so, so again, we can't talk about what happened within confidential proceedings. However, there was a filing submitted by the DPS attorney on summarizing something. I forget, was it, whatever, it was a brief. And accidentally, they submitted their draft instead of their final version. And in the draft, they called the variety of stakeholder groups that were unified behind a particular position. They disparagingly referred to us as the quote, cool kids. There were other incidents and I'll speak personally to what happened with me in the evidentiary hearing to the extent that I can because what happened to me that brought me to tears was told to be off the record. So that's, that's kind of as much as I can say. It's part of why in my testimony, I encouraged that there should be three commissioners attending evidentiary hearings.
As the votes suggest. Who attends those hearings now?
Well, to, to, to be, to give credit where it's due, Commissioner Christian was there for a little bit on one day and Commissioner Berman, who's no longer a part of the commission, was there for quite a bit of it, not the full thing. She offered me Kleenex. Yeah.
So who's there? The staff?
The stakeholders, staff and utility. Other people can attend. It's, you know, it's not the most exciting way to spend a day. So that's, that's, I don't know. Do you have other thoughts of who else attends?
Yeah, it's typically, you know, and we're talking about an evidentiary hearing. So it's, it's like the last procedural step of the rate case before it goes to the commission for a vote. And so typically it's administrative law judges, the parties, you know, sometimes there's reporters. But that's the, the process, you know, as of now. And to be fair, you know, and be honest, I think that last nice and argony rate case was probably one of the hardest professional experiences I've ever had. I've had a very hard time over the last couple of years getting staff on Pulp ready and excited to do the next one. But we have an amazing team and over the last few years, we went to the commission and we went to DPS and we went to the utility and we're like, no more, you know, and we have talked to them about it. We've talked about, you know, the cool kids comment that is out there and I'd like to move on from it. I would really like that. So I think we're hopeful, but that's an example of some of the things we've seen and witnessed through the process.
Great.
In these situations, it's hard, you really can't overstate it. And if you take anything away, the, the harm of the secrecy, again, this was not practice, you know, 15 years ago. You know, and the litigated rate cases, they are expensive and they are also put burdens on advocates as well. But this turn towards this year by year secrecy has caused, I think, a lot of harm, both on substance in terms of being able to get efficiency over a longer term plan, but also as you hear, folks literally not being able to talk about, you know, the basic things that have happened.
Thank you. Today, today, I'm tired. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, if I might, I'd like to further add that. So part of what we're talking about, and I certainly agree and raise the issue that, that there's the secrecy. There's a culture that's happening there.
How do we break that culture? What would be your recommendation?
Well, so partly, and again, it's referred to a little bit in my, in my longer statement. There's, there's a man, I don't remember the name offhand, who was former FERC guy. He's, he's an attorney. He teaches, I think, at Georgetown, who really critiques the whole settlement mentality that happens that because everything is, you know, in this black box when it comes to the ALJs, to the evidentiary hearing, it is, it's just a performance. It's not, it's not real because we can't really talk about what's, what's in it, that were the problems. And so they're boxed in to just kind of having to agree with it. Otherwise, as, as was talked about in, I think in Lori's testimony, that, that we'd have to revert to the, the original request of the utility if we can't get an agreement. And so they're boxed in and then the commissioners, same thing. They could potentially modify it, but then what happens is they've changed the agreement. It now has to go back to all the parties that participated to see, are they going to be agreeable to that new arrangement? And so it kicks it back to prolonging the whole procedure even longer. So it doesn't fully answer the question of how do we undo the culture, but I think settlement is part of it.
Do they, do they rotate the locations for the cases or is everything heard in Albany?
Pretty much all of the evidentiary hearings are in Albany. And so that can again, be very difficult for the parties who need to participate.
That's something we need to look at as well. All right. Please give us copies of your testimony so we can put them in the record. Does anyone have a closing statement that you want to mention? No? All right.
I'm like Senator, I could be here all day. No, no.
I'm sorry, Senator Parker has some questions.
Oh, absolutely.
Well, thank you all for being here. And thank you very much for the work that you're doing and very much kind of unheralded. You know, I think it's only in recent years that my colleagues are understanding the work and understanding what, how important it is for ratepayers and our constituents are the same people, right? So the idea is to be able to do this, this advocacy process without creating another burden on the, on the ratepayer, right? Because what they would actually like to see happen is like tax dollars paid for it, right? Which means now you're paying twice, right, essentially. Just wanted to see, and anybody can answer this question. How much would an independent consumer advocate cost estimate, you know, estimate wise? And, and how much would intervener, intervener funds cost?
So I'm happy to start with that. Senator, you know, we had recommended during the last budget, a million dollars from the state to start off the intervener funding process. We thought that would be a good amount, looking at how many advocates there are and trying to guesstimate, you know, reasonable expenses and the like. Also, it's better to have something and play with it than, than not have it. And so that was the number that we came up with. In our testimony, we looked at California. California has had, you know, Tern, again, which is their version of an independent advocate for many years. And they're actually able to determine how much they save ratepayers on an annual basis through their involvement in the rate cases. And so I think that would be another really great way to do this. If the governor signs the office of the independent utility consumer advocate, have that reporting mechanism so we can track. Okay, this is how much it costs to have them. How much are they saving ratepayers and we can do that analysis?
The governor's argument, which I obviously don't agree with as the primary sponsor and the author of the legislation, is that the, that the consumer advocate in the PSC actually serves that function. So what's the difference between what, what we're suggesting in this legislation and what they currently have would do?
Absolutely. And I think it comes down to the word of independence. You know, a lot of what you heard today, I think, again, you know, to fairness to the department, to the commissioners, a lot of them are trying to do their job and do good work, but they're understaffed. And we even heard the answer earlier, earlier from the chair. Who's writing the orders? Are that DPS staff. Having that independence, not having someone looking over your shoulder, giving you that ability to go out there and challenge and push when you see these issues on the ground, I think is really important. And I see fellow advocates getting, yes, very excited to help respond.
If I can just add to, point to the previous question and to this one. AARP did a report in 2022, that's linked in my testimony, pointing to the costs that ratepayers are already paying for when the utilities come to the table with their expert witnesses and all of their resources. We are already paying around $20 million a year for the utilities to defend these rate cases. So I think in comparison, a million for intervener funding is like a worthwhile expenditure. But I also think what we're hearing is that there really is a need for more robust and vigorous participation on behalf of the consumer. So I don't see that this is something that's duplicative because again, it's independent. It's somebody who's solely strictly there on behalf of the ratepayer, but also just contributing to a different perspective that's not present at the table or bringing up issues that may not otherwise be addressed and somebody who's dedicated to be there on behalf of the consumer. Whereas, you know, AARP occasionally intervenes in these rate cases, not always. Sometimes it honestly seems like a little bit of a waste of time because we don't get anything out of it on behalf of the consumers and we have other strong advocates, but somebody whose sole purpose is to look out for the consumer, I think is something that's sorely missing.
And further to that, is, is that the DPS staff as part of the overarching, you know, public service commission have an obligation, yes, to serving the public interest in rates that are just and reasonable and to allowing a fair level of return to the utilities. That's all part of their, their remit. And so they, it's a tough challenge. I don't envy them. I'm not here to say whether they're falling on the right side of the challenge because we don't have a strong independent department that can argue and push the consumer side independent of that weighing of alternatives that the staff at DPS have to do. And so that's a very significant piece. They are, they are not fully independent because they have to weigh both pieces. That's not the job of the consumer advocate.
Right. So this million dollars, where would it come from?
So, I mean, we are very open to discussing that. In previous testimony, we've said the state budget. If it's ratepayer funded, it could be a mix, you know, cap and invest if that ever gets off the ground, funding from there. You know, again, we're very open to that.
Go ahead, I'm sorry. Okay. Anybody else want to, on this question?
Consumers are drowning and hurting folks hundreds, thousands of dollars every, every month in their energy bill and they don't have an advocate. Folks need an advocate.
So in addition to this, this particular legislation, you talked about a lot of things that we should change. Specifically, just from each one of you, what are kind of like, if you had, you know, one or two things that we should be doing legislatively, right, in order to kind of change the system? What, what are the like, one or two things that you think we have to pass this? In addition to obviously the, the, you know, the excellent legislation. I find myself talking like Donald Trump now. Everything is the big beautiful legislation around, around the consumer advocate. But other than that, you know, what else would you like to see us do legislatively?
Well, I mentioned in my testimony, you know, I think there are things to do to update the public service law, including really recognizing that energy and water are basic necessities in human rights and including an affordability standard. We don't have an affordability standard there. And I think there should be more rigorous requirements for how in rate cases and elsewhere, utilities look at actual customer impact beyond bill impact, rigorously looking at affordability, which is something that happens in California.
Just jump in.
I would also say we need more transparency with itemized reporting of what's being requested and what's actually approved. So consumers can see the difference in how these negotiations shake out as well as providing some state funding for the EAP.
How much more state funding? Do you have, you have a number?
200 million would be nice.
An additional 200 million.
I, I mentioned a few in my testimony already. Senator Comer's bill, S5995, to begin the integrated gas and electric planning proceeding. I talked about New York Heat, which of course the Senate has been a great champion of, and removing the obligation to serve natural gas from the public service law. I'll briefly mention the proposal to create the Office of Climate Compliance within the Department of Public Service. From our experience as, you know, intervening in rate cases and other generic proceedings, it's sometimes not clear whether staff at DPS who are involved in these many different, often siloed proceedings are, you know, conversing with each other or know, if the left hand knows what the right hand is doing, so to speak, especially when it comes to issues of climate compliance. And so we believe having an office within DPS dedicated to ensuring that the department complies with the requirements of the CLCPA has a role in setting the department's initial bargaining position. When writing testimony in rate cases would go a long way towards ensuring we meet the requirements of the CLCPA.
I, I think you could tell from my testimony, I'm not a fan of the confidential settlement agreements. I also don't feel like I have the expertise to say, get rid of them without at least, again, blue ribbon panel. I would be more than happy to consult with my colleagues. I would be more than happy to consult with my colleagues here and and outside of here to discuss, you know, what we would want to see in the way of a blue ribbon panel, what their remit would be, who we would want to see on it. I think it's, I think it's a very important decision to to change the whole structure of how we approve rates, and I don't want to be that person. But but I do think that it's something we should be considering. I respectfully, Lori, I've seen some stuff that that suggests that the three-year, multi-year evidentiary hearing can cause problems for some of the bigger infrastructure projects that, you know, should be probably evaluated and tightened up over time and not just allowed to run with the pound of money that you have you give them. So so some balancing there to do the prudence procedures maybe every year. But again, I I would defer to people with far more expertise than I.
As we're wrapping up, because we're kind of over time now, would love to see drafts of legislation of things that you think are important to get to me and Senator Comery and figure out, you know, how do we create an agenda going into January that addresses some of these issues? I think that in a lot of ways, you folks are the experts outside of the folks in the PSC, and obviously they have a different agenda. And so we really kind of need to figure it out. And you need to tell us, because, you know, you guys go to more of these rate hearings than we do, right? And so do we kind of understand how do we create a PSC that actually functions for the for the ratepayers and not just for utilities? I'll turn it back over to you, so.
Just a quick question. Do you feel that the PSC is doing a good job? I mean, do you, open dialogue, has anybody, a lot of complaints that haven't been answered? Of course, I'm just listening to what everybody's saying here, but is there been, because that's something that, in other words, that we as legislators, we need to do our job to go back, you know, we just had the commissioner here. So is there, do you guys have a lot of documentation on, you know, paperwork that, you know, with complaints to the PSC that haven't been answered?
I guess, just to clarify, Senator, do you mean complaints in general about the process, or do you mean like customer complaints?
Yes, yes.
All the above?
Yes, all the above.
So I would say, again, you know, we're in this.
Because I would like to see that, actually, to be honest with you, if you do have all that.
Yeah, so we at Pulp, again, we run a hotline, so we have data every single day of the number of people contacting us for help, and we have seen in general a massive slowdown, you know, just this year alone. It is the first year that all the utilities are proceeding forward with full collections activities, including the shut off since the pandemic, and it can be very, very difficult. So we'd be happy to share that data with you. It is taking a lot longer to help people resolve their issues.
Okay, because that's very, very, very important. And what do you think this, the new blue ribbon, what do you think they could do to help that? I just need to understand that, because what do you think, in other words, to go put pressure on them to make sure they do their job better? Because that's up to us to make sure that happens. Because I just had a situation in my district that the PSC was right there, and I'm getting, this is just something that just happened. So I was just wondering, what can they do to help this along? I just want to hear, because, you know, again, it would be a not-for-profit, right? It'd be a new group. So what do you think they could do better than what we could do?
So I think the blue ribbon panel could do a full site, almost like an audit, like what is going on? Like, if we focus on the rate cases, they could dig down, understand what's going on in New York, but also I think we would need to pull in some experts from from national organizations, too. So there, for in this instance, there's a researcher named Mark Ellis, who might be good for something like this, looking to other states. Every state, again, is a little different as well. And so for that type of work, I think it would be very helpful. For us, you know, again, we're on the front lines working every single day, and we see, you know, customer service reps, we see DPS staff. Again, I think people are trying, but it is very hard out there, and it's very complex, and what people are going through is not good.
Good, and I recommend you call your local legislators, senators, assembly people, to make sure those complaints, just like what I get complaints in my office every day, so we could do our job. So, again, I think that's something very, very important. Anybody that you know could call our offices at any time, and we would be able to handle that. And just one last, one last this question is have, all right, never mind, okay. I'll stop.
And it's okay. To be sure that it has a role for you at the end of it. If you don't have a role for the actual change to feed in to statutory changes or regulatory changes, you know, it could be a blue ribbon panel to nowhere.
Okay, thank you.
I, I, I think that if we had discussions, and if you guys send us your suggestions, and we can do legislative discussions beforehand, it would eliminate the need for a blue ribbon panel. You know, I think we need to work on these things immediately and not go down another road where we have to wait six months for a panel to be discussed. You guys are the experts, you're on the ground, the public is on the ground, you know, we need to deal with these issues sooner than later. So I, I, you know, the idea of a panel is abstract, but the need to solve some of these issues is immediate, then to find a way to, and I, you know, Chair Christian, since Christian is, seems to be a dedicated person to try to do the right thing, I think just the procedures that were set up originally for the Public Service Commission need to be amended. So, you know, when he spoke earlier about the fact that the ratepayers don't directly get the money back in settlements, there's a lot that we need to delve into and fix, because it's kind of ridiculous that they have received settlement money, but we have not yet to see that actually be actualized in savings to ratepayers. The companies just find ways to re-access that money in their next rate case. So we need to make sure that that's changed. But I want to thank the panel for coming. We look forward to continuing to work with you, so that Senator Parker can write all the best bills, and I'll try to write a couple myself, so we can make the necessary changes. So thank you all for being here.
Thank you.
The next panel is the Alliance for Green Economy, Jessica Ozey. Alliance for Clean Energy New York, Marguerite Wells. The Environmental Defense Fund. Erin Murphy. New Yorkers for Clean Power. Anshul Gupta. And Peggy Kurtz, ratepayer. And the Sane Energy Project, Kim Prancic. This is, there's two more panels out there.
Yeah, so we're going to begin with the Alliance for Green Economy. All right.
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Jessica Ajule. I'm the Executive Director of Alliance for a Green Economy. We're also known as AGREE. We at AGREE work on many aspects of the energy policy and programs in New York, but today I'm going to speak about our experience as an intervenor in utility rate cases and other Public Service Commission proceedings, where we see in detail what utilities request to spend our money on and how our regulators at the Public Service Commission respond. When it comes to the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act implementation and oversight, we frequently see the Public Service Commission undermining implementation and not providing adequate oversight. The result is gas utilities running wild with a series of rate hikes, which raise New Yorkers' bills beyond what they can afford. And this money is used in many cases not to fund a transition to clean, affordable energy, but to prolong and expand expensive gas pipelines, taking us backward from our CLCPA goals. A key driver of these poor decisions is the myth that we must choose between renewables and affordability, a narrative that is false, but has become a major obstacle in the transition. If the fossil fuel industry can blame the cost of energy on New York's climate mandates, they can deflect from the fact that climate change caused by the fossil fuel industry is already costing households in New York an average of $300 a year, according to NIPR. If they can blame the government for trying to make them take climate action, they can distract from the fact that their shareholders are raking in money while millions of New Yorkers struggle to afford their basic needs. So I want to set the record straight. A fraction of our energy bills pays for climate action. The rest pays for the status quo. A typical $207.49 per month residential con ed electric bill, only about 5% of that money goes toward anything related to the CLCPA implementation or greenhouse gas reductions. In a typical $207.39 per month con ed gas bill, less than 1% goes to programs to address climate change. In my written testimony, I include more information, as well as a link to the Department of Public Service Staff Report that includes similar numbers for every major utility in the state. What truly drives up costs is not transitioning. Through an all-of-the-above energy strategy, the governor is allowing utilities to flout the CLCPA by expanding gas pipelines indefinitely, cutting the Empower Plus Energy Efficiency Program, while proposing a $33 billion ratepayer-funded subsidy for old nuclear plants. That's a new subsidy being proposed. The Public Service Commission has gone along with this, with Chair Christian even going so far as to say, quote, "The CLCPA does not mention natural gas at all," in the last Public Service Commission meeting, just before he voted to endorse the need for a pipeline to bring more gas to New York. The Public Service Commission also allows utilities to continue a skewed energy pricing policy that encourages more gas use and discourages heat pump adoption. These rate design policies, which I detail in my written testimony, favor large gas users and cost heat pump users millions each year. The legislature can and should take a series of actions to improve CLCPA compliance and utility oversight. You can pass legislation making it crystal clear that the climate mandates of the CLCPA are a core responsibility of the Public Service Commission, just as it is their responsibility to protect reliability, safety, and just and reasonable rates. You can require the Public Service Commission to set greenhouse gas emissions reductions benchmarks for utilities to meet, something the commission has failed to do in the nearly five years since the CLCPA was enacted. You can fund the Empower Plus program and oppose the costly nuclear agenda. By doing so, you can ensure the Public Service Commission regulates our energy system in the way it's supposed to, ensuring New York's energy transition is affordable for the residents of the state and brings a cleaner, healthier, and safer future. Thank you so much.
My name is Marguerite Wells. I'm the Executive Director for the Alliance for Clean Energy New York, and my written testimony is a little more thorough than my verbal comments here. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony on the PSC processes related to rate cases and the Department of Public Service efforts to implement the New York Climate Law on behalf of ACE New York. ACE New York is a broad coalition dedicated to promoting clean energy, energy efficiency, a healthy environment, and a strong economy for the Empire State. Our members include renewable energy and energy efficiency companies, including wind, solar, battery storage, transmission, fuel cells, and electric vehicles and charging infrastructure companies, as well as environmental nonprofits. New York has laid the groundwork for robust programs to address our climate emissions. Now we are at the point where we need to take the hard steps necessary to fully implement these programs. ACE New York would like to thank the New York State Senate for taking bold action to address climate change. The CLCPA contains the word leadership in its very title. That choice is deliberate. To set precedent in climate action, New York must lead. Leadership requires taking calculated risks and a willingness to show the way forward. Addressing climate change does not weaken our state, it makes it stronger by generating lower-cost electricity, weatherizing our buildings so that heating and cooling is more affordable, creating good-paying jobs across the state, and improving our health with reduced air pollution. Currently, New Yorkers spend $28 billion importing energy from out of state. Imagine how much stronger our state would be if those dollars were invested in the state economy by generating our own energy. Among New York's energy regulators, the PSC and the Department of Public Service occupy the lead role. To their credit, they have enacted policies and approved projects that advance CLCPA goals. ACE New York wants to acknowledge the Office of Renewable Energy Siting and Electric Transmission, ORES, within DPS, which has made remarkable improvements in the past year. Following a critical comptrollers audit, ORES has turned its processes around and is now reviewing projects far more efficiently. Three recent PSC decisions illustrate a troubling lack of fairness and direction in our state climate policy, however. Collectively, these actions risk backing New York into a corner, one that delays our transition away from carbon-emitting energy sources, instead of enabling an orderly, clean energy transition envisioned by the CLCPA. First was the rejection of the New York City Public Policy Transmission Needs Project. This was intended to study the transmission landing needs of offshore wind projects, but was dismissed due to anticipated delays in federal permitting for offshore wind in general. Rather than just modifying the order to allow time to consider new schedules while advancing design and permitting at a lower cost, the PSC canceled it outright. Transmission planning for any resource takes as long as offshore wind development itself. Both must beguin well in advance. By canceling rather than carefully tailoring the order, the PSC sent a chilling signal to investors. New York is not open for business for long-term investment in infrastructure. Second, the rejection of the Clean Path New York Transmission Project as a priority project for NIPA. After evaluation of 15 alternatives, this project had advanced significantly in design, permitting, and procurement. Its dismissal, based on perceived imperfections, further delays solutions to the longstanding need to bridge upstate generation with downstate needs, exacerbating the congestion costs that are borne by New York City ratepayers, slowing renewable deployment upstate. Imperfect though it may have been, it was a viable step forward, and delay only creates uncertainty and raises eventual costs. Texas provides an instructive contrast. Despite a far less supportive political climate, Texas demonstrated leadership when it approved the Competitive Renewable Energy Zone, CREZ, transmission buildout, which was a transmission line into an area that had no renewable at all at the time. But it was a build-it-and-they-will-come situation, and the renewable projects showed up and filled the line. New York has yet to show a similar foresight. Transmission is never wasted in today's world of rising demand, it is the enabler of clean generation. And while these renewable transmission projects have languished, the PSC recently expressed support for a natural gas pipeline inconsistent with CLCPA goals. This energy transmission project will increase ratepayer costs for decades for energy that the CLCPA clearly states we should be phasing out. In this decision, the perceived need for reliability trumps ratepayer costs and climate emissions, while DPS's own consultant report showed that this pipeline is unnecessary for reliability. The PSC should consider all energy transmission projects with the same degree of scrutiny. We need to invest in electric transmission now to ensure reliability in the future. The developers of offshore wind and upstate renewable projects need the certainty that the electricity they generate will have transmission in place for it to be delivered to New Yorkers. The PSC needs to invest in electric transmission projects to stop the chicken-and-egg conundrum that slows down investments in renewable projects. The path forward requires leadership. The PSC should issue a new PPTN for New York City that addresses its prior challenges while signaling renewed momentum for offshore wind, direct NIPA and/or private developers to build critical upstate-to-downstate transmission to relieve the congestion and enable renewable delivery to the city, and recognize that delay itself is a decision, one that raises costs and reduces options for ratepayers. Thank you so much.
Sir?
Good afternoon. My name is Anshul Gupta. I'm the Policy and Research Director for New Yorkers for Clean Power, which is a statewide collaborative campaign to shift to a clean energy economy. We thank the Senate Committee Chairs for this opportunity to share our feedback on CLCPA implementation in the context of energy affordability and utility bills. The Public Service Commission recently released its second CLCPA information report. While the report shows that CLCPA costs are a component of utility bills, these costs remain a small portion of a customer's total utility bill and are expected to stay fairly modest until 2029. These are currently about 5% to 9% of residential electric bills and less than 2% of gas bills. So contrary to the clean energy adversaries' claims, most bill increases are driven by other factors, such as high costs of replacing New York's aging pipelines and electrical infrastructure, property taxes, growing Among these other factors, an important one is actually related to a failure to follow a key recommendation of the Climate Action Council's coping plan, which is to modify the utility obligation to serve gas to a fuel-agnostic obligation to serve energy for heating, cooling, and other household appliances. This was one of the provisions of the New York Heat Act that the Assembly hasn't passed yet. The utility obligation to serve gas represents a direct contradiction between a public service law and the climate law, which the legislation can rectify. As a result, we are being forced to simultaneously invest in the gas energy system of the past and the electrical energy system of the future, and the gas utilities are slated to spend tens of billions of ratepayer dollars on pipe replacement in the coming years. It is critically important to curb unnecessary investments in the gas system for future energy affordability and for our ability to eventually decarbonize the building sector affordably. A transition towards a singular energy system will drive down investment-related increases in energy costs. This was also emphasized by PSC Chair Rory Christian during his 2025 budget testimony, and he also alluded to that today. While we can and should avoid unneeded investments in the gas infrastructure, our electric grid does need modernization and expansion for resiliency and to accommodate new loads and new generation. However, the way we fund the capital cost of transmission is inherently unfair and costly for ratepayers. Transmission construction and upgrade projects can take years to reach their full capacity after completion. However, the current ratepayers start incurring the full cost of projects as soon as they come online, based on the straight-line depreciation methodology that we currently use. Just this month, California passed a landmark bill, SB 254, that authorizes and facilitates public financing and public-private partnerships for new transmission projects to address some of the same issues that we're experiencing in New York. We strongly urge the legislature to consider legislation similar to California's SB 254. It's a well-thought-out legislation, like just we recover the cost for maintaining our roads through fees on drivers, but we do not dump the capital cost of building a road network onto drivers. Similarly, we shouldn't be dumping the capital cost of transmission, which is a public good, onto ratepayers. Returning to the topic of wasteful gas investments, the Commission issued a gas planning order on May 12, 2022, to establish, in Commission's own words, quote, "a modernized gas planning process that is comprehensive, suited to forward-looking systems and policy needs, designed to minimize total lifetime costs and inclusive of stakeholders," unquote. The gas planning order also states, quote, "This order establishes a foundational process through which Commission can act to ensure that LDCs reduce GHG emissions in accord with the CLCPA," unquote. However, in reality, this process is fraught with political interference, and the docket has essentially become a place where gas utilities go with their expensive, climate-destroying aspirations for more and more gas and get them rubber-stamped as actual plans. The Commission is authorized by the CLCPA to make decisions to reduce emissions, but so far the Commission has cited the obligation to serve gas as a reason for inaction. This gas planning proceeding is also the one in which National Grid revised its final plan at the last minute to include the Nessie Pipeline. The Commission acted unusually fast to approve the plan with a rushed order prepared by DPS staff to justify the pipeline. Reading the order makes it abundantly clear that the justifications were crafted to desperately support the goal of building the pipeline, not that a specific set of needs helped the Commission reach the conclusion that the additional expensive supply was needed. This calls into question as to how independent the PSC's decisions actually are. So please note that while the Commissioners are independent, the Department of Public Service reports to the Governor. In conclusion, despite the current federal administration's hostility towards clean energy, the state can make very meaningful progress towards meeting the CLCPA's targets. And with the right policies, it can do so affordably while accruing the health and economic benefits from a transition to a clean energy economy. The PSC has a key role in this, and the legislature has a role in reforming the PSC and in passing legislation to align the public service law and the climate law. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Erin Murphy. I'm a senior attorney with Environmental Defense Fund, or EDF. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony today. The Public Service Commission is a critical agency to ensure that New York achieves its targets to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and ensure energy justice. We recognize and appreciate that the Commission is working hard to drive cost-effective climate progress on numerous fronts, in numerous statewide policy dockets. Today, I focus my remarks on another arena important to CLCPA implementation, which is rate cases. Utility rate cases are the proceedings where utilities seek approval to raise rates and recover costs for major investments, typically on a three-year cycle. The Commission itself recently stated, and I quote, "While the Commission has embraced its role in implementing the CLCPA, the only tool at its disposal to pay for the investments necessary to transform the state's energy system is its utility rate-making power." That statement underscores the critical importance of rate cases as a forum where the Commission must ensure that investments and priorities are aligned with state climate policy. And Section 7 is the only CLCPA provision that is directly applicable in rate cases. Section 7 Sub 2 requires state agencies to consider whether their approvals and decisions are inconsistent with or will interfere with the attainment of the statewide greenhouse gas emissions limits. And 7 Sub 3 requires that agency decisions shall not disproportionately burden disadvantaged communities. In order to conduct an accurate assessment of greenhouse gas emissions and impacts to disadvantaged communities associated with any utility rate proposal, the Commission should have clear, consistent standards. And with regard to Section 7 Sub 2, which is the greenhouse gas emissions limits consistency requirement, New York State's greenhouse gas emissions limits are by their nature a numeric standard. DEC has adopted emissions limits of about 246 million metric tons of CO2 equivalent in 2030 and about 61 million metric tons of CO2 equivalent in 2050. So this is essentially a math problem, right? There's a lot of complications behind that math, but at the end of the day, determining whether a rate case order or a rate case settlement is consistent with the state emissions limits is about math, and the Commission needs actionable data to make an informed decision on utility rate plans. And since rate cases in New York are often resolved through settlement, as the earlier panel was discussing in detail, or also known as a joint proposal, greenhouse gas emissions assessments should be required in utility rate filings, settlement agreements, and any recommended decisions issued by presiding administrative law judges. The Commission must then use that information to make its own quantitative finding as to whether a rate proposal is consistent with the greenhouse gas emissions limits. And EDF has provided extensive analysis and recommendations to the Commission for what this framework should look like. So I just talked about what should be happening under Section 7 Sub 2. What is actually happening? Essentially, the Commission has been issuing qualitative, unstructured findings rather than conducting a quantitative analysis. And in early decisions after the law first took effect, this was acceptable. EDF recommended in a 2020 brief we filed in a rate case that the Commission should make a determination of CLCPA compliance based on the best information available. And in a 2021 order, the Commission stated that the CLCPA is still a nascent law whose implementation remains a work in progress in the state. But now, we're further along. In at least six recent joint proposals, we've seen formulaic, near-identical language used to justify compliance with the CLCPA. I'll quote a joint proposal from Liberty Utilities, but we saw similar language in a Con Ed, NiSEG, Kedney-Kedley, and National Fuel settlements. The quote is, "The joint proposal contains provisions supportive of and in furtherance of the objectives of the CLCPA. That statement is patently insufficient information for the Commission to make an informed assessment of whether a joint proposal is consistent with the state greenhouse gas emissions limits." And in turn, those formulaic joint proposals result in relatively formulaic Commission orders that, again, do not contain the substantive analysis that is needed under the law. We're five years into CLCPA implementation, and this unstructured approach cannot continue. We are concerned that the Commission is failing to fulfill its obligations under the law. One initial next step is that the Commission must complete the development of an annual greenhouse gas emissions reporting framework, which it began in 2022 but has not moved forward since 2023, and it must develop a framework specifically applicable to rate cases for a greenhouse gas emissions analysis. Thank you.
My name is Peggy Kurtz. I speak today about some of the structural and procedural and environmental problems that you've been hearing about, but as exemplified in the Commission's oversight of water utilities. As co-founder of the Rockland Water Coalition, I was one of the leaders in an eight-year groundbreaking effort to stop a desalination proposal successfully for Rockland County's drinking water. I have represented Sierra Club's Atlantic chapter as an intervenor in seven proceedings before the Commission. Since 2016, I have also served as an appointed member of the Rockland County Water Task Force. But my comments today do not represent these organizations. In order to speak more freely today, I speak today as a ratepayer. Rockland's desalination story is a cautionary tale. When regulatory oversight fails, it is the ratepayers who pay the price. Veolia Water, formerly Suez, manages 90% of Rockland County's drinking water, and their operations are largely overseen by the Commission. Objections to Suez's desalination proposal included that desalination is nearly always the most expensive water source, I'm sorry, major water source. In 2013, the construction costs were projected at between $155 and $200 million. In 2015, the Commission reversed eight years of approvals to order Suez to abandon that project as not needed, not needed. In other words, the Commission allowed this proposal to get eight years and $62.4 million down the road before putting on the brakes. Today, Rockland ratepayers are still paying off over $54 million plus tens of millions in interest in planning costs from a project from which they received no benefit at all. That's because staff never questioned the excessively high utility demand projections and did not consider the option to maximize far less expensive alternatives to the utility proposal. Since 2015, the Commission has basically rubber-stamped one utility proposal after another. Input from stakeholders and from independent experts is routinely rejected, often without changing so much as a comma. We question staff after all of these years of participating in these cases. We question staff water planning expertise. In one rate case after another, no staff with a specialized water expertise has participated. This apparently leads to staff overreliance on the expertise of the private utility. The private utility does have expertise, but they also have their own financial interests, such as proposing the most expensive major water source desalination. Commission should set rates, not determine water policy. With its rigid timelines and limited staff water expertise, a rate case is not the right process for sound water planning. I urge this committee to consider the kind of multi-agency restructuring of water oversight recommended by Professor Dan Van Abbs, former director of watershed planning for New Jersey Public Water Supply, and his recommendations are attached to my written comments. He recommends that New York State DEC should be the lead agency in water planning, following New Jersey's approach. Oversight by DEC would build on DEC's expertise in watershed planning, water quality protection, water conservation, and would lead to a more holistic and more efficient approach to planning, helping to keep rates affordable. The role of the Commission would be to set rates. And in my comments, I also refer to the Water Resources Council, which was set up by New York State in 1980 and in which DEC had the lead role in a regional planning process. And that council has apparently fallen into disuse and should be revived. The role of the Commission, as I said, should be to set rates, not set water policy. Touching briefly on climate and water, according to the EPA, utilities can reap significant energy and cost savings for ratepayers from energy and water efficiency practices. The American Water Works Association also warns that climate impacts on water supply, on water quantity and quality, may be profound. Despite these potential cost savings and warnings about climate impacts, staff in a recent Veolia case had no plans to require climate mitigation or adaptation. Water utilities should be required to plan now for climate mitigation, to reduce emissions, to reap cost savings, and to plan for climate resilience. Yes, yeah. DEC should establish a hierarchy of water supply options to align water policy with state climate goals. The legislature should also limit the excessive ROE for major capital projects, which currently incentivizes these projects at the expense of ratepayers. I second the comments on settlement process that were made by Irene Weiser and Pope, and I have many more legislative solutions in my written comments. Thank you.
Hi. It's nice to see you all, and I'm really happy to hear you are supportive of thermal energy networks. I didn't know. That's great. Let's keep building them. My name is Kim Frochek. I am the Director of Sane Energy Project. We represent 18,500-plus New Yorkers who have spent the last 15 years working to help fossil fuels and build a transition to an economy that is affordable, sustainable, and a renewable energy system. We've participated in dozens of proceedings at the Public Service Commission, including rate cases, generic proceedings on energy efficiency, affordability, thermal energy networks, gas explosion investigations, and long-term planning from 2019 until today. I'm here to raise serious concerns about the Public Service Commission's oversight of New York's utilities, using National Grid's long-term gas plan as an example today. It's docket 24G0248. The PSC is supposed to be our utility watchdog, ensuring safe and reliable service, safe and reasonable rates, while advancing the state's clean energy goals under the CLCPA. Yet, on September 18, 2025, just a few weeks ago, the Public Service Commission fast-tracked the approval of National Grid's plan just eight days after the close of public comments. Over 10,000 New Yorkers submitted input, yet only 3,700 were acknowledged in the docket. Expert testimony and reports, including those from the Institute for Energy Economics and Financial Analysis, were ignored. The decision was rushed, politically influenced, detached from evidence. It appears to bend to corporate and federal political pressure rather than protect the public. As a federal administration is pushing for a pipeline through the New York Harbor right now that we've already denied three times, the PSC must be strong enough to give the Governor the support to stand up to these pressures, rather than cower to a UK-based utility corporation called National Grid, whose primary goal is profit. Sane Energy took extraordinary steps to engage with this process. We hosted a technical conference for the Commission, its staff, and the utility to discuss thermal energy networks and how they're being implemented elsewhere, successfully in Massachusetts and elsewhere. We also raised funds to hire a gas systems operator who has 35 years of experience to help dissect National Grid's requests and assist us in drafting testimony. Meanwhile, New Yorkers collectively paid $1.2 million to the Department of Public Service Independent Consultant, PA Consulting, to evaluate the plan, and that, too, was ignored. The Nessie Pipeline, the project by Williams, would extend directly from Pennsylvania, start five minutes from my childhood bus stop, into the Rockaway Peninsula in Queens, contaminating the water for waterfront communities in Staten Island and Brooklyn, frontline communities that rely heavily on a strong blue economy of coastal tourism and recreation, which generates significant GDP and jobs. The PSC justifies the project by start five minutes from my childhood bus stop, into the Rockaway Peninsula in Queens, contaminating the water for waterfront communities in Staten Island and Brooklyn, frontline communities that rely heavily on a strong blue economy of coastal tourism and recreation, which generates significant GDP and jobs. The PSC justifies the project by citing Winter Storm Elliott in 2022, but Sane Energy has shown in multiple detailed comments that the storm's gas supply failures were mechanical, not demand-driven. Equipment in the Marcellus and Utica shale froze, cutting production by over 6 billion cubic feet per day. Adding another pipeline will not fix that systemic vulnerability. Extreme weather will inevitably create competition for gas across states, driving up prices rather than improving reliability. National Grid's plan, you know, also seeks to convert more homes from oil to gas, expanding the dependency on fossil fuels, locking in emissions, undermining the CLCPA. The, you know, PSC minimized costs that did not evaluate potential escalation, leaving ratepayers exposed to billions in unnecessary expenses. Pipelines are a permanent form of infrastructure, and once built, they're extremely difficult to reverse, particularly if we're going to be trenching 23 miles of our New York Harbor with lots of toxins in there. And but this isn't just about the Williams-Nessie Pipeline. It reflects broader structural failures of political considerations, overshadowing evidence, and limiting public participation and transparency. Ratepayers can't trust that PSC decisions are based on technical merit, cost effectiveness, or alignment with New York's energy goals and equity objectives. They've repeatedly allowed National Grid to play hot potato. Is that a, can I finish up a little bit? Okay. They're allowing National Grid to play hot potato with proceedings, shifting decisions between 2019, 2023, and the long-term gas plan case, effectively preventing stakeholders from getting answers or holding the utilities accountable. I just find that there is, there was one dissenting commissioner, Majiori, and he gave some very, very good examples. It's in my testimony. You know, I also want to, you know, just make a mention that National Grid really helped to front-load a whole bunch of business interests. But when we looked at the metadata, according to a New York Focus report, all the metadata for every application that went to the commission led back to National Grid's lobbying firm, which is a multibillion-dollar corporation. So it's kind of like us as people representing our communities are really, really struggling, having to, it's like a David and Goliath, you know, and we're really trying hard to help us transition to an affordable and renewable economy so we can, you know, eliminate sicknesses, eliminate emissions, and keep our bills low. And I think thermal energy networks are one of the ways to do this, and we really should not be allowing a gas-only utility in the state of New York because they're not incentivized to transition. They'll want to continue to keep building more gas pipelines. Pardon?
What do you think would be an incentive for National Grid?
Well, we've been working really hard to try to get them to move on to thermal energy networks. Now, we know that, you know, there are pilot programs going on right now. But we also know that National Grid's first application for the pilot, they sort of flubbed their application. And we really want to make sure that we see a genuine focus on, like, yeah, we want to comply with our law. We want to do right by the people of New York. And we really need our Public Service Commission to see themselves as the public servants. And yes, to opening, you know, an office for, you know, advocacy, but the commissioners themselves and the staff themselves should also be doing that job. And I think just making us take our jobs more seriously is really important if we want to, like, meet a law that is in law and passed. And we can't, as, you know, as the chair mentioned earlier, we can't keep just, like, blaming Donald Trump for all of this. We actually have to take a stand and do something and be really strong here in New York. And there are very good examples of things that we can do to make our Public Service Commission something that we feel really proud to work with.
Okay. What's the most critical one of the things that you think that we could do to make our Public Service Commission something we could be proud of?
Yeah, I mean, just the fact that they allowed National Grid to not do the analysis that the independent consultant had recommended that they do, that many of the advocacy organizations and even the city of New York had an excellent testimony of comment in the long-term plan case. Like, we really, we do have the tools to make National Grid be a better company here, but they, they're so incentivized to price gouge all of us all the time. And I'm frankly, very, very concerned about how the Public Service Commission just swept this through and is, like, trying to blame it on Donald Trump. It just blows me away.
Do you all, anyone on the panel, energy dependence, and as Senator Matera is saying, we need to look into new technologies, which new technologies do you think can be most effective? And do we, is the entire panel looking at moving away from gas altogether? Or is there still a possibility for natural gas to be relevant?
So I will say that I think thermal energy networks are the most exciting new technology that we are considering in New York, and we're not giving it its due. It has so many benefits, which is why it's supported across the board by environmental groups, labor organizations. Our Utility Thermal Energy Network and Jobs Act was passed in a bipartisan manner through the Senate and the Assembly. And we haven't seen the Public Service Commission move the projects forward as fast as we would like. Right now, there are multiple projects that are under public comment, and we really hope the Public Service Commission approves those projects and moves them forward. Thermal energy networks have the ability to heat and cool our homes without fossil fuels. They are the most efficient way to heat and cool our homes, so they can reduce our reliance on the electric grid and reduce how much transmission, distribution infrastructure we need and how much generation we need. And they're also a great transition technology for labor unions who currently build pipes, put them in the ground. Those pipes carry gas, but with a thermal energy network, it's the same material, just the pipes would hold water instead of gas. And it's a transition technology for our gas utilities if they choose to take advantage of it. And I think what we're seeing is that our gas utilities are not choosing to take advantage of it. Instead, they are pushing more gas pipelines. So we really call on the legislature to really put strong rules of the road on the Public Service Commission. I think if we have very clear benchmarks for gas utilities to reduce emissions, they will have to transition to different technologies like thermal energy networks, instead of continuing to put more gas pipelines in the ground.
A thermal energy network is individual, or is it managed by a corporation?
So there's a few different ways, different entities that can manage it. But utilities can do this. And you're bringing up another benefit of thermal energy networks is it doesn't require homeowners to figure out this transition on their own. Each household doesn't have to figure out, how am I going to get gas out of my house? It's a community-oriented solution. It's a utility-scale solution that can help us transition entire neighborhoods off of the gas system in a way that doesn't overload our electric grid. So it's really community-oriented, which is another really big benefit of thermal energy networks.
Thank you.
I'd like to add that the utility obligation to serve gas is an impediment to the implementation of thermal energy networks at scale, because in a neighborhood, a single customer can veto an entire project. So if we want to-
A single customer can, or multiple customers can be on the same thermal energy line?
Yes, but if a single customer-
How deep is that?
-says that they want gas instead of a thermal energy network, then the entire project cannot proceed under the current public service law.
If a single customer says they want gas instead of thermal energy, the entire project cannot proceed?
Yes, that is true under the current public service law, which is why we need to amend the obligation to serve gas, which was, which was sort of one provision of the New York Heat Act.
Okay. Okay, thank you. The governor's also focusing on nuclear energy? Have any of you, none of, I haven't heard anybody opine on that one way or another today. Do you guys have any opinion about her nuclear energy project?
I think you should. Yeah, take that one.
That was my question.
So we oppose both new nuclear, as well as massive ratepayer-funded subsidies to prop up the old nuclear reactors in New York. So I'll start with new nuclear. You know, there's a lot of talk about this idea that we can build these new types of nuclear reactors, but as far as we know, there's not commercial development of small modular reactors. These are very far away from being developed. They're expensive. And we need solutions now. And we have wind, solar, and battery storage, energy efficiency, and thermal energy networks that can be built much more rapidly and actually meet our energy needs now. Nuclear also has incredible environmental impacts on environmental justice communities, indigenous communities across the United States and around the world. They routinely release radiation. So, you know, we oppose the development of new nuclear for the cost, health, and safety reasons. We oppose ratepayer-funded subsidies for the existing nuclear power plants because those power plants are very old. They're heading toward, some of them are the oldest nuclear plants in the world. And there are massive safety risks with those nuclear plants, as well as major opportunity costs. When we're putting billions of dollars into those old nuclear plants, that's money we're not using to directly benefit households with energy efficiency, helping them insulate their homes and bring down their energy bills. It's money we're not using to put solar on people's roofs or put solar and wind. So, you know, we just oppose it across the board for all of those reasons.
Why do you think, oh, sorry, you want to opine on this?
I just, you know, I grew up in Pennsylvania. I mentioned in my testimony, you know, five, my childhood bus stop is five minutes from where the Williams-Nessie Pipeline would start, okay? And, you know, our water, the water reservoir that I grew up in is poisoned because of fracking infrastructure. And in that neighborhood is also the Limerick Nuclear Power Plant. And, you know, every, the first Monday of every month at 2:00 PM, we would have a drill when I was growing up, and the siren would go off. And, you know, we have to be moving away from, you know, the fossil fuel industry started in the 19th century, and nuclear in the 20th century. We're now in the 21st century. They've served their purpose. We need to be moving forward into the 21st century where we don't have to worry about things like nuclear waste or accidents from these extractive economies that are really endangering our communities and chaining us to very, very expensive types of infrastructure when we could be moving into the 21st century with things like energy efficiency and thermal energy networks. Like, this is really the future. Like, we can do it. And we can heat and cool, as Jessica pointed out. And, you know, to Anshul's point earlier that the PSC is sort of like putting it on the individual customer, one point I didn't get to make, it was in my, it is in my testimony. I brought up a community of my neighbors that were, are in Brooklyn, and from Brownsville all the way up to Greenpoint, we all connect on utility issues. And I took them on a trip to the Public Service Commission monthly meeting a couple of years ago. And I asked Rory Christian, I said, you know, a bunch of, you know, regular people are coming up, you know, to meet you and see what it's like, see how the sausage gets made, right? And would you, 10 minutes afterward, shake their hand? Of course, of course, he's a nice guy. So he did. And then he asked one, a young woman from Brownsville who rents a house with her mom, well, what did you do to electrify your home when she wanted him to vote against LNG vaporizers at the Greenpoint liquefied frac gas facility? You know, I found that to be shocking, that you would ask a young woman who is a renter what she's doing to electrify her home when he's the actual person that can be the systemic solution to making her not to have to think about that and make that choice. And she's locked into gas in her home, and I'm locked into gas in my home. I'm a renter, too. So there's just a lot of, I think, there's a lot of unsaid, you know, not understanding what it's like on the street when you sit at the commission desk, you know, so.
Okay. So because of the 100-foot rule, I'm told, that we're having this problem, can anyone see that being amended so that there can still be interdependency, or is that a possibility? Actually, I needed to ask the second part of my nuclear question. Where did the governor get this idea from? I thought it was from the advocates to do nuclear. Does anybody know where that idea came from? Okay, so I can't blame you guys for that?
I missed it.
All right. I'm just checking, just making sure everybody's awake. Senator Parker, you got a question?
Yes.
Can I make one quick addition to your earlier question, sir?
Yes.
About new technologies, I would put forward that although certainly new technologies will be helpful, and one, for example, is longeration energy storage, most of the technology we need is already here. I think renewable energy has gotten something of a black eye in the past few years because since passage of the CLCPA, it has not been built as quickly as we wish. And so we're looking to see, well, what else is there? This renewable stuff's not working. In other states, such as Iowa and Texas, which have none of the same mandates we have here in New York, they have built enormous amounts of renewable energy, and more than half of their energy supply is from renewable. And that's because the state has gotten out of the way and allowed private markets to move. And in New York, the state has been the main obstacle to the deployment of renewable energy.
So that goes to my question, because I've heard a lot about, I think in this panel, about what, you know, PSC, you know, being a problem, everybody's like, I think, honestly, this to be, to keep it a buck, as we say in Brooklyn, I think we're creating a false dichotomy between a gas infrastructure and building renewables, right? Like, it's not one or the other, right? Especially being that our goal is not a zero goal, right? It's not a, sorry, it's not an absolute zero goal, it's a net zero goal, right? So there will theoretically be some level of gas infrastructure and gas usage in the state, but we have to get to this place of net zero, not absolute zero. That being said, is, Margaret, I would love to hear more about the things that we should be doing to get out of the way and allow, you know, and to allow more renewables to be built and figure out. Because ultimately, you know, ultimately, we need to, we need to produce more sustainable electrons, right? Period, right? So we need projects. And so the question is, what is stopping those projects from going up, right? In addition to the federal government, right? Like, I know you don't want to blame Donald Trump, but when, but, but, like, but literally when he comes in and says, oh, this nine megawatts that you're building, you know, go kick rocks barefoot, you know, in traffic, right? Like, that's significant to the goal, to what we've had planned and what we're doing. And so what else should we be doing in order to get more projects in the ground?
So I think one of the things that's before us right now that is partly in DPS's court, but also in NYSRDA's, is the procurement of renewable energy. The way the state has been doing it has led to lots of contracts that keep getting canceled. So as-
Thank you for your answer.
So I think a more flexible and robust contracting mechanism, which has been tried in other places, is necessary so that we don't get locked into a price that a project cannot be built for. We want projects built, is the goal at the end of the day. The pieces of paper that we sign don't matter. What matters is whether or not the facilities get built. So that's one key thing. I think huge progress has been made with ORES. I think the back end of the permitting process, which is lesser known, is the next hurdle, if you will. So issuing permits, they've now got really right. I want to really sing ORES praises and his teams. Right now, there's something called compliance filings that is essentially a permit to use your permit, and that just doubles down on the drag on getting projects built. So really streamlining that-
Wait, I'm sorry. I heard two different things. I heard you say they got something right, and then you then had a criticism.
Yes. The thing they got right is the approval of the initial stage called getting your permit.
Got it.
The second phase is called compliance filings, which is a permit to use your permit. That is the next- That is the next challenge, I would say, in streamlining projects to get built, is making that a whole lot shorter. Most other states don't have that. You have a permit, and then you go build. Here, you need a second permit to use your permit. That really slows things down. Also, any field changes when a project is under construction take up to 30 to 60 days to get approved by the DPS staff, and that's so unnecessary. You know, construction teams are standing in the field waiting to get digging, and they can't because they're waiting for some approval. So that's just silly. I think all of that can really be streamlined. There's some old regulations, Sections 68, 69, and 70, which are leftovers from utility ownership days, which are additional approvals. I think there was an idea when ORES was...
68 and what else?
68, 69, and 70, which basically require the DPS to approve any number of transactions around a project. If you're getting financing, going to get a bank loan, you have to get the commission's approval. You're going to go sell your project to the next guy down the road, you have to get the commission's approval. You want, and the 68 is just silly altogether. It basically says, "Do you have all your approvals?" The whole idea was that ORES was supposed to be a one-stop shop. It is just one of the many shops one has to stop at currently. And I think getting back to the original idea of ORES is the one-stop shop, get rid of these other things that were just never eliminated, you know, they're just redundant from the old days, would be really helpful. Those are some suggestions.
So again, as I said to the last panel, if there's things that we should be doing legislatively, you should...
That would be one for sure, and it's here in my testimony.
Right, so you should see, right, but you should see me. But you should also, like, get us drafts of legislation, right? So we can work off your drafts. Because if you make Justin draft it, like, you're not going to get, you may not get what you want, right? I'm not even going to pretend I'm a draft, I'm not sitting there drafting. I'm yelling at Justin until he drafts it, right? And so like, what's helpful in almost any committee, and I'm just now talking to the world about the legislature, you are more of an expert than anybody is an expert in the legislature on whatever the matter is. And so you're better off, if you have a legislative idea, not just to come forward with an idea, but an actual draft of how it should be, how it should be written into law and the specificity of it so that we can at least begin to get it right. I'm not saying we're going to take it as is, but at least gives you a beginning step that comes out of your zeitgeist.
You bet. Thank you.
Senator Parker, I just also want to remind you, you have a groundbreaking piece of legislation that passed, the Build Public Renewables Act.
Yes, tell me more.
So, you know, I mean, we are really, really in support of the Build Public Renewables Act, and thank you for being the sponsor of that bill. And we really need strong advocacy for Governor Hochul to commit at the New York Power Authority to commit to building more renewable energy that, you know, is not utility-owned because it's owned by our New York Power Authority, which is an incredible agency that we have that we should really be making work for us.
You're getting ahead of us, that's the next public hearing.
Okay.
But, no, but I would suggest that folks reach out to Justin Driscoll and the folks at NiPA.
We do, we reach out to Justin.
My understanding is they do have a plan, which was the first step of what they were supposed to do, that I think is quite robust, and so I'm happy to have, you know, more conversations about that. I really am interested more in folks' thought about my next, my next kind of endeavor, which is, you know, here we go, where we have utilities actually build projects. And what do you think about utilities building projects? If this is all, like, in my mind, this is an all-of-above exercise, right? And it's all in, everybody has to do everything. Right now, if we took all of the projects that NICEA had and ACE New York has, we still don't have enough electrons, correct? So why not let some of utilities build projects go?
If I could respond.
Yes.
I don't have a direct, immediate yes or no on whether that should happen, but I think in that sort of vein of thinking of how do you incentivize utilities to be moving the ball forward on climate progress, you know, the greenhouse gas emissions accounting piece that I was speaking to in my testimony, our focus is there because the rate cases are where the money is. So the rate cases are an incredibly high priority for the utilities because that's where they're getting their return on equity, they're getting their approval to recover costs. And so you really need the incentives in those rate cases to be positioned so that the utility is prioritizing, you know, projects and programs and investments that advance climate progress. And if there were better, you know, standards, if the utility knew their rate filing has to include a really detailed and accurate estimate of the greenhouse gas emissions associated with their rate plan, and they knew that the commission's order on their rate plan was also going to include an emissions analysis, that would, you know, that would be sort of shifting their incentives and priorities to make sure that those numbers are adding up in a constructive way to contribute to the state's greenhouse gas emissions limit. And I think that's, you know, that's process, that's procedure, but it can really help sort of shift the conversation if the utilities know that that's part of the decision-making process.
Couple thoughts on that one. I would focus on cost, speed, and the focus of the utilities themselves. So on the cost issue, utilities already can and do develop renewables in the state of New York. They have an unregulated side of their businesses, which do the developing, and they have a regulated side which owns the wires and does rate cases. The unregulated side doesn't make as much money because private developers just don't make as much money as utilities do. Why do utilities make more money? Because they get a guaranteed rate of return, and it's generally 10%, there about. Private developers make single-digit returns, so that's why they don't want more renewable development in their unregulated side of the houses because it's not as lucrative. They'd like to put it in the rate-based side, put the risk of all this renewable development on the back of the ratepayer, and make 10% on it. So they want to put it in their regulated side of the house. On their regulated side of the house, they are not right now on schedule to deliver the stuff they're already supposed to deliver, which is building out the wires. So, for example, the Phase 2 upgrades that NISEG and National Grid got approved a few years ago, there were four and a half billion dollars worth of upgrades to incent renewables, they're delayed by many years. And if you look in the rate cases as to why, they say, "Well, you know, turns out permitting takes longer than we thought, and stuff's more expensive than it used to be, so we're five years behind schedule." Well, that doesn't really indicate that they need more work in this space, means seem to be that they need to focus more on the work in front of them.
So then, then who builds it and how do we incentivize it?
Well, there's no shortage of renewable developers wanting to work in the state of New York, some like 150 companies already working here. We need better procurement mechanisms, back to my earlier point. Right now, it's so broken that what happens is the state keeps, the contracts keep breaking. Developers have to walk away from a broken price, and the state doesn't procure enough fast enough to make it work. So we're hoping, and the Clean Energy Standard review that happened in May of this year only fixed a few of the primary concerns that developers have, and so it fundamentally hasn't fixed the mechanism, so we're more or less still in the same place we've been.
Is there another mechanism other than the things that you talked about earlier with the procurement, or are there more mechanisms that need to be fixed?
No, I think we just need to fix procurement. I mean, interconnection's been broken for a while, it's not perfect, but it's gotten a lot better, at least on the utility side of the house. And permitting's a lot better, again, not perfect, but I think procurement's still the broken, broken leg of this stool.
Tell me more about what we need to do around interconnections.
Well, the process now is just sort of working through what I would consider growing pains. So the NISO did giant revisions in the past two years, which I think are generally on the right track. I think the hard part now is that we have reached a place in developing out the grid where all the cheap interconnections have already been done, and now all the expensive stuff is the stuff before us. And every project is getting this crazy, costs said, "Hey, it's going to cost you $100 million to connect to the grid almost any place at all." And no one project can bear that, so they don't. So they just say, "Well, never mind, we're not going to connect." And so the next guy comes along and gets the same, same price bill, and so he, again, walks away. And so we're sort of reaching this invisible ceiling of what's affordable to connect to the grid, and I think we need to rethink how we distribute the costs and how we even specify the right equipment in the first place to do that connecting.
How do we do that rethinking?
I'll get back to you.
Okay.
Thank you. Just a question. The electrical grid is still dependent on wooden poles. How do we fix that? And, you know, Long Island gets wiped out in a storm. Queens gets wiped out in a storm. No one's talked about the fact that we're depending on wooden poles to maintain, yeah. But when I brought up underground lines, everybody's crying about the cars, so, you know, how do we fix this?
Well, you put your finger on a really good point, and one of the recurring themes of the day here is the rising costs that everybody sees on their bills, and one of the real drivers, not the CLCPA, is the turning of those wooden poles into steel poles and hardening of various infrastructure. Because a lot of those wooden poles are 100 years old, and they do snap in a storm. And so in order to, in order to rebuild that infrastructure with better poles, as a very fine example, it costs us all money, and that's what we're really seeing. It's long-deferred maintenance that we haven't wanted to do for 50 years, and all of a sudden it's biting us.
I don't want to see poles anymore. I'd like to see everything go underground. I mean, it's just, to harden the infrastructure makes a lot more sense to me. My understanding is that steel poles create other conduit issues and electrical shocks and everything else, so I don't, I don't see that as a viable solution.
Depends on where you are. Like rural versus urban is very different stuff.
Right, right. But that's something we need to look at and work on, and getting the utilities to cover those costs as well. Kind of back in Superstorm Sandy, you know, that brought this up, and we still haven't gotten a proper resolution to it yet as far as getting it done. I think we need to do that if we're going to be depending on that energy. But I don't have any other questions, do you?
Yes, and I just want to thank you guys for your testimony. You guys are, you guys are really good, you guys are great. Just so we all know, James Town Upstate, that's going to be the first project that's going to be going with the thermal energy, which I'm really, really excited about. You know about that project up in James, well...
Yeah, you were the one that mentioned it.
Yeah, okay, so, yeah, no, it's something to go look at. So at Stony Brook, there's a $22 million grant that's thermal energy also, too, that the Stony Brook University just received. They're going to be building a state-of-the-art sewage treatment plant. You know, it's not the sexiest topic to talk about, but wastewater...
For this group, I think that's pretty sexy.
I know, I know, but again, this means the plumbing business, you know, I know it's not, but it's very important that we, that we, you know, recirculate the, you know, recirculate the wastewater, and that will help us, you know, with the heat, and helps us with hot water, especially in big campuses just like Stony Brook. So that's something that, you know, I am definitely looking forward to seeing in more projects, and I thank you for you guys bringing that up because it's very, very important. What do you guys feel about, you know, we were talking about natural gas, we're talking about, what do you feel about retooling our existing power plants for carbon capture? Does anybody ever, because Dave Manning, I'd love you guys to speak to him, Dave Manning out in Brookhaven National Lab, you know, we've got the most sophisticated scientists in the world out there. And right now, we're doing a big project with the United Association Plumbers and Pipe Thaters down in West Virginia. It's one of the largest carbon capture projects in the whole United States. Can you guys please, would you look into that, about carbon capture? Or does anybody here have anything to say about that?
I'd say that it's likely to be more expensive than nuclear.
Retooling our existing power plants for carbon capture is going to be more money than nuclear.
Because that carbon has to be sort of pumped into the ground and...
Or there's other methods also, too, right?
I think the other methods involve using that carbon for enhanced recovery of hydrocarbons, which defeats the purpose.
That's something that, in other words, please, I'd love you to speak to some, and I know you're very, very well versed, you're an expert, I know you're an engineer, but I'd love you to speak to David Manning on that, please, because Canada is doing it all over, all over the whole country of Canada. Just want to let you know that it's been working, carbon capture. What do you guys feel about, we have all the trucks that are on our road right now, the LNG tanker trucks that are all on our road right now?
LNG trucking is illegal in the city of New York.
Well, no, what about, it's all over, it's all over the state, it's all over Long Island. We have seven pounds of CO2 a mile, and we have hundreds of trucks. One company up in Chester, New York, has 250 tanker trucks alone. So what are your thoughts on, you know, you know, I know you're against the Nessie Pipeline and the Constitution Pipeline, but you know what? You know, I know you want to transition just into all-electric, you know, but wind, solar, and battery storage is not going to do what we're looking to do here. So give me a heads up.
Texas is a perfect example of how wind and solar are working for storm resiliency, and also, we, the biggest fact in the room is, we don't need the Nessie Pipeline. Even National Grid's own numbers show that we don't need the pipeline, so...
We have all these hundreds of trucks on the roadways every day, and what they do is they...
We've got to work together to retire fossil fuels, Senator Mataras.
Okay, well, again, that's not even answering my question, but it is, again, it's a, it's a problem, and that's a big reason why we need to look into carbon capture. I know Senator Parker has a feasibility study with a, you know, with one of his bills that I am a co-sponsor on, that I'd love to talk to him about when we go back up to, go back up to Albany. Carbon capture, yes.
Yeah, if I may, I know. Taking up more time.
Are you an engineer, too?
Yeah, no.
Oh, yeah, I like that, you know. Yeah, and no.
So I did look into carbon capture when I was working with Senator Webb's office on the proposal around CO2 fracking. And you may recall that Senator Webb and Assemblymember Anna Kellis put forward a bill that just added, literally, just a couple of words to our no-fracking bill to include that we couldn't frac with CO2. Typically, when carbon is captured from a power plant, the question is, what do we do with it next? And, I mean, to your profession, it gets put in pipelines, very, very high-pressure pipelines that are super costly to build. There was one of those pipelines that, and, you know, further, it's a very small molecule. They have to be super tight. It's, you know, like, probably, Mr. Engineer Anshul, I don't know if you know the size of CO2 relative to the size of methane gas, but it's, it's a very small molecule, and so the pipes have to be very, very tight. It's hard to build, it's expensive to build. The CO2 gets compressed to being in what's called supercritical form, which is even more compressed than liquid, and it's extraordinarily both explosive and toxic, explosive within the pipe. It causes, you may know what this means even better than I do, a zipper fracture along the pipe. And so once it, once it cracks the pipe, the whole pipe starts to unzip and leak CO2. And CO2 is heavier than the air, and so it, literally, in Sartoria, Mississippi, when this pipe unzipped, it cast a cloud of CO2 that choked... Hmm? CO2 fracking, CO2 pipes. So after we captured the CO2, what do we do with it? It has to go into, go into a piping, and ultimately, they inject it into the ground with the, what the energy industry uses it for is to use it for fracking, to get more oil or more gas out of the ground. But, so they use these high-pressure pipes that can unzip, and when it does, the CO2 leaks out and suffocates anything in its path, including, and this was super scary there, because people were passing out left and right because they couldn't breathe the oxygen, the CO2 was replacing it. All of our combustion engines on emergency vehicles didn't get the oxygen they needed either, so they couldn't get to the scene of the accidents and the problems and come rescue people. But, but so. So the other piece about it, and they're finding this around the country, is that putting the mechanisms in place to do CO2 capture on the power plants, guess what? Makes the cost of the energy produced from that power plant go up.
There's other means of carbon capture. That's why I'd like you guys to speak to, please, Dave Manning at Brookhaven National Lab. I know, I think you know him. But we could talk about something like that, but what about our battery storage facilities, Moss Landing? What about talking about that, in other words, that lithium-ion batteries, that in other words, go on fire? So that's another story for another day, but we are, we're out of time.
I want to thank the panel for coming. Appreciate your insights and feedback.
Thank you, guys.
As, I just want to reemphasize what Senator Parker said, please send us detailed legislative ideas, because as Senator Parker said, our staff is not as versed as you guys are, so the more details you send us to write the legislation, the better. Thank you all.
Thank you, guys.
The next panel is the municipalities. The New York City Mayor's Office of Climate and Environmental Justice, Elijah Hutchinson and Carol Cock from the Ratepayer and Interveners.
Chalk.
Chalk, sorry. Whenever you're ready.
Sure. Hi, my name's Elijah Hutchinson, and I'm the Executive Director of the Mayor's Office of Climate and Environmental Justice. And I'm joined here by Katie Schmidt, who's the Deputy Executive Director.
Yes, I would take Councilmember William Tom Hall.
Yes. And thank you, senators, for having such an important hearing. And also thank you to the other advocates that are in the room who so expertly and eloquently share their concerns. The PSC must ensure that the foundational commitments of the CLCPA are achieved by serving New Yorkers with reliable, affordable, and clean energy. The federal government's attack on renewable energy makes it necessary for states and municipalities to figure out creative solutions, tackle complex projects, and continue to modernize our energy infrastructure. We must work together to ensure that our energy system provides power that is healthy, safe, and affordable to all New Yorkers. However, recent decisions by the state are inconsistent with the legal mandates of the CLCPA, instead informed by a false narrative that renewable generation projects are impossible to build and transmission projects are too expensive. The PSC has canceled Clean Path New York and a New York City Public Policy Transmission Need. Transmission investments to bring, bring energy from upstate to downstate and to reduce the cost of future offshore wind projects are necessary to achieve New York's clean energy goals. Prepare for future investment in wind, solar, and other renewable and dispatch generation, and bring enough energy, renewable or otherwise, to the city of New York to meet our growing load. Most troubling, the PSC has supported National Grid entering into a contract to purchase 100% of gas supplied by the Northeast Supply Enhancement, Nesi Pipeline, and if placed in, if placed into service. The PSC support came in the context of the utility's long-term gas planning proceeding, a proceeding originally designed to plan for a reduction in the size of the gas system to move away from fossil fuels, consistent with the CLCPA. Importantly, the PSC's unqualified support for Nesi will make it difficult for the Public Service Commission to critically evaluate future spending necessary to operationalize the Nesi pipeline, despite high uncertainty about what those costs will be, uncertainty that will be shouldered by the ratepayers. Additionally, our in-city fossil fuel power plants are antiquated, inefficient, and may be increasingly unreliable, some more than 70 years old. Approving Nesi now makes it more likely that the PSC will approve repowering the fossil fuel generation fleet. To run on gas, Nesi will continue to, to bring New York City for generations, instead of investing in transmission to bring cleaner power from upstate. And the state has not even addressed, much less considered, the cost of human life and health to New Yorkers who live next to these power plants, plants that the CLCPA and the Department of Environmental Conservation, PECER, rule had provided a pathway for closure. It makes sense to build transmission now, as it takes significantly longer to plan, permit, design, and build transmission cables than new generation like windmills or solar farms. Because it takes up to a decade to deliver large-scale transmission projects, we need to move forward with the solicitation for upstate-downstate transmission immediately, or else New York City won't be able to, won't be served by new transmission infrastructure in times to close the capacity gaps identified by the New York Independent System Operator in the 2030s. A new transmission line to bring energy from upstate to downstate would make the city's grid cleaner and more reliable now, even if the energy is not 100% renewable, and it will catalyze future solar and wind. While we hear quite a bit about the cost of transmission, we're not hearing from either the state or gas utilities about the extraordinary costs that maintaining, and with Nesi expanding, our natural gas infrastructure imposes on ratepayers, the harm of the, to the health of the residents, or the costs of not building new transmission to the city's economic and civic health. Many safe decisions across the state precede the recent cancellation of the transmission projects or the implementation of the Trump rollbacks are interfering with our climate goals, making the state's excuse that the federal policy changes make action impossible ring hollow. There is no implementation plan for cap and invest. The state has not created targeted incentive or financing tools to support New York City's buildings complying with Local Law 97, despite the fact that successful implementation of Local Law 97 is necessary for the state to achieve CLCPA goals. And state resources are necessary to make complying with Local Law 97 affordable. Further, New York City represents nearly half of New York State's population, while 44% of New York City's geography and half of our residents are in state disadvantaged communities, which the state purports to prioritize for funding, for funding to level the playing field for those neighborhoods. Despite this, the state has failed to prioritize funding and has failed to allocate Environmental Bond Act money equitably in New York City, where our dense built environment is harder to decarbonize and adapt to future impacts of climate change, instead awarding funding to upstate communities that are easier to decarbonize and make resilient. These critical decisions lie within the authority of the state, not the city. Yet the state's backtracking on CLCPA and failure to equitably direct funding to New York City is inconsistent with our collective need to make living in New York affordable for all. New York City is doing our part to meet CLCPA mandates. We've completed the first compliance deadline for Local Law 97 in August of 2025. The 94% reporting compliance rate that we are seeing right now today demonstrates that the city's large building owners are engaged to do the work necessary to increase efficiency, transition off fossil fuels, and modernize the spaces where New Yorkers live and work. In collaboration with the New York City Department of Sanitation's transformative mandatory organics collection citywide, the city's Department of Environmental Protection built groundbreaking infrastructure to convert methane emitted as an unavoidable byproduct of processing wastewater and organics into renewable natural gas that can feed directly into our gas distribution infrastructure. The New York City Department of Citywide Administrative Services has also built 198 solar projects on New York City property, bringing 32 megawatts of solar energy to the grid, and has another 139 projects in a pipeline that will bring another over 40 megawatts of power to New York City. There are several ways in which New York City and the state partnerships of modernizing our building and infrastructure can be made affordable to New York. And we need to see the system benefits charged collected by the state used to develop funding and financing tools built for Local Law 97 and scale in multifamily affordable housing. We need to skate to scale the New York City Housing Authorities Clean Heat for All program. And we need to invest in upstate-downstate transmission and roll back natural gas infrastructure to protect ratepayers and the environment. Thank you so much for allowing me to provide this testimony here today, and we're also happy to answer any questions.
Are you looking at me?
Yes.
Before you start the clock, let me just explain that I was blinded in an accident in May, and I am still learning to use my tools. I was mostly fixed by a team of wonderful, eight wonderful eye surgeons at Manhattan Eye and Ear. But it, when you, when you have a commission on the, a panel on the commission on the blind, bring me back to talk about the same, the same theme I'm, I'm going to address here today, which is involve the people whose lives are affected in your decision-making about, about your processes. Should have gotten to, I didn't get this until last week, and it has changed my life. So thank you. My name is Carol Chock. I am President of Ratepayer and Community Interveners of the Finger Lakes. I've been a registered participant in four rate cases, NISEG, RG&E, one is going on now, and several additional matters in front of the Public Service Commission since 2012. At first, while I was an elected official on the Tompkins County Legislature. I retired after 10 years there, having chaired a bunch of their committees, including facilities and infrastructure. So I could talk about that if you want to ask me questions. I am President of a regional membership organization formed 12 years ago, so overlapping, specifically to impact electric and gas utility matters. Ratepayer and Community Interveners experience is as one of the smaller and low-budget stakeholders that has nevertheless been able to make an impact, particularly in the earlier rate case that we, that we, cases we were in. It's been harder recently. See in particular Appendix M of the NISEG-RG&E Joint Proposal in 2019. I spent 10 years as an elected official on the Tompkins County Legislature. I became President of this group 12 years ago, and it is a coalition of, wait, in the beginning, we started with 85, and we've grown and shrunk COVID to represent local elected and appointed officials, local and regional organizations, small businesses, scientists, farmers, and residents affected by energy decisions in the geographically spread out upstate NISEG and RG&E service areas. I also tried to dress the part, I proudly claim, as a cool kid. The issue isn't the cultural slur. I'm a big girl. I was on the county legislature. Call me anything you want, but negotiate with me in good faith and start paying more than lip service to concerns of stakeholders who take your needs for safety, reliability, and a gradual enough transition for your business profits to continue making a fair profit, and our state staff, DPS, and, and our local officials as well, to train and adjust their, their capacity to handle the newest technology, the laws, the energy goals. There have been some players along the way asking to shut off the gas switch tomorrow. That isn't us, and I don't think that's any of the people who stuck with this process in this room. We want, we want, we believe that you need to start transitioning with the years left to achieve it, which we are rapidly using, losing. I've added to this, to this talk and taken out, so bear with me, and tried to try to answer the topics that have come up in your other questions. Affordable housing, the tax credits, mortgage banking, and the 6% maximum utility bill expectation. Mr. Christian mentioned 6% as the expected maximum proportion we use to, to expect that, that we used to expect that utility costs would be of the household budgets. That isn't true anymore. Mortgage banks expect that when you try to buy a house. And even affordable housing providers were able to use that as their guideline for both first-time homebuyer programs and their rental units. It's expected in their tax credit programs. We're now working with our regional affordable housing organizations to confirm the information we're hearing that for, for up to 24% of New Yorkers, utility bills are now up to a full quarter of their incomes. If so, that's, that's not, we, we're not a fossil fuels versus, the safety versus transition versus business profits. This is, this is, there's a possibility here that our whole assumption that if you trade off, that if you keep those fossil fuels, there will be profits overall, it, you know, might be challenged. And we did this with, with hydro fracking when we did the, the socioeconomic study. And we brought the mortgage bankers to Andrew Cuomo and to Jim, what's his name? Malatris, you know, who called in the state banking commission and, and offices and the economic development people and the ORPS office. And we discovered that the assumptions were not true, that it's a trade-off, that it's going to cost New York money. You count the million dollars a mile to rebuild roads that Tompkins County, when I left the legislature, had miles and miles of road that had just fallen into the hillside in the latest storms. You count the mortgage banking problems and the tax credit problems, do the cost-benefit analysis. I'm a corneal-educated professional planner. I spent years learning multiple analytical techniques and methods. I'm able to apply that expertise in the rate cases. But I also learned in planning school that in the end, all that technical analysis comes down to two simple questions, who benefits and who pays? Four words, really, it's all you need to get to the crux after you parse all of these, this detailed material. I was going to go into the history of the New York State laying down the public service law and the fact that it was done and the rules were written by the most, by progressive, in a progressive fashion. Those rules were written to make sure that stakeholders had access to the process and were heard. They were, they were written to ensure that if you got your monopoly contract for your region of the state, instead of having 20 electric companies with wires all over the place, that if you got your monopoly contract, you weren't allowed to just give the densest neighborhoods their wires. You had to run it to the furthest poor person down the, the furthest road. And you had to run it to the furthest farmer, and you had to run it to the loggers and the, and the hunters in the Adirondacks and remote areas. You had to find a way to run your wire if you took that contract and got the, sort of the guaranteed profit, return on equity, excuse me. So, you know, it's, let's, let's approach this with the notion that we still want to find out what are the most, most current of the, and this was still delivered, what was then the most current of the modern technologies, which was gas. It was a miracle. You could light a lamp instead of going and chopping wood and loading your stove. I wanted to say something about, you've asked questions about the, oh. I, I do want to, how much, I probably don't have time left, but I do want to say something about trusting your local partners, in particular the municipalities. You know, we work with people as they implement their, their projects, their development projects. Who needs gas? Who, who has already actually started to, to, to build their businesses, other unrelated businesses, to, to put in electrical equipment? That whole test pilot of the non-pipe alternative implementation happened in, in the NISEG-RG&E rate case. When it was local people, was it Irene Weiser? Were you the one who piped up and said, you know, that this pipeline is very expensive, tens of millions of dollars or hundreds, hundred million dollar pipeline? Don't quote me on the numbers. That we were, they, the company wanted to run from Oneonta, Cooperstown, to Lansing, New York. It was going to cost a lot of money.
I'm sorry, I'm going to have to ask you to.
Okay, I will wrap up, but you can ask me more about that and how we knew the businesses. We knew the school that needed the gas, and we came up with a, an alternative way to deliver it that saved the company and the ratepayers a lot of money. And, and, and we knew that the, the businesses and real estate developers were actually ready to put in heat pumps. And they've got 100-unit apartment complexes that are now using heat pumps down to 13 below zero, that it gets to be in, we're in our neck of the woods up in Ithaca and Tompkins County, New York. I also wanted to say, you asked questions earlier about, you know, what, how, what process? How do we get to a place where we are actually hearing from, from the, the local residents who, in your, in your hearing statement, what you, what you were looking for here? You were looking for, to get to the crux of the matter. I had a quote from that second paragraph in your, in your call for, for people to testify here. You were aiming to, to learn why, why you're, why you're getting the flak you are from the, the locals and from people saying the process isn't working for us. This book, it is a whole new field of design justice. This book has been translated into a whole bunch of languages and used around the world as a text in the new field of design justice, is asking exactly that question. How do you design a process that actually involves everybody, and how do you implement it? Here's a cartoon that summarizes the whole thing. It's a cartoon of different kinds of people, and it says nothing about us without us.
Thank you for your time, and we really appreciate you coming today. You gave us all your written testimony, so we'll follow up with any questions. Any questions?
Yes. So first of all, thank you all for, for being here today. Elijah, I'm really interested, as you talk about Local Law 97, what is the role that you think the state should be playing in terms of helping the city implement Local Law 97? And, but also, there's, I think, some real places in. But also, there's, I think, some real places in which there's some contradictions between the CLCPA and Local Law 97. How do you think that we work those out?
I would ask for you to specify those contradictions, but I.
In terms of goals, right? Like, so one of the things, like, so one of the things that's a real problem I hear from developers all the time and people who own buildings is that there isn't any RECs, right, allowed, right? That's a contradiction from what we allow in the rest of the state, right? So we allow other ways to get it done, and I understand the, I understand the sentiment behind it and agree with it, but from a, a, just a structural perspective, what you do with the largest, you know, largest city and one of the oldest cities in the country, how you actually implement that is is becomes difficult for a lot of folks.
Got it. Thank you for that question. We in New York City need a lot of support in order to achieve Local Law 97 from the state of New York. Originally, and we represent a lot of the emissions of New York City, it's impossible for the state to be in compliance without it. There have been the discussion of various tools and resources and programs that need to be developed in order to bring compliance numbers higher for.
And now I'm trying, and now I'm trying to get some specificity on kind of what those things are so that so that we can figure it out.
A revolving loan fund, for example, was something that we've discussed.
How much?
With $250 million was originally.
Two, five, zero.
Two, five, zero, of what we were initially planning for, coordinating for with the state. We don't have any more planning going on for that revolving loan fund to be available. Cap and Invest, also another program that has paused, canceled, and has no pathway forward with actually being designed. And then there are other additional resources that need to be brought downstate from the utility service benefit charge or other NSE. Yeah.
Hi, thank you.
No, this, this.
You can hear, okay. Yeah, the, the reason New York State is so important in helping New York City decarbonize is because it is a state function that collects the utility service benefit charge through rate payers. That is the pot of money that's administered by NISERTA, that's programmed by utilities.
What do you want us to do with the system's benefit charge?
So we, we need the programs coming out of that to prioritize multifamily housing, affordable housing, and be designed to scale in dense urban areas.
Doing what?
To both provide funding for energy efficiency investments and replacement.
But those programs already exist.
Well, they're really struggling to work in multifamily housing, and then when they do work, oftentimes because of affordable housing laws or because you have renters, the energy savings benefits don't trickle down to the folks living in the apartment building. So I think there's one category of funding where it's better designing the state programs that are already funded through state programs. Then you have like other things that the legislature can do, and we've worked with your office very closely, and we genuinely appreciate your collaboration, as well as with many of your colleagues, to extend J 51 and make improvements to J 51 so that it's more easily implementable, and it's extended through the first, the 2030 compliance deadline for Local Law 97. We've talked about a revolving loan fund. We have amendments that were passed by the Senate and got stuck in the House for the PACE financing program.
Those are my bill, too.
And then, you know, I think we're open to be being creative. Like, we know that we all have to come to the table to talk about what are the tools that are going to make a difference on the ground, and New York City wants to engage in that conversation with the legislature. But just on the flip side, to answer the question about RECs, Local Law 97 does allow the use of RECs to fulfill compliance obligations. It's limited to the electric load of the building and 10% of the missions over Local Law 97 requirements. We did intentionally design that to only permit Tier 4 RECs, which means that we want projects that get put in the ground and bring new sources of renewable energy to New York City. So we don't allow any type of REC. Also, this is exactly the project that the state couldn't get over the finish line. We are bringing Champlain Hudson online. We hope it's on track for bringing power to New York City next year in 2026. That will create some RECs available for purchase to meet Local Law 97 requirements. But Clean Path New York was the other Tier 4 project, and when it was canceled by the Public Service Commission, one of the consequences of that is that there are significantly fewer RECs available for Local Law 97 compliance.
Why did they, why did they reject it?
So I don't want to speak for the Public Service Commission. They issued a long order. I think they struggled with the escalating price, and I, you know, I, I think that the process for developing Clean Path over the course of a decade was one they found issue with, and, you know, that's explained further in their order. I think multiple people who've testified here today really want to focus on the importance of upstate, downstate transmission and decoupling our transmission need from having to carry with it dozens of renewable generation projects. If you plugged upstate power into New York City, it would by definition make our grid cleaner. New York City's grid is about 90% fueled by fossil fuels. Upstate's about 90% renewables, depending on the season, and that is a huge inequity that's really not being addressed, especially after the PSCs supported the Nisi pipeline. But we need to build the transition, transmission, and we need to start planning for it now because those are complex projects, and we made a lot of progress on the route with the Clean Path team, whether or not it's Clean Path leading, you know, the, the original financial team leading the project. And then upstate renewables will have new markets to sell to, and so decoupling that, I think.
I need you to take a, I need you to take a trip to Buffalo and explain to people in Niagara County that plugging upstate renewables into New York City is not going to raise their rates.
I will happily look at that question. I understand it's a complicated system.
I'm saying it's more complicated than just saying, like, you know, this good extension cord, and let's just plug this in and then.
No, and I, I'm speaking, you know, quickly because we're on the clock, but, you know, I think, I think you've heard today about the complexity of these questions and needing transparency and a good faith conversation to solve them. You know, I know from our perspective, implementing Local Law 97 this year was incredibly complex, and it took a lot of creative thinking and a lot of collaboration with multiple stakeholders, and we're getting over the finish line by embracing that complexity, and, you know, I think that's what we need to see from all of our partners.
Look, I certainly, as a Brooklyn resident and the Chair of the Energy and Telecommunications Committee, understand that, you know, CLCPA doesn't get done and completion unless New York City is a major part of it. We understand that a lot of the emissions are coming from buildings, and so we have to kind of address that. But there are programs that I, that I know, this is the first time I'm hearing that the NISERTA programs aren't sufficient, so we need to have some very specific conversation. And I would suggest that you guys have some specific conversations with NISERTA and see what can be done, you know, just kind of through their regs and through their, their program design, and then conversations with my office and Senator Comrie's office about how do we draft legislation that may make some of the fixes that you're, that you're looking to have.
Thank you.
I also think some education has to happen, both statewide, literally on this issue of the grid, but then also on folks about, about what programs are reliable, right? Like, I think, again, the demand response issue in New York City is bigger than it is anywhere else. People in New York City just, you know, I just don't know, don't understand, like, what it means to run your dishwasher or your washing machine in the middle of the day versus doing it at 10 o'clock at night before you go to bed, right? Like, those are things that we literally need to start, you know, teaching in our schools and, you know, getting out to our communities so that folks can start participating in that. That would, that would be a significant part that I think that people are not having a lot of conversations on.
Yeah, and New York City represents rate payers and the residents of New York City, just like you do, but we also own property and pay an energy bill ourselves, and so we are living demand response.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Building management systems.
Oh, I know.
And I, I think you're right. We need to teach people about the multiple tools, but to your point, there's no silver bullet that works for every sector and every type of building.
No, no, it's all of above. No, no, it's all, no, it's all, no, it's all of above, and that's why I'm, I'm saying that there's a number of things that we need to be doing together, and that's what I'm trying to get at here, and I think kind of what's most helpful for me and Senator Matarra and Senator Comrie is understanding about what the legislature specifically can be doing, right? So that we can kind of use the tools at our disposal to help advance our mutual agenda, right? Because I think all of us understand that we want to see that, that's why we're doing the, the public hearing, right? Right? Is that we like to see the CLCPA work. We do understand it needs to happen in New York City in conjunction with Local Law 97, and what does that look like? What are you seeing? Shortfalls? And, right, so I'm guessing you're here now to kind of talk to us about those shortfalls, and I'm saying beyond these minutes that we have here, that this was a very complex problem, we need to have an ongoing conversation about what we should be doing and what NISERTA needs to be doing in order to help provide resources, in order to help Local Law 97, but also CLCPA be successful in the, in the larger city that has approximately half of the population of the state. So, you know, we have to make that happen.
And to your point about having the number of tools available to us, that's exactly why we're here and what we're so concerned with, what we're seeing, we're on the path to just only having the options of paying for firing up our in-city fossil fuel generation plants and accepting a gas pipeline as our future, as our energy future for the, for the long term in New York City, which has immense public health and, you know, other consequences, not, not just related to climate, but we don't see with this approach, if we don't grapple with the complexity and the nuance that these issues need to have in order to address this at scale, it's not, it's too soon to throw in the towel.
Yeah, but I don't think, I don't think that's, I mean, I don't think that's the case, right? Like, like, are we, we like to be, right, with this? You know, I don't think we are, right? Some is, again, when you talk about the federal government coming in and taking the nine gig, like, I know that everybody like tired of hearing this, but like, that's a real thing, right? Like, it's not like a, it's not an insignificant, you know, notion that, like, our, our offshore wind project, which, by the way, that energy was going into New York City, right, got, got knocked down, right? And so then the question is, like, no, well, what else can we do in order to get there, right? And Senator Matarra, you know, is, you know, clearly like hydrogen, right, you know, heat off wastewater, so on and so forth, right? And those things, too. My big thing is demand response, right? But we also have to, I know, address some of the issues in the, in the, in, with these, with these buildings, and we just need some, some, you know, I just kind of reject this notion that there is, there is not an urgency or a understanding of what needs to be done by the state, as much as it is that the implementation of it is a lot more difficult, and it is more than just saying, allow no more gas infrastructure, right? Because disallowing gas infrastructure doesn't produce electrons. And ultimately, whether in fact, if we snapped our fingers today and got rid of the CLCPA, you still have an increased load, and you still would need a answer to create more electrons because you, because load is increasing every single day in New York City, and that's the question that I feel like we're not, that no one's getting at directly.
So I, I agree with what you just said, and we thought we were on a path that, you know, very much understood the real consequence of, you know, the delay that we're going to face on offshore wind because we had upstate, downstate transmission in the queue, because we are looking seriously at energy storage, because we are taking advantage of many of these tools. And, you know, those tools include demand response, they need to include storage as transmission, they also need to include energy efficiency and better building management, and we in the city are looking at all those things and educating our building owners about all of those different approaches. I think what's really troubling to the city now is without Clean Path moving forward and without the PSC, you know, if it had a problem with the Clean Path project, not immediately starting a new solicitation that resolved that issue to solicit an upstate, downstate transmission. Because we need all tools, without that particular piece of it, we are worried that we are going to be putting billions of dollars into a gas pipeline and repowering our in-city fossil fuel fleet that has collateral costs for human health, and that wasn't essential. It's a necessary piece, it's not a sufficient piece, and, you know.
But they're not, but they're not mutually exclusive. That's the part I keep saying. Like, I keep hearing this, this notion that, like.
Yeah.
This stuff is happening with, with gas, and, and then that's why these, they have nothing to do with each other. Like, they're mutually, they're literally mutually exclusive.
So I think where we're concerned, and, you know, the city of New York often agrees to disagree with many of our friends who have been in this room today, we have looked critically at investments in the natural gas infrastructure. We haven't talked a lot about Winter Storm Elliott today, but I'm happy to do that. There have been recent decisions to invest in gas infrastructure to create the conditions for reliability in the case of another Winter Storm Elliott, and New York City didn't oppose those. Like, we understand that we have very hard-to-electrify uses in New York City, that there will be a natural gas system in our city for decades, and we are planning around that. We have tried to create the conditions where we are electrifying or stopping the expansion of the gas system. You know, we have Local Law 154, which prevents the construction of new buildings that has onsite combustion. We're doing our piece to pull it back where we can and think about renewable natural gas from our organics collection or energy efficiency in the places where we know we won't be able to for a while. We, you know, work very closely with Con Ed on the steam system. I think New York City is very much in that pragmatic place where we understand they can't be mutually exclusive, but building the Nisi pipeline will lock us into significant costs and volumes of gas for generations, and that's where I think we see a tipping point, that we know we have to maintain a robust gas system for a while. We're working to do that as smartly as possible, but Nisi locks us into using gas and having to pay for that gas over.
Right, but there are also, also, what you're not discussing, also, are the non-flammable uses of gas, including, like, the Bloom technology literally on City Hall, right? Aren't they doing Bloom on City Hall?
We have a fuel cell. I'm not exactly sure what the exact technology is.
It's a Bloom, it's a Bloom fuel, fuel cell that uses natural gas without, without combusting it.
And, again.
As an energy source.
Yeah, we're looking, you know, I think the city thinks a lot about how do we incubate startups in the clean energy space. EDC has opened several different hubs for clean energy. We're thinking about how we better transition some of those technologies into demonstration on city-owned property. We have to build at scale, though, and so we have our own procurement challenges. But, yeah, I'm happy to talk about any of those technologies because we agree they all need to be on the table. It's these generational projects that we need to really tackle now.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I say a word? I'm a planner, so maybe, you know, all tools, all tools lead to cost benefit analyses. My suggestion, and you asked the question, how do we, how do we get to the notion of what we need to do? Run the cost benefit analysis. Run the cost benefit analysis of the, the money you've got to lay out to transition City Hall, to transition to technologies that replace the gas. Yes, it's expensive, and yes, we have to ramp up, but run the numbers also, not just of the fact that there's health and air and water quality issues and public health, but the numbers that that costs both the city and the state. Run the numbers.
President Trump, I think we're past, I think we're past running numbers, right? Like, we're at a, and in this particular case, just to be very clear, we passed CLCPA, right? I helped negotiate it, right? With the, with the, with literally the most, the boldest, more audacious climate goals in the country, point blank, period. Nobody's close to us. California's not close to us, Texas is not close to us, nobody's close to what we're trying to do. Got it? You now overlay that with Local Law 97. Got it? We need to do all these things. So we're not talking about whether we should do it. This is now about implementation, and what all I'm simply arguing is, saying no to gas infrastructure is not enough to get us to that number, to get us to, to implementation, because implementation fundamentally is about the fact that we have increasing load that no one is really paying attention to, and that we have to produce more electrons. And your answer is, plug us into the upstate, into the upstate thing, which I get, and you had Clean Path, which PSC says, has said no to. So we now need to kind of restructure. Is there revisiting of Clean Path? Is there a Clean Path 2 that we can go to? Or, right?
And that's what we're asking for, is there to be a new solicitation offered by the state on transmission needs that would allow us to come back to this again and have something for New York City?
So, so one of the, one of the, one of the failures of, of Clean Path 2, and one of the failures of this, this administration, is a lack of communication with the state legislature, right? Like, and to the degree that you can kind of find some partners in government to work with you, and it may make it a little bit more effective. And so, again, I'm not sure what your conversations are with Dorian Harris and the folks at NISERTA, but certainly, like, those. but certainly like those conversations need to happen in terms of how these programs that are currently existing already can be used for building owners? And then if we need to kind of do a new solicitation, have a better understanding, we should be able to figure that out. I mean, like, Rory lives in Brooklyn, like, you know what I mean? Like, this is not, and the Chair of Energy Committee lives in Brooklyn, like, these are not like difficult or faraway places or people who are not interested in what you're trying to get done, right? Because we live in the effective zone, right? Like, I live in Flatbush, right? Like, this is not far away or like, I'm worrying about some play, like, I want to see this stuff get done as well. And so, I just think that there has to be a lot more specificity and more partnership and conversation about what the city needs and how in fact the state can be helpful. We know that we want to, we want to be helpful. We do know that this has to get done, right? We're the ones who said it had to get done, right? And so, the question is, you know, where are the points of contention? Where the blockages that we can help remove? And where's the expansion in terms of access of electrons in the system that we can get done?
And just to be clear, we work hand in glove with NYSERDA. They are, you know, tackling the same problems we are, and we understand the huge challenge that they're undertaking. We've also met recently with your office and Justin and really appreciate his time. We meet, you know, as frequently as we can with our elected officials, and we understand this has to bring everyone to the table and we need everyone fighting the same fight. So, we appreciate that.
All right, Mr. President Chalk, you say?
Are you assuming that we have a finite number of electrons that are being produced in these clean ways upstate? You know, everybody's making that assumption that there is this finite amount that we would need to redirect from one place to another. And I know it's tough to get new privileges, everybody would have to agree. I'm suggesting that you convince the people who aren't sure we should spend the money on that, the Senator Mataras, with all due respect of the world, run the numbers with him.
Madam President, I am saying, there are finite a number, right? The number may be enough, right, may be sufficient, but it is finite, right? Just to answer that question.
How much hydro do we have?
Well, we have hydro, right? And, but it is, ultimately is finite. I'm just saying it's not infinite, right? For it not to be finite, if it's not infinite, it's finite. So, it is finite, it may be sufficient, but it's still finite.
They just announced they're going to, what, build half their energy out of clean energy in the next, I don't know how many years? They just made that announcement here in New York.
And it's still not, and it's still not, it's still not as ambitious as the CLCPA.
No, but my point is, my point is that you, in order to fulfill it, you need to convince people who are skeptical that we need to spend the money.
We're saying the same, now we're saying the same thing. What I'm saying, I'm making two points based on your assertion. One, that the upstate clean energy that comes out of hydro and other sources is finite, it is sufficient, but it's finite because it's not infinite, right? Like, we don't have infinite amount of electrons, right? But we do have, but it's finite, but it may be sufficient. I am then, I am then, I'm tertiaryly saying that that issue is a political problem, which is what I said, more than it is a subset of problems. So, like, again, can we get votes for it, right? That's our problem, not whether there is in fact enough electrons upstate in order to resolve the issue, is my point. Does that make sense, President Chalk?
Well, and we get the votes by convincing people that it's worth it to spend the money.
And we need help doing that, especially from people who live in the Finger Lakes.
But it's the conservatives that helped us run the numbers, thinking they were going to show that we were stupid to be opposing hydro fracking.
I'm not even talking about conservatives. I'm talking about, I have Democratic members in my conference who do not think that we should be plugging into the grid, and that their constituents erroneously believe that if you give an electron to New York City, that that is going to raise their prices. And their prices are high as well, right? So, what I'm saying, it's a political problem, not an actual, you know, engineering problem that we should have, that we should have a conversation on.
Well, they're worried about it because nobody's talking about building new hydro.
No, I'm worried about it because you need votes.
And we failed to build the winds.
I'm worried about it, President Chalk, because you need votes. And without votes, you can't get anything done, and right? And so, that's the ongoing thing to get anything done.
Thank you, very much.
I want to say that Senator Matarra has a question.
Well, there's something, I don't even question, just something to look at, because we, do you have the last group with the thermal energy networking? Do you know that, thermal energy? We have condensate, obviously from steam, condensate, thousands of gallons a day dumping into the East River, we all know that. That's all could be used, and that will keep down so much energy costs. That's very, very important to think about that, think about that. All recirculating waste, heat, water. So, okay, because you know, you're looking for different, this is a perfect example of all that condensate from Mar Steam in New York City. Huge.
Okay, I have one question. You talked about the NITRA fund, how much do you need for that?
Can we talk to our NITRA colleagues and get back to you with the number?
Please do.
We need an answer right now.
We will need that, and also. Okay, great. That was my primary question. I just wanted to thank you all, thank you at the mayor's office for climate and environmental justice. I was happy to work with you on a couple of bills to do dehardening and the environmental installations for the West Side Highway and also the FDR Drive. I know that you have been working hard on that. You didn't get enough credit for that, for what that was done, and I hope that we can retain the basics and all of the rubrics of that office because you really have been ahead of the curve on a lot of this stuff. So, just want to thank you. And, Ms. Chalk, thank you for coming in and sharing with us your testimony and your wisdom, and we look forward to working with you as you develop legislation as well.
I am the only representative municipalities in all of New York State other than New York City, and I'm six years out from, you know, from my tenure on the legislature. So, I do urge you to involve other municipal.
We did reach out to other municipalities, but a lot of them didn't want to slept down in the cities. But we'll try to do another hearing in another part of the state.
Yeah, I mean, you realize the funding to send people is an issue.
I don't want to pay congestion prices. Oops, did I say that? Next panel is, thank you for coming, National Grid, the National Fuel Distribution Corporation and Central Hudson Gas and Electric, and Avon Grid on behalf of NISIC. All righty, National Grid, you ready?
Yes.
All right. Fire away. They've been beating up on you today, so see what you got, see what you bring into the party.
Well, thank you, Chair Comrie, Chair Parker, and ranking member Matarra, and the other members of the committees for the opportunity to submit testimony for this important hearing and for your efforts to engage with all of us to consider opportunities to enhance the effectiveness of rate case, the rate case process, generic policy proceedings, as well as our collective effort to take meaningful actions to achieve the CLCPA. My name is Chris Kiefer, I'm an Assistant General Counsel at National Grid, and in that capacity, I oversee legal and regulatory matters affecting national grids, three regulated operating companies, Niagara Mohawk, the Brooklyn Union Gas Company, and Keyspan Gas East Corporation. And together, these companies serve more than 4.2 million electric and gas customers in areas of upstate New York, New York City and Long Island. And National Grid operates more than 70,000 miles of electric and gas networks, and we have more than 10,000 New York-focused employees living and working in the communities we serve. Our core obligation, as established in the public service law, is to safely and adequately meet the critical energy needs of the customers and communities we serve. And in doing so, our work underpins the foundations of daily life. At the last Public Service Commission session, Commissioner John Major reflected on this incredible feat when he complimented the hard work and dedication of the Department of Public Service Staff. There, he said, "I recognize that the DPS staff works hard every day to maintain safety and reliability. They're heroes whose day-to-day work keeps the light on and the heat on, and it saves lives by averting catastrophes. You, DPS staff, don't get the credit that you deserve because if you do your job right, you don't make the news." I believe that same sentiment applies to the important role that each of us at this hearing plays in bringing safe and adequate energy at just and reasonable rates to the people throughout New York State. And we have the added challenge of doing so at a time when we are collectively grappling with the complexities of the energy transition, which we've heard a lot about today. What we do meaningfully affects people every minute of every day, and if we do it well, people never even think about us. But the regulation of electric and gas utilities is increasingly complex, the engineering issues are challenging, customer expectations have continued to increase, and stakeholder involvement in these issues has followed suit. As has been discussed at this hearing, in August, the commission issued an order approving a settlement of Niagara Mohawk's rate case. The case involved thousands of pages of testimony, almost 2,000 discovery responses that required answers within 10 calendar days. And ultimately, the company and 14 other parties, typically adverse parties, ended up reaching a settlement. And we have a responsibility in that process to engage with civility and respect. And I was shocked and disappointed to hear that that's not an experience that others have had in other settlement processes, because that's something we prioritize and pride ourselves on at National Grid in terms of how we move through this process. That settlement ended up dealing with a bunch of positive outcomes that may not have otherwise been possible through a litigated one-year case. We addressed issues of affordability by removing over $1 billion in electric and gas capital investments that were part of the original filing. The settlement also enabled the parties to use rate mechanisms such as legalization to smooth out bill increases, as well as the impact of approximately $47 million due to rate compression. That occurs when we aren't able to address rate cases within the statutorily determined 11-month period and have to go beyond that. In addition, the settlement includes approximately $290 million in bill credits for vulnerable New Yorkers, expanded resources to support the company's energy affordability program, enhanced outreach and education. We also included infrastructure investments, investing billions of dollars to modernize infrastructure, enhance the safety and reliability and resiliency of the company's electric and gas systems, and improve customer service. This also addressed issues that would facilitate electrification and aging infrastructure, which we've heard about today as well. The company is also responding to the digital revolution, which I think is something that often gets overlooked. We are deploying advanced metering infrastructures and working to deploy advanced customer service systems to meet evolving customer needs. And we've also worked to address the CLCPA in efforts and furtherance of that through shareholder-funded weatherization, health and safety programs, enhanced efforts to identify non-pipe alternatives, outreach and education materials for customers regarding clean energy technologies, and robust the CLCPA reporting requirements. And when I talk about the efforts that we employ to make sure that we're engaging all parties, one of the things that I'm really proud of is the follow-on benefits that we've had with a number of different constituents and stakeholders in that process, one of them being an integrated energy and planning pilot that we had received approval for as part of the case, has spawned further discussion and stakeholder participation with the Alliance for a Green Economy, who testified earlier today, the Department of Public Service Staff, and the company and others, has recently been accepted the RMI Accelerator Program, which focuses on addressing important and complex energy policy challenges. And we are really excited about that opportunity. We also recognize that customer bills are made up of multiple components, including delivery charges, supply costs, taxes, and public policy initiatives. Many of those costs, such as taxes, are outside the company's direct control, but they can have a significant impact on the overall customer bill. For example, taxes comprise approximately 18% of the bill for Kedney customers and 24% of the bill for Kedley customers, and we are committed to working with policymakers to identify and implement solutions that mitigate these pressures and increase transparency around bill components and ensure that assistance is targeted to those most in need. I've mentioned that we're committed to achieving the ambitious climate goals under the CLCPA, but at the same time, we believe that in all of the bill of energy strategy, it's essential to maintaining reliability and supporting the energy transition. By maintaining a diverse and resilient energy portfolio, we can ensure that New Yorkers have access to reliable, affordable, and sustainable energy as the state advances towards its climate objectives. The company also recognizes the importance of efficient and thorough rate case proceedings. National Grid supports rigorous oversight by the Public Service Commission DPS staff and a robust stakeholder participation process, while emphasizing the need for timely and efficient resolution of rate cases. Prolonged proceedings can create rate compression and uncertainty impacting affordability and the ability to fund critical programs. And so, we appreciate the committee's leadership and the opportunity to share our perspective. We remain focused on addressing the drivers of customer bills and advocating for policies that support affordability and ensuring that the energy system remains reliable. Thank you.
Thank you for holding today's hearing and for this opportunity to address the committees. My name is Randy Rosinski, I'm Chief Regulatory Counsel for National Fuel Gas Distribution Corporation. Our company is a gas-only utility, providing service to meet the heating needs of 1.6 million residents in Western New York. Nearly 90% of homes and businesses in our service territory rely on natural gas for space heating, and 93% of our customers are residential customers. Affordability is a primary focus for our customers, and we share that focus. National Fuel's residential rates have traditionally been among the lowest in the state and the Northeast region. In 2024, we completed our first rate case filing since 2016, and our residential rates remain among the lowest among the state's major gas utilities. Greenhouse gas emissions reduction has also been a longstanding priority for the company. Our efforts in this area have resulted in an approximately 70% reduction in emissions since 1990. So, one of the purposes of today's hearing is to review the Public Service Commission's efforts to implement and achieve the goals of the CLCPA, and that's where I'll concentrate my testimony. Given the complexities of the state's energy systems and their impact on the well-being of its residents and businesses, we believe the commission, with its considerable energy expertise and mission of ensuring safe and reliable service at just and reasonable rates, should play a primary role in implementation of the CLCPA. The commission has appropriately balanced these critical priorities while methodically and responsibly pursuing emissions reductions. In 2022, the commission initiated a proceeding devoted to assessing implementation of and compliance with the CLCPA. We've heard a little bit about that proceeding today already. At the same time, it issued an order in its existing gas planning proceeding, adopting a comprehensive gas system planning process that requires long-term plan filings by the utilities. In those plans, utilities include extensive analysis and system planning related to meeting supply and demand needs, the pursuit of non-pipe alternatives, achievement of emissions reductions, and importantly, bill impacts. These detailed plans are filed on three-year cycles with annual progress reports. The process includes robust collaborative stakeholder engagement. This type of thoughtful process is necessary to ensure that the evolution of the state's energy systems is accomplished in a way that preserves reliability and affordability. Given the interconnected nature of the gas system, reflexively decommissioning some segments may impact reliable service to other portions of the system and may eliminate significant decarbonization opportunities with an energy system that has largely already been paid for. On one of the other panels, somebody mentioned a comment that Chair Christian made last week at the commission session, indicating that the CLCPA doesn't prohibit natural gas or the gas system. And that's true. There's no language in the CLCPA that talks about gas or the gas system, and as you know, you know, what legislation says and doesn't say is important. We think that there's a significant opportunity to help decarbonize the state utilizing the natural gas system. That's with RNG in the near term, there are significant opportunities in the near term to decarbonize with RNG, and in the future with hydrogen. We've seen this happen in other jurisdictions, we've seen other jurisdictions incentivize RNG, and we think that that's all part of, you know, Senator Parker, you referred to the all the above approach, and what Chair Christian called the energy abundance. We think that's necessary for the state. The planning proceedings that the commission has initiated in conjunction with its other proceedings, like energy efficiency and thermal energy networks, ensure that the state's climate goals are actively pursued in a way that prioritizes the continuing safe, reliable, and affordable provision of energy for consumer. and affordable provision of energy for consumers. The commission should be allowed to continue these productive efforts, and proposals to modify or inappropriately accelerate them should be resisted. There was another comment earlier that talked about some of these proceedings and essentially indicated that there's just too many of them. And there are a lot of proceedings. I think they counted 10 proceedings. That could be right. I haven't counted them. But there are so many proceedings because these issues are complicated. And if we get them wrong, it really impacts people. It impacts individuals. It impacts businesses. So, we need to proceed carefully. The commission needs to proceed carefully, and we think that they're doing that. There was also a reference to the U-10 proceeding, the Utility Thermal Energy Network proceeding, and how quickly that proceeding is proceeding or moving apace. I will say that National Fuel is part of that proceeding, and there's been an enormous effort on the part of the utilities and the commission to move those projects forward. The utilities were a sponsor of that original legislation. It was groundbreaking legislation, and obviously, we want to see it work, and we hope it works because there are some complementary pieces for our utility workforce with the geothermal The commission, we think, is also appropriately addressing CLCPA-related matters in the context of utility rate proceedings. In those proceedings, utilities are required to include in all rate filings an assessment of the impacts their capital expenditures and initiatives will have on GHG emissions. Contrary to what we heard earlier, utilities are required to submit specific quantitative emissions impacts for each project and initiative that's proposed in a rate case. That's all publicly filed in the rate case docket. The commission uses this and other data to confirm that the utilities' expenditures and initiatives are consistent with attainment of the CLCPA's emissions reduction goals and to evaluate whether they create a disproportionate burden on disadvantaged communities. This latter requirement also includes ensuring that company proposals provide overall benefits to DAX and offer cost protections for low-income customers and residents of DAX communities. We think the commission's efforts to implement the CLCPA have been very effective. We do have some additional recommendations to further enhance the efficiency of their efforts. We think that they should adopt a more granular regional approach. We think they should prioritize hybrid heating in colder regions like Western New York, and we'd like to see them maximize efforts to pursue alternative fuels, especially RNG. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. We have submitted more detailed written comments for your review as well.
Good afternoon. My name is Joseph Halli. I'm the Vice President of Regulatory Affairs at Central Hudson, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today about the affordability challenges facing Central Hudson's customers and state residents, the role of the Public Service Commission, and our shared progress towards New York State's energy goals. I'd like to start by just acknowledging what we all know is true, that there is an affordability crisis that's impacting our customers today. The cost of housing, daycare, groceries, and transportation have all risen very sharply, and these essential expenses now consume a much greater portion of household income. And that's forcing families across the Hudson Valley to make difficult decisions every day. We hear this from our customers, and we see it in data, and at Central Hudson, we understand this reality and take it very seriously. It's also important to realize that electricity bills have increased over the past decade, but it's important to note that they have remained stable relative to household income, holding at approximately 2% of household income. This is not by accident. It reflects our commitment to affordability and the hard work of Central Hudson, the Department of Public Service, and key stakeholders, who represent the full spectrum of our customer base, from our most vulnerable residents to the economic engines of our region. We also know that our job is not done. We must continue to find ways to address rising costs while focusing on reliability and environmental sustainability to protect our customers who are already struggling financially. Our most recent rate case was approved by the Public Service Commission in August, and it resulted in a 4% decrease in electric bills for low-income households. Decrease in the first year, and it implemented an overall 3% annual electric rate increase just above the rate of inflation. The modest increase was necessary to address significant cost pressures, including the replacement of aging infrastructure, which accounts for 80% of our capital program and is focused on maintaining safe and reliable service. And as we've replaced that infrastructure, we have encountered cost pressures due to global unrest and supply chain issues that we have worked to offset. For example, dramatic increases in the cost of distribution system transformers, which have more than tripled since 2020. We are also making investments to protect critical infrastructure and our customers from growing cybersecurity threats and are facing large increases in property taxes. We've also worked diligently within statewide proceedings to keep electricity affordable. We've worked with the Department of Public Service staff and stakeholders, such as the Utility Intervention Unit and the Public Utility Law Project, to develop programs that limit the impact of the total energy bill to 6% of household income for our most vulnerable customers. And we've recently expanded these programs to provide benefits to moderate-income households. We believe that working within a regulated process alongside the experts at the Department of Public Service and knowledgeable stakeholders is the most effective way to balance the diverse needs of our customers, and that that process ensures that diverse perspectives are heard and that we can deliver the energy people need to power their lives safely, reliably, and affordably. That said, we also believe there is room for improvement. Regulatory mechanisms can be developed that help extend the term of rate plans. These new tools could help allow us to extend the normal three-year rate case cycle and respond more dynamically to changing conditions while maintaining transparency and accountability, and importantly, spreading out cost pressures. Finally, I want to speak to our commitment to New York State's environmental goals. At Central Hudson, we believe in a clean energy future that is cost-effective and equitable, and we have results to show for it. We've surpassed our new efficiency New York targets. Our energy efficiency programs have earned the Energy Star Partner of the Year award three years in a row. On a per-customer basis, we are the number-one utility in the state in heat pump installations and interconnections of solar, and we've helped electrify the transportation sector by working with customers, auto dealers, and charging station owners, increasing annual EV purchases in the Hudson Valley from 1% to 9%. We are proud of this progress, but we must also acknowledge that we are falling short. Large-scale renewable development is lagging, and under current regulations, Central Hudson is prevented from helping to develop these resources. This is a critical gap that must be addressed if we are to meet the state's ambitious climate goals. In closing, I want to reiterate our commitment to affordability, collaboration, and to a clean energy future. We look forward to continuing our work with the experts at the Department of Public Service and the stakeholders that advocate for our communities to ensure that every New Yorker has access to safe, reliable, affordable, and sustainable energy. Thank you for your time and your leadership on these issues.
Good afternoon, Chair Comrie, Chair Parker, and Ranking Member Matarra. My name is Kimberly Harriman, and I serve as Deputy CEO of Alvin Grid. I'm honored today to be before you on behalf of New York State Electric and Gas and Rochester Gas and Electric Companies, which collectively serve millions of New Yorkers across 40% of New York. Alvin Grid, which is the parent company, operates wind and solar projects, 80 in total, across 23 states. Today's hearing is about what the commission looks at when deciding to set delivery rates and to determine policies going forward. Before we get into that, though, we think it's important that we talk about what's in the utility bill. Many times, a customer only gets one bill, and they think every charge on that bill belongs to the person sending them the bill, and that is not correct. Delivery, supply, both in electric and gas, as well as government-related charges, are all recovered in that single bill, and the PSC is responsible to establish delivery rates and to facilitate recovery of government-related programs. It does not set the cost of electricity or gas supply, and the commodity rate is set by, in fact, the market and passed directly to our customers with no profit to us. Government-related charges are recovered through authorized mechanisms, either as separate surcharges, like the system benefit charge, or embedded within our delivery rates, such as property taxes and other infrastructure costs. So, the remaining delivery charge must cover the cost of owning, operating, and maintaining a utility system, and includes the investments in future infrastructure to ensure safe and reliable service. So, what's behind rate case costs, and particularly, our filing? And what does the Department of Public Service staff review in a rate case? I often say the DPS actually reviews everything from toilet paper to transformers. They evaluate the need for and the cost of everything, and that is evidenced by the thousands of questions they ask of us during our rate cases, as well as in regular interval meetings, where they ask us and grill us on the status of projects, not only from the schedule of delivery, but to the costs that have been incurred. But a little bit more about the cost drivers that we're seeing in our current case. Base system costs. These are costs associated with expanded vegetation management to diminish outages, modernizing aging infrastructure. We have poles that are over 100 years old. Growing capacity needs, customer service requirements, prevailing wage provisions, and requirements and investments to support a transition to a low-carbon economy. It is also about addressing legacy issues, such as cost of storm response and arrears that followed the pandemic, some of which we've seen as the highest percentages in a decade and don't seem to be going down. This rate case recovers state policy costs, such as implementing CLCPA through our energy programs and investments for renewable integration, grid flexibility, emission reductions. It includes make-ready to support broadband deployment. It includes low-to-middle-income support programs, roadway excavation act, and the new call center law. I want to touch upon system capacity increases, because we're in a good place. We're in a great place when we have more requests to serve customers than we've ever seen, and we need to build out the system to do that. And so, these increased in customer connections are not just coming from advancing electrification in buildings and transit. We're actually seeing them advancing through manufacturing and other large commercial uses. Now, the transition to an electric-dependent energy grid, though, will require a historic level of investment in both the utility distribution and transmission infrastructure to meet this demand. You know, the days of negative or flat energy demand are over. Since 2022, NiSeq and RG&E have experienced both a significant increase in load requests and an increase of the size of those requests. Almost 500 megawatts of new load requested in 2024 alone. So, we appreciate the legislature and the administration's support in managing these capacity challenges through programs like Powering Up, which was adopted in the state budget this year. But I want to touch quickly on wholesale energy prices, because those are also going up. According to the New York Independent System Operator, as reported recently in Politico, and this is a quote, "The year-to-date average price for wholesale electricity was up about 78% compared to 2024 in August. This sharp increase reflects there's a mounting pressure on the grid right now, which includes a combination of factors such as rising demand, constrained supply or nonexistent supply, and limited transmission flexibility." So, the system is struggling to meet the growing capacity needs, and we're seeing that also in the price of wholesale electricity going up. But on affordability, it is important and remains a critical component to support our vulnerable populations, in particular, the low-income households. Those are facing energy insecurity. We have programs such as bill discounts, arrears forgiveness, and energy efficiency initiatives that play a pivotal role in promoting equity and access to essential services. And we're committed to the affordability through customer empowerment, and over the past three years, our energy efficiency programs have been aimed at over 600,000 megawatt-hours of electricity reductions and 3 million decathems of natural gas reduction. We delivered $150 million in assistance to low-income eligible customers, and we expanded electrification programs and enhanced our digital tools, such as Energy Manager and Ava, our virtual assistant. I want to say Energy Manager is probably one of the most key things. Customers often feel trapped by the only choice they have is to pay the bill, but that's not right. We have a program out there that if we can get customers to sign up, it'll actually tell them when their usage has gone up and give them recommendations for when and how to lower their usage. So, in conclusion, the rate case process and the proposals that we've designed really are focused on delivering safe and reliable and affordable service with investments that are necessary to meet the mandates of the state. And the PSC process is thorough and transparent, and we appreciate the interveners who participate. They make us think differently. They challenge us, and that is a good outcome, not only for our company but our customers. So, thank you for your time and your continued leadership.
Thank you. Please give us copies of your testimony so we can have them for the record. First off, thank you for coming. I'll start with National Grid. As part of your recent order in your rate case, there must be an expanded outreach to low-income communities that maintain under 25% enrollment in the Energy Affordability Program, EAP as it's called, or at risk of disconnect. Can we get an update from you on how that's going, and have you reached out to all eligible customers to let them know about this?
Yeah, thank you for the question. I think this is one of the components when we talk about working with various stakeholders in the rate case process, where we're able to really identify some creative opportunities to do something that goes above and beyond to help customers. And I think this is one of those examples where we got some additional information about different communities that might be in highly-energy-burdened areas, and then tried to think and work creatively to understand what we might be able to do to better assist those particular communities. And specifically, two things that came to mind. One, more direct outreach. So, we already have a really robust consumer advocate process, where we have highly-trained consumer advocates. I think it's something that works really well with the company, and we do some outreach with different stakeholder groups, including the Public Utility Law Project and others, to try to make sure that that's as robust as possible. And then, also, working not just with enhancing that for those particular communities, but identifying specific census tracts of disadvantaged communities where we can go and do in-person outreach. And so, we received approval of the plan in August, and the team is working to put that together in terms of the enhanced outreach to all those disadvantaged communities, as well as the in-person outreach. And certainly, have our commitment in the context of that case to make that an effective program, and we expect to be held accountable throughout by the Public Service Commission and others in terms of how we deliver on that.
Can you tell us what the process is to notify people?
We have a number of different ways that we could reach out, through email if we have an active email address. That can be a challenge at times if you don't have one that you know is active, but we need to go through and make sure that it's a registered email address that we have in our system. We do mailers and bill inserts in addition to community events.
Is there a process in place now to do that? And what is that? I mean, you're telling me what you can do, but there's a specific requirement to make sure that the folks are aware of this new opportunity? And did you put anything in place there, or are you just telling me what you normally do to notify customers?
That's what we would normally do, and then we have, you know, additional information that we'd be sending to those customers as part of, as we roll out this particular initiative. We've also provided notice of our rate case to our customer service and consumer advocates who can provide that information when they get calls and when they go to very who can provide that information when they get calls and when they go to various community events.
But you haven't sent out a general notice to customers about the opportunities for the EAP program as of yet since the rate case.
Not the expanded one that I'm aware of, but I can certainly check with the team and see if there's additional information we can provide.
I hope that can be sent out to all the customers that are eligible as soon as possible. I'm sure that's something the company can do, and I believe that they should want to do that as part of the agreement. You spoke also about the fact that the negotiations being private were more effective. Can you explain that a little bit more detail?
Sure.
How did that save ratepayers?
Sure. So in the early 90s, I think 92 or 93, the commission developed and adopted settlement guidelines. And as part of that process, the settlement guideline specifically discussed negotiating in good faith and the opportunity to maintain confidentiality. And that's a challenge. I know we've heard today about some of the concerns that folks have with that, but the benefit of the confidentiality in those negotiations is the opportunity for the parties at the table to discuss the different options and ideas that they may have on how to resolve the complex issues that are there, without fear that they have put something on the table that they then are committed to if that negotiation doesn't work out. And so that's a key piece of how we work through the settlement negotiations and ultimately end up in the compromise, the joint proposal that forms the basis of the settlement. I think in terms of the process for how we do it, that's something that, you know, that I think can be challenging. And so we've tried to incorporate some really, I think, just practical improvements in terms of how we go about the process, because you've heard discussion about the power imbalance between the utility and some others. So what can we do to address those concerns? One, try to be very clear at the outset, establishing a schedule and a clear agenda so that the parties that want to participate on specific issues know well in advance on what those issues are, when they may come up. And we, you know, I guess one of the advantages of COVID pushing us to more remote opportunities, we can reduce the barriers or the costs associated with traveling to different places by having, using Teams or WebEx to do settlement meetings, which I think facilitates further involvement, engagement. And we, I think, you know, go to really painstaking efforts to make sure that all parties have an opportunity to discuss certain issues. If we have an agenda item and we don't happen to get to it because we spent a significant amount of time on something else, we'll add it to the next standing committee meeting agenda and make sure that other parties see it and they can comment on it. And I think, you know, at least from my perspective, and certainly welcome opportunities for those who've participated in our settlement negotiations, just practically speaking, I think that's proven very effective, and I'd like to think that's how we ended up with the settlement in the Niagara Mohawk case that had 14 other parties join us and two others that remained neutral, at least a contributing factor, was just how we ran the process.
There was a lot of talk about gas and pipelines and infrastructure. Can you tell us what your state of your infrastructure is in terms of the need to maintain it and the ability to, and how much? I think one of the other speakers said that they, 80% of their, 80% of their capital budget goes towards replacing infrastructure. What is National Grid's infrastructure replacement rate? Do you know?
I mentioned before that for KENNEE, approximately 20%, 18% was associated with property taxes. I think on the flip side of that, you're looking at, you know, upwards of 60% that's associated with how we're doing the business and other enhancements that we're making, just in terms of how we deliver. I think for the system in general, and what we're looking at, one challenge in New York City that we have worked with the commission on is leak-prone pipe. And we have leak-prone pipe. And National Grid has a significant amount of pipe that's been in the ground for a long time. The federal authorities, Department of Transportation's Pipeline Hazard Materials and Safety Administration oversees that part of the process, and our inventory of leak-prone pipe is among the most within the state. By addressing leak-prone pipe issues, you can enhance safety and reduce methane emissions. And so that's a key component of, or significant component of what the company has in our portfolio of work in the downstate region.
And they talked about the Williams pipeline. Would that be pipe that's put in that would be leak-proof, or how does that work?
I think the type of pipe has changed. So the leak-prone pipe is cast iron or bare steel. They're not using that same type of pipe now, and so that's not, that's not the type of issue. Obviously, you know, pipeline needs to be, you know, installed and maintained, and we do that work. We've got a really experienced and knowledgeable team of engineers and folks that are working on those issues on a regular basis. But I think it's important to note, that's not our pipeline. We're not the ones building it.
Not your pipeline?
It's the Williams pipeline.
Okay. And who gets to, who gets to utilize that pipeline? Just the Williams company, or?
No, we would, we're not installing a pipeline. I guess that's what I meant in terms of saying that it's not ours, but we would be the customer for the 400,000 decathems, I guess.
Okay. So you don't, you don't get involved in the design and the layout of the pipeline? You just utilize it or tap into it afterwards?
That's correct. I mean, there are certain interconnections that have to be made with our facilities and systems, and that's, but that's not our, our pipeline to permit or construct or otherwise.
Does the Public Service Commission have a role in the efficiency of the pipeline that you're aware of? Can anybody answer that? How do you develop your new gas lines? And what, what levels are you using, or what ratings are you using to ensure that the public feels comfortable about their new installations? Is there a new type of pipeline that's like fundamentally safe, or?
Yes. I guess we're talking about intrastate and interstate pipelines. So when you're talking about like a Williams pipeline, that's a federally regulated pipeline. It's regulated by FERC. It's not regulated by the Public Service Commission. But FERC and also PHMSA on the safety side ensures that those interstate pipeline companies construct those pipelines in a way that are safe and maintain them in a way that are safe. When we talk about interstate pipelines, so for example, our pipe, our natural gas pipelines, we are state-regulated, and the Public Service Commission very carefully and closely regulates us and how we develop those pipelines to ensure that they're safe and that we maintain them in a safe manner. They have a whole auditing process that they pursue with all the pipelines to make sure that, you know, we're proceeding appropriately. I will say for National Fuel, and I'm sure for all of the companies at the table, safety is, you know, job one for us, for our customers, and for our employees. And so there's nothing more important to us than making sure our facilities are safe.
How do you, is there a rating or a national or state rating that you have for these lines? And what's the, what's the life expectancy of a new line that you're putting in?
I would, I would say the average life expectancy is about 70 years. And in terms of ratings, like a safety rating, or, we do a risk assessment with all of our pipelines, and Chris mentioned, you know, leak-prone pipe replacement. That's something that all of us are engaged in. National Fuel is engaged in that as well. And what we do is we are constantly analyzing our pipelines to gauge, you know, what are the risk levels? And part of it is how old are, how old is the pipeline? Where is the pipeline located? Is it located in an urban area? Is it located in a very remote area? But it's a complex risk assessment that we all use to identify which pipe needs attention. And then as, once we make that determination, you know, we develop a program for replacing that leak-prone pipe. It often comes up in our rate proceedings, and it's reviewed by the commission. National Fuel is replacing leak-prone pipe at about 111 miles of pipe a year. So that, you know, that's something that's important, the most important thing to us, that our facilities are safe. Could I also comment on the question that you asked Chris about the confidential settlement process?
Sure.
Because I was, I was really disturbed to hear from Pulp and others that they didn't have a good experience with that process. You know, I mentioned earlier, National Fuel recently went through a rate case process in '23 and '24. Prior to that, we hadn't been in for a while. But I was front and center for that whole process and didn't, didn't see anything like what I heard discussed earlier. And, and in terms of negotiations during the settlement process and during those meetings, you know, some of what we heard was that the, you know, the utility controls the agenda that, you know, Pulp, for example, wasn't able to get their items on the agenda. That's very disturbing to me. That's not anything that would have occurred or did occur in our case. Staff in the utility developed the agenda, but the agenda was really controlled by all of the participants, all of the parties to the settlement. And there are, it's quite an extensive process. Each issue really has its own meeting and, and multiple meetings to resolve the issues. And everybody has a voice at those meetings, as long as what they're talking about is related to the rate proceeding and consumer rates and, and, you know, commercial rates. Anything, if it pertains to the rate proceeding, you have a voice and you should be heard. And in the National Fuel rate case, you were. So anyway, I just wanted to, to make that point, because that's, that hasn't been our recent experience in the rate case process.
Senator, I'd like to add something to that. I think one of the, I've been a rate case attorney for the department. I've been a settlement judge for the department. And now I'm at a company. And one of the things that I think has improved is the assignment of settlement judges by the commission, because I think there's a lot of parties. And, you know, I, I think it's a good, you know, to bring balance, to make sure that everybody gets their time. I do think that there's a lot of parties, depending on what company you have. You can have 20, I think ConEd maybe even has sometimes 30 parties that come in, and they want all their issues heard, and they should have all their issues heard. And so one of the things that I think is really good is working on an agenda together, which Irene is like kind of coming over to join me, is that we, we take the time to set the right agenda. Yeah, it's all, I love Irene. I talk to Irene. That we, that we take the time to make sure we have the right agenda, but that everybody's issue gets heard. What happens too is a lot of times, these negotiations are weeks, and people get tired. And sometimes there is situations where issues kind of get pushed to the end, and then there's pressure to like, you got to solve this issue. It's the last one before you finish. And so I think it's on all of us to be mindful of setting up a schedule that gives everybody an opportunity to be heard in a way that doesn't deplete their resources or time, because not everybody wants to talk about every issue. And I think that's, that's an important thing. Hi, Irene.
Hi. Do you mind if I?
Sure.
Come turn the party.
I, I do just want to, thanks to Kim for clarifying, and to all of you. Part of my testimony was reflective of the last rate case, which was three and a half years ago or so. And honestly, it was since that time, I believe, and Lori's already left the room, but I believe that she had conversations with Chair Christian about the problems. And since that time, there now is a settlement attorney that's assigned, and I believe that that has helped. Probably, you know, haven't been part of the next round of settlement to know, but I'm glad to hear that people think things have improved. My guess is there's still room for improvement, but I do want to, do want to just acknowledge that things have changed a little bit in that regard already.
And since everybody acknowledged that comment, I guess, from Central Hudson's standpoint, we generally receive praise for the settlement process, so I was shocked as well to kind of hear some of the comments. And hopefully, I'm happy to hear that, you know, things are going much better in the process, but.
State folk had decreases, so you didn't have the kind of seriousness that those folks had.
Decreases for our most vulnerable customers.
Right. So, I mean, it's a different kind of vibe, but I appreciate that things are getting better, and I would hope that we can continue to work together so that the process is more transparent and easier for people to access. There will always be a need to improve that process, I think. And I'm glad to see that there's an acknowledgement and an understanding that the process is onerous. So that's a start from there. We're just doing the panel right now. There's a, there's one more group that's coming up after the panel, but Senator Parky, you have questions?
Lots of them. So I'd like to hear from all of you what your thoughts about your role, your company's role, is in helping the state get to its CLCPA goals.
I think, you know, we have a unique position because we actually develop renewable generation projects. So we see perspective on both sides. The challenges of a renewable generation developer and interconnecting, understanding what place is our best to go in the system. So as a, as a company and a utility, that really is on the front lines of making sure we hit the state target. And we have a couple of things. One is, we have to efficiently invest in the system, and we've got to be transparent about where those investments are taking place and where headroom is being created, not just for the interconnection of generation on a utility scale, but also on EV charging, right? Electrification of buildings. I want to just use one example, and this is another shout-out to my friend Irene. Ithaca had passed the Green New Deal, and they were really focused on electrifying buildings and transit. And I love this example because this is exactly what we need to do as utilities. I was part of it. We brought everybody in from our system planning. We sat down, we sat down with the city, and we said, where are you going to go first with your rebate programs to convert and lay out charging stations and heat pumps? And we drew them a map of our entire district, five quadrants. And we said, start here, we've got headroom. Then go here next, because we've got a little bit more, but we're going to start doing some construction to build out that headroom. Then for three, four, and five, we gave them the capital plan and said, here's when we're going to create enough space in the electric system for you to do what you want to do. And we've included that in the rate case. That's exactly, we want to be the catalyst for communities in the state to reach the goals. We got to do it while maintaining the system. I always like to say, you can't, my husband and I argue about this because he's an engineer, but I like my statement, which is, you can't put a second story on a house until you know your foundation is solid and it's not crumbling. So we've got that foundation, and then we've got to build the timber for that second story and make sure that it's good. And, and that's the way I view our role.
Yeah, I think I view it very similarly. The utility's role, to a large extent, is to bring people together to find solutions to move forward. In a lot of instances, we're put in that position. Sometimes it's through definitive things that we're meant to do. So we run programs for energy efficiency, electrification of buildings and transportation. And I think for those things, really helping customers understand the value of those programs, whether they're large businesses or they're individual residential customers, is our job. But then, when we're looking at the broader energy system, really how are new developments going to interact with our system? So whether it's interconnecting community solar or larger-scale infrastructure, how is that going to impact? And how can we make sure that that works and that people understand the cost and understand the impacts on our system to move forward? So planning, making sure that we can move forward and get to solutions, and really giving people as much lead time as possible so that they can make the best decisions.
I can go next. As the only natural gas-only utility on the panel, we're in a slightly different position, right? We don't have the electric side to bring to the table. But having said that, National Fuel is very committed to helping the state achieve its emissions reduction goals. I, you know, I started my comments in, you know, stating that we've already made a lot of strides in that regard. But we really ascribe to the all-the-above approach, which is a phrase that actually, I think Donna DeCarolis of our company coined like in, in 2019, right after the CLCPA was promulgated. You know, we think it's going to take, you know, the energy abundance, all-the-above approach. We think that we have a lot to bring to the table there. You know, we've talked, there's been a lot of discussion about the gas system itself. We think that that's a very viable decarbonization tool. You know, we've seen in the recent state energy plan, there's
You know, we've seen in the recent state energy plan, there's an acknowledgement, natural gas is going to be needed for the foreseeable future, right? Because of the enormous energy demand. But that gas system has a lot of potential to help decarbonize the state as well. It's in place. It's not something we have to expend the cost to build out of whole cloth. It's largely paid for. So why not use that system, flow alternative fuels like RNG? There's been a recent study from ICF that they did for the American Gas Foundation where they evaluated the potential for RNG feedstocks across the country. There's an enormous potential of RNG feedstocks, for example, in Western New York where our service territory is. We have a lot of dairy farms. I can give you statistics about the number of cows, how many hundreds of thousands of cows are in Western New York. There are a lot. But animal manure is a primary feedstock for RNG. So why not utilize that? And you can inject it directly into the gas system and that can be one of the energy abundant options that we can look at going forward. Hydrogen is something that we can also look at. That's a little further afield, we need to do a little more study, but there are states that are already blending 15% of hydrogen. Hawaii is a state that a lot of people point to already in their system and decarbonizing their system that way. So National Fuel's very interested in pursuing that. I mentioned U-10s earlier. You know, we're very positive about that legislation and that program. The commission has built a whole proceeding around it. All of the utilities are actively participating in that. National Fuel has a great project in downtown Buffalo. So, and what's best about that and one of the drivers of that legislation was that it's the same skillset you need for geothermal systems is the skillset that you need for natural gas. So that helps our workforce as well. So, we want geothermal systems to work as well and we're all in on our project. So, you know, we think the all the above energy abundance approach is something that will really make sense for the state.
Chris?
So, thank you for the question. I think two words come to, or two items come to mind in terms of our role, facilitator and trusted advisor. We are actively involved in energy efficiency and trying to make sure that that's a key component to what happens with the CLCPA. You've mentioned demand response, that's been something that the company's been very active in and trying to make sure that we have robust demand response programs. We've adopted as part of our rate cases, a process where we are referring all new gas connection customers to, you know, for Kedney over to ConEd to say, hey, consider your electrification options. And they need to have an acknowledgement form signed before they come back to us saying that they've been, received information about alternative energy sources before we actually would connect them to the system. We've got significant transmission projects through the CLCPA and SmartPath Connect in the upstate area. And then, I think really the U-10s is something that's significant. I know there was expressed on one of the earlier panels, some skepticism about National Grid's role in the U-10 process. And I can tell you, we were, you know, partners in trying to get the legislation approved and that was successful. The, I think what people sometimes miss is that there was a very tight turnaround in terms of when the legislation was passed, when the commission initiated the proceeding, and when the companies were required to provide their first, you know, sort of proposals on what the U-10 was. And that's really hard for very complex engineering, first of its kind, to get that robust proposal. That was not the company saying, hey, we aren't taking this seriously. That was in a very short amount of time, trying to put that together for Kedney, Kedley, and two Niagara Mohawk projects. And then just, you know, I think the experience is borne out that our latest filing in July, we continue to have, you know, moved to the next stage of that process with the NYCHA project that we are hoping will get approved and could be very successful. So I think, again, trusted advisor and facilitator in terms of our role with the CLCPA.
I could just add on to my answer a little bit. What I would say is, in previous rate cases, we've taken great pains at Central Hudson to map out progress towards the CLCPA goals on all the various components. So whether it's electrification, energy efficiency, solar interconnections on the distribution system, and really where we felt we're falling short, where we found we're falling short, if we carved up the CLCPA requirement into geographic slices was really large-scale renewable development. We were going to meet the goal except for the fact that that large-scale renewable, we're not going to be built. And so, when we were looking at it, that was a component that we saw. We do not have a current role in the development of those resources, but that is something that going forward into the future, I think, should be considered. Because, again, in order to meet the CLCPA goal, I think we are going to have to try that all of the above approach.
Thank you. That's it. I'll come back.
Can I add just one thing to my comment? So, I mentioned at the end of my prepared comments that I think one of the things the commission needs to look at a little more closely is a granular regional approach in the state. I think when we look at the state often, we look at, you know, upstate and downstate. But there actually are a lot of very different regions in the state beyond that. On our side of the state, you know, Buffalo, right? Famous, unfortunately, for terrible winter weather, really dangerous winter weather. And that should be factored in when you're talking about CLCPA solutions. So, one of the initiatives that we think is important for our region is a hybrid heating initiative where you are pairing an efficient furnace with a heat pump so that when you're in a situation of extreme winter weather, often in those circumstances, you can lose electric service, unfortunately. You still have the natural gas system there to function. And then on your regular day-to-day, it functions as a backup. It can reduce costs. Western New York is also a really financially challenged part of the state, unfortunately, as well. So it's important for us. It can also reduce strain on the electric grid. And in Western New York, because we're so focused on natural gas, we would have to quadruple the electric capacity to go all-electric, which is almost double what the rest of the state would require in terms of building electric infrastructure. So, a continuing use of the gas system can mitigate that as well. So, we just really advocate for a granular regional approach because I think to be really effective and safe and affordable, that's what we need to do.
Thank you. Senator Matto?
Thank you so much, everybody, for your testimony. You know, somebody that has been, you know, pushing and focusing on the Nessie Pipeline, how, I just want to ask a question. How important is the Nessie Pipeline, the construction of that pipeline and the Constitution Pipeline? How important is that for the New York State for our future?
Yes, it's very important. You know, this is an item that has been around for a while in terms of its evaluation analysis. And I think we heard a little bit of background as to how we ended up in the particular position where the permits were not obtained and folks moved through a long-term planning process. And it's been sort of suggested that this came in, a lack of transparency and a last-minute type of thing in National Grid's recent gas system long-term planning process. And really, if you look at when Williams filed for this particular permit, it was after the company had already submitted our final gas long-term plan and they had indicated there that they were seeking expedited approval to begin construction by the end of this year. And the company responded to that saying, you know, if we wait, then we're outside the window of this gas system long-term plan. We think it's appropriate to include that information here. And based on that information, we think it is the best solution to be able to address the reliability concerns, fewer CNG trucks on the road.
That's what I was going to say.
Yeah, the significant issues for, you know, Winter Storm Elliott. I think, you know, it's important to recognize, I think the commission in their order talked about this. We were 30 minutes away from 30,000 customers potentially being shut off the day before Christmas.
Yes.
In the wintertime. And we have experience at National Grid in, when we owned the Rhode Island system, this happened on Equidna Island. By comparison, that was 7,500 customers, $25 million to relight them and it took seven days. 30,000 customers in New York City at Christmas time is, with that cold weather, is not acceptable. And the commission indicated that this is a solution that could help address those issues.
Huge one. And quick question about in Hempstead. We had a project that was going to be the mixed fuels with green hydrogen and natural gas. Is that going to be, is that going to be happening again? Why, what's happening with that project, please?
Yeah, there was a groundbreaking for that particular project. I think, you know, from the company's perspective, we thought that that made a lot of sense. Hydrogen is one of the options that folks were considering. The federal government, under the prior administration, had set up hydrogen hubs and was really making an effort to push that forward. This project would expand an existing hydrogen facility and start with a very small amount of blending. Ultimately, it was not able to get sufficient support to make it through in the rate case process.
Do you think that'll resurrect again? Do you think that'll happen again?
I, I, I don't know.
You don't know?
Yeah, we'll have to figure that out.
What about something very, very important? Like I always say, we need to be self-sufficient and self-reliant. We have a good, big percentage of transmission lines come from New Jersey, from Connecticut, from Pennsylvania. And everybody, so those are on fossil fuel plants, but those transmission lines that are coming into the state of New York. Am I correct by saying that? We have transmission lines that are coming in. We have a good percentage, 30 to 40%, that's coming in that is supplying the energy electric into our state of New York.
Yeah.
I look at, like, catheters too, very, very important. We get the Nessie Pipeline comes in and we talk, I was just on back and forth with David Manning with Brookhaven National Lab, especially about carbon capture. To make catheters too, with carbon capture, how important would that be? Is that something that you looked at, catheters too?
I'm not aware of the specifics on catheters too, but I will say that, you know, we've talked about it, I think Randy's mentioned a couple of times, and has the chair, on energy abundance and then all of the above policy. And so, we're always looking at, how can we best meet the needs?
My question is, how important is that for our energy needs for Long Island?
I'd have to take a look at the specifics for the catheters project and the energy needs on Long Island. But I can say that, you know, we are aware of the NISO Power Trends Report that talks about the potential to repower natural gas generators in and around New York City because of the concerns about the increasing demand, electrification and data centers.
Are you guys looking at carbon capture at all and retooling on our system, Barrett, you know, Port Jefferson, you know, Northport? I know Northport, there's a project right now with hydrogen, which is a great project. I know that that's coming up. We've got the state funding for that, right? We have a project right now in Northport that's going to be moving forward, right?
I believe so.
Yes, okay. So, anything, like I said, we know that we have a capacity shortage. We know that, in other words, that we have all LNG trucks that are up and down our roadways, right? Seven pounds of CO2 a mile. And that should really be a concern with our good friends that care about the environment. That in other words, we get these trucks off the road, especially seven pounds of CO2 a mile.
Yeah, and on the compressed natural gas trucking and vehicles, it's certainly an item that we don't think that's the best and most efficient solution. And certainly on a cold...
And safety also.
Yeah, and on the coldest day, when you're trying to meet energy needs, you may have a variety of reasons why, you know, up to 240 trucks can't make it to different locations in order to meet those, those natural gas needs at that time.
Exactly. We just had a 30%, if I'm saying this correctly, 30% this past summer, that we needed extra with a capacity shortage. 30% this past summer, is that true?
I'm not familiar with...
I don't know if anybody else can answer that. I know that we had, we had a big boost, especially what we needed for, especially our hot summer that we had. Is that correct? Anybody? Oh, whatever. Okay, so that's what I was told, that in other words, that we had, we needed that much extra natural gas capacity this past summer, especially with the hot weather that we had and the energy that we needed. So, all right, thank you.
I don't have any other direct questions. Are you, for the gentleman from Natural Fuel Gas, you say you're gas only. Is that a permanent position or is that, you did mention a couple of other ideas. Is there something else that you guys are considering as far as new technology?
Yeah, I mean, we're looking at all the items that I mentioned. So we're looking at RNG, we're looking at hydrogen, we have a team looking at carbon capture, and of course, utility thermal energy networks as well. We've put a lot of effort into that and we'll continue to do that.
And you said you were able to reduce your emissions by 70% since 1990. By just how?
Primarily addressing any leak-prone pipe issues that we have. So replacing leak-prone pipe, leak detection methodologies.
And aggressively checking your pipes on a regular basis?
Yes.
And is there a state guideline as far as that is concerned on checking for leaks?
You know, there aren't state guidelines, but there, I think it's priority, certainly for National Fuel and I think all utilities, the commission, it's a priority for the commission. So it's a dialogue that we have with the commission. We talk about, you know, how much leak-prone pipe we have, what are the, you know, what are, how do we detect it? And what is our process going forward to replace it? And how quickly are we going to do that? And we try to do that as quickly as possible, keeping in mind risk levels and cost concerns, of course.
I hope everyone is at your standard on checking for leak proof or leaky pipes. I don't have any other questions I want to ask today. I do have other questions to ask, so I appreciate if we can reach out to you on this. I am a believer in not being a single-use or a single-source use. And definitely what you mentioned about Western New York and needing gas to deal with the extreme weather conditions, I think is important. I'm going to get to you, Ms. Cottrell, so let me let the panel go. You know, so I think that we, you know, to be over-dependent on one source that's put up by a wooden pole scares me, even though everybody wants to go electric. You know, to be over-dependent on one source of power, especially when that power is fragile to weather is a concern. So, I will be working to try to, as Senator Parker said, be carbon net, carbon neutral, whatever that fancy term you use. But to make sure that there's a dual usage and that we can have choices for consumers and that they can have optimum choices for consumers to meet their particular needs. I represent a district that has a high water table, so doing fuel pump, what do you call that, the heat pump stuff doesn't work because if you go 10 foot down, you're hitting water. Geothermal doesn't work in my area. So, you know, I got to find other solutions for my constituents and go from there. But thank you, panel, for being here. We appreciate you and we look forward to continuing to work with you as we deal with these issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
A point of information for...
We have the League of Conservation Voters that wanted to make a statement, but if you want to make a parliamentary point right now, you can come up while, is it National?
It's a point of information.
Okay.
I just want to say that it is a fact.
Thank you.
It is a fact that Tompkins County, many, many, Tompkins County homes, businesses, commercial establishments, and our 50-unit affordable housing apartment building was built eight years ago or so, that heats, with heat pumps, that horrifyingly was tested in the first week or two of operation down to 13 below zero and kept up with those temperatures. Buffalo, Western New York, Buffalo and that area has snow worse than we do, but we have worse temperatures. And all of those businesses in the non-pipe alternative area that with the hold on the building of new and refinished, refurbished HVAC systems where they may not put in new gas temporarily, the moratorium, sorry, have managed to install these same heat pumps that keep up with the extreme cold.
We got it, but you're upstate with plenty of ground under you, so it's a different situation. Thank you, Ms. Cottrell. New York League of Conservation Voters, can you identify yourself?
Sure. And thank you for making the time. I appreciate your staff squeezing me in. My name's John Furlong. I'm the Clean Buildings Campaign Manager at the New York League of Conservation Voters. Appreciate the opportunity to testify today, batting ninth in pitching. Again, thank you, chairs, for this opportunity. New York League of Conservation Voters has been a strong proponent of the Customer Savings and Reliability Act. That's S144158A or CISRA. This legislation is a comprehensive proposal, very similar to the New York Heat Act, to align the Public Service Commission over authority over gas utilities with the CLCPA. At its core, it would allow utilities to develop regional savings and reliability programs. Utility that has such a program would allow the utility... programs. Utility that has such a program would allow the utility to provide customers with alternatives to gas when they're demonstrated to be cheaper. This would include whole-home weatherization and efficiency upgrades, new appliances at no cost to the customer, and energy-efficient systems like thermal energy networks. Currently, the law requires utilities to replace old gas pipes with new gas pipes, even if there are much more affordable alternatives. The total cost of these expensive replacement projects are added to the customer energy bills in the form of delivery costs. CISRA would allow utilities that opt in to work under a modified obligation to serve gas so that when it's cheaper to replace portions of the existing deteriorating gas systems with an alternative source of energy, the commission and the utilities may offer such alternatives and thereby bring down the delivery costs and energy bills. Conservative estimates find that modifying the obligation to serve will decrease planned infrastructure expenditures by an estimated $4.7 billion. Eliminating these anticipated costs will be integral to curbing future rate hikes. One of the most important components of ensuring the success of the CLCPA implementation and complementing the scaling back, which I just referenced, of the gas system, is the creation of neighborhood-scale renewable energy projects that will replace fossil fuels-dependent heating and cooling systems. In 2022, the Senate and Assembly passed the Utility Thermal Energy Network and Jobs Act with the goal of removing legal barriers to utility development of thermal energy networks and for pilots to advance to construction and operation across the state. This will allow New York to scale affordable accessible housing electrification that will create good jobs for local residents in the building decarbonization sector while supporting our union halls and facilitate the transition for gas system workers into the green energy workforce of the future. These U-10 pilot projects provide an opportunity to decarbonize buildings at a neighborhood scale in a highly energy-efficient way, reducing forecasted demand on electric grid and reducing gas demand while supporting local on 97 compliance for building owners and achievement of New York's CLCPA goals. One of the goals in passing this legislation was to see pilots advance fully through construction to deliver family-sustaining, overwhelmingly union jobs to New Yorkers, maximize the state's learnings about this approach, and drive innovation and decarbonization in New York. These projects are both opportunities for New York to lead the nation and invest in itself. While there is proposed portfolio of U-10 projects across the state that will provide real climate benefits, this portfolio of projects will reduce greenhouse gas emissions while recycling waste heat. The pilots are almost also estimated to reduce impacts to the electric system when compared to full electrification of the selected participated buildings with air-source heat pumps. New York State must explore and deploy a variety of clean heat solutions to achieve its climate goals, and U-10s are an efficient means of electrification, creating more pathways for decarbonization. The Public Service Commission can take significant steps toward fulfilling the goals of the CLCPA by advancing each of the pilot projects to Sage III of the review process, which is customer acquisition and pilot project construction. Thank you so much for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. What's a U-10 for the public, please?
Utility, it's a utility-owned thermal energy network.
You kept using the acronym.
Yeah, I know. Sorry.
That's okay.
And I think, you know, just to.
I do it too when I'm in, you know, a company that appreciates it.
Yes, sir. And just to put a finer point out, I mean, we passed this legislation some time ago and we've, you know, we got to, you know, I, NYLCV is part of the Upgrade New York Collaboration, which works closely with unions and construction trades. And, you know, we've got to get these guys to work. So I think we're, you know, we're eager to see these things move forward. And we're having a series of policy briefings now where the utilities are, you know, talking to legislators such as yourself about their progress on the pilots. Yep.
Do you find the Public Service Commission to be amenable to change?
Yeah, I do. Yep, I do. Rory's a forward-thinking guy.
Okay. Well, he is, but is his, or his staff?
We would hope so.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, I think we're really, we're really trying to work with them closely.
Well, we appreciate your testimony, Senator Parker.
Appreciate your time, gentlemen.
So a couple of things. The first is about CLCPA. What do you think are the most urgent matters that we need to be addressing as a state, regardless of whose role it is to address it? What are the things you think that we should be doing most urgently in order to meet our CLCPA goals?
We need to, I mean, you know, obviously, we've heard a lot about other, you know, forms of renewables. I think, given the current climate in Washington, we need to find the solutions, the large steel neighborhood-scale solutions that are going to work for us. We cannot be doing, you know, building electrification with a house-by-house approach anymore.
Right.
So I think that's, you know, we need to look at big projects that are ready to go right now. That's my opinion.
And on the issue of affordability, how do we address the CLCPA goals and then simultaneously, you know, try to reach some level of affordability, you know, that people really need right now?
Of course. I mean, no, I think it's an excellent question, Senator. I mean, it's, again, to me, it's about balance. You know, I think what you've begged this question all day long is how do we balance all this stuff out? And I think, you know, when you have a planned approach to building decarb, and you can say, okay, we're going to prune here with these leak-prone pipes that cost $6 million a mile to replace.
Right.
And we're going to give people an alternative, a choice in what they're, you know, in what the energy source is that is, you know, that can really save money in the long term. I think that's, that's part of the balance. And then I think somebody had a great comment about, you know, partnering with both the city and the state to do something like a J-51 bill, like a renewal, and just look at every single avenue so that, you know, I mean, this is, you know, I'm not going to shy away from the fact that this stuff is expensive to build.
Yeah.
And we need to get really, really creative with, you know, with our means of financing them. But in part of it has to be like, we have to recoup costs that we're putting into a system that is aging and doesn't work for people and is not meeting our CLCPA goals and put those resources elsewhere.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well, I want to thank you for coming. I want to thank all of the panelists for coming. I want to thank Senator Parker for agreeing to co-chair, especially want to thank Nia, where does she go? Nia James from my office and Matt Garcia. And I forgot your name.
Justin.
Justin Charles. I should know Justin's name. He's a great staff person for Senator Parker and my new staff person, Friede Schleckman, who was here at her first hearing. And with that, we are going to also thank the Senate audio staff for continuing to put up with my bad timing and bad pacing. But thank you all for having this meeting and we'll see you all soon. This meeting is now closed. Thank you.